Good evening, everyone, and welcome to November 8th, I believe. There's a special budget meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Well, not a technical, formal meeting, I still would ask that you would join with me and rise to say the Budget of Allegiance.
Budget allegiance through the flag of the United States of America.
All right. James, are you here?
I am.
Good. Colin?
Present remotely.
Excellent. All right, so we will begin the discussions about the proposed 2024 budget. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Dave.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair. The primary purpose of this evening obviously is continuing the conversation that we started on October the 25th. But to provide an opportunity to, for department directors to share a little bit more context on the respective proposals within their, their functional departments that they're leading. So with that, I, I do have some general sort of commentary, but I'll, in the interest of, of schedules, I'll, I'll defer to, to Tim Chamberlain, Director of Fire Services first. Tim has another commitment this evening at the fire company, and so in the interest of being respectful of that other commitment, I, I'd like to get him in and out if possible.
This is on, you got, okay, good. So I'm going to cover two funds tonight, hydrant fund and the fire fund. So Dave, would you want me to start with one or the other? Does it matter?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, Tim, whatever.
In, in, in front of you tonight, I put a packet together just explaining each budget itself. Colin, I apologize, I did not send it to you, but we can get it to you. So I'll start with the hydro, and it was pretty quick and painless. There is no increase in the millage for the hydrant tax. We can cover everything with the cost that we're bringing in currently. The only thing I'm recommending is, over the past year, we've been reviewing the, the bills from PA American Water, and we noticed that there are about 105 hydrants in our township that we do not pay for. They are actually in certain developments that are paid for by the homeowner association. So if they break, they could be out of service for months. The water mains in there are actually covered by PA American, so talking to them, we can take them over. So every fire hydrant in our township will be covered by PA American, will be put back in service within 24 to 72 hours, depending if they're, what, what their need is and stuff like that. And then we will actually pay for them out of the fire tax, or the fire hydrant tax. So I'm just suggesting we take over them, so we have all the fire hydrants in control of us. So that was, that's pretty much it on that one.
Are you able to give some more background about that, meaning, you know, that there are fire hydrants that aren't ours? Is that typical in a township?
Well, a lot of times when developments got built, when the fire hydrants went in, there was a contract signed as a qualified private hydrant. Those hydrants would be paid for by the homeowner association with a property owner, and any maintenance or repairs were covered by them. The water company would actually flow test them, but that was all they would do. If they were out of service, if we went to use them for a fire and they broke, it would be on the responsibility of them. So when we came across that stuff, we were concerned. Every other fire hydrant in our township is a public fire hydrant, which is paid for by us. And then there's a third hydrant in our township, which is a fully private fire hydrant, which is past the water meter, which is on the owner or property owner, whatever. That's taken care of by the fire inspectors. When they go out, they make sure that they are tested by them, flown by them, upkeep and maintenance on them. So that's not, that's not anything on us. There's only about eight of them in our township currently. So if you flip through the packet, like I said, you'll see that we currently pay for 631 public fire hydrants, and there's 105 qualified private hydrants. And if you look in 2023, PA American actually upped the fee for each one. So the public fire hydrant is 2030, and the qualified private is 2687. So it's an increase really on our end, and even the people that are paying for this qualified private hydrants, which in turn, a lot of those residents in there are paying a fire hydrant tax as well. So they are paying for the services of those hydrants, so I believe that we should make sure that they're taken care of properly and they get back in service for our, our needs, so. Neil, are questions on, on that one?
No, I, I mean, I, I just, as Tim said, there's sufficient capacity within the existing millage rate in order to, to accommodate the, the recommended change that, that he's, that he's just outlined.
Do we have to enact any form of an ordinance to take responsibility for those hydrants? Or is there a mechanism to avoid those agreements with the HOAs?
Though the only thing that I'm aware of under PA American is there's a bill of sale that we'll sign, that will take over those fire hydrants. To be honest with you, I don't even know if a lot of those associations even know that they're paying for them, to be honest with you. That's something, it might be built into their clubhouse fee, I'm not quite sure. But the only thing, like I said, that I am aware of, that we had to sign the bill of sale over to us.
I'm wondering, Dave, in terms of, you know, how we deal with streetlights and other things, it's more of a, a fee assessment, I believe. Could a fire, could there be a fire hydrant fee rather than, than including in the millage?
A, a fee for hydrants, you're saying?
Fee specifically for hydrants that we ultimately were paying PA Water and whoever else, but is, is that something that could be done? Or is that atypical? I'm just.
I mean, I, I think it's generally atypical. It, it's, because there is, again, a special purpose tax that's supporting payment for, for hydrants. I don't, are you aware of any alternative arrangement where a fee could be levied in lieu of, of, of a property tax or a special purpose property tax?
I haven't seen one, I haven't come across one. There's some municipalities that just have it built into their fire tax. So just say, for instance, we move this point 33 over to fire tax, and it's all built into one fund instead of having two different funds. That's the only thing I've seen. I haven't seen a bill for, like that, like you're saying.
Would, would that make, I, I don't know if, if we need to do that, but would that make sense for?
What would be the net impact?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that it would, it would be no net impact, it would be just shifting it over. The, the only thing I would say is that while we're nowhere near the cap under second-class township code as it relates to the fire tax, the special purpose fire tax, there is a, there is a statutory cap on that. So shifting this from hydrant tax would be essentially using capacity under the cap in the event that there was a need to increase the special purpose fire tax to account for whether it's capital, whether it's changes in staffing arrangements, those kinds of things. So again, you could do it, but you, you would be, you would be using that, that capacity.
You have other questions by any supervisors?
Yeah, just a quick question, Tim. So you're saying it's your recommendation, we assume responsibility for the qualified private fire hydrants. They're currently privately owned. What problems would occur that we, we would fix that a private, like, say, a PUD or something already wouldn't be able to fix?
So the, if we take them over, they'll be considered public fire hydrants. There's a requirement under the PUC that PA American follows, that the fire hydrant has to be back in service within like 24 to 72 hours. If they're privately owned, there's nothing that falls under that category. So that fire hydrant could be bagged for months until funds are found from the homeowner association or the property owner, whatever, to fix that qualified private hydrant. If it's a totally private hydrant that's separate, a lot of times for our operations, we have it marked out that we don't really use those fire hydrants unless we really need to. We'll use the public fire hydrant because we know their service, we can get more water out of it, the line's bigger underneath the ground. So that's why I'm suggesting if we take the, the qualified private ones over and make them public, I can get those fire hydrants back in service quicker, so I don't have to worry about dropping more fire hose, delaying our water operations and stuff like that, so.
I'm just, and then the cost for that is going to be what exactly for taking those?
Um, you're looking at, if you're taking them over, it's, yeah, it's the $20 times the 105. So I did put the estimate in there to be at about 179,000 for, for the year, for the 736 public fire hydrants we would have now.
And that's going forward?
And, yeah, unless they raise their rates, which everybody seems to do every year, so.
Are there any other types of, are there any other private hydrants out there after, after this would be done? Like for businesses or anything like that?
The only, the only two types of hydrants we'll have in our township would be public fire hydrants and totally private. So like, for instance, I'll give you an example, make it Highlands, those two fire hydrants down that, that road are technically private hydrants. They're our responsibility, we have to test them, we have to make sure they flow water and stuff like that. That's no responsibility of the water company. There's about eight to 10 of them still in our township. I'm not looking to get rid of them, that's past the meter, because any water that comes out of there, we pay for, or whoever owns them pays for that.
What, in our, this, I don't want to get off topic, but in our code, obviously there's something in our code that's allowed for these private hydrants to be, that we're looking at taking over, to be, to be developed. Is that something else we need to look at for future developments?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can look at that. I'm not, I'm not sure that there's anything that specifically notes that in the code or enables it. I, I think it may just be an arrangement that's available through PA American Water.
And it's, it's, I'm sorry, Dave, it's an arrangement when a development goes in, whoever was the fire marshal would sign those, so they would either sign them as qualified private or public fire hydrants. And over the years, somebody signed them as qualified private hydrants to allow this to happen. So they really should have been signed as public fire hydrants, so they were taken care of by PA American, so.
I guess that's, might be a future policy issue, less, less.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it just, it just sounds like something prior boards might have thought was a cost savings, but really isn't.
Yeah, no, I agree, I'm just trying to figure.
Yeah. And are we, are we good with hydrants? And did you find the saddest looking hydrant to put on the cover? Was that?
Aren't they pretty sad looking? Yes, I know.
Did you want to, I, I mean, again, not to dwell on hydrants, but any mention, weren't, weren't you making some modifications to existing hydrants to, to, for, in terms of connections and so forth?
Yes, when we, when we modified the fire code last year, the 2018, we modified the requirements for the fire hydrants to put connections on there to increase our quickness to hook them up. So along with this, with the funds that we have in this, this hydrant fund, we can start retrofitting our fire hydrants to what we call a four-inch stork, which is the same connection we have on our fire hose, so we can make a quick connection, and then we can get water flowing a lot quicker. So we're going to start the process. As you see, we have a lot of fire hydrants in our, our township, so it's going to be a multi-year project. But many municipalities around us have them on there, and it just increases the response time to get the water to the fire truck, to the fire scene quicker, so. So we're going to be working on that, doing so many a year, so.
I had one other question, actually. Just for clarity, the PA American Water fees, so they charge the township to come in and flush these hydrants? Is that what happens?
They charge, we, we basically rent the fire hydrants from PA American.
Okay.
So every month, we get a bill for the 631 fire hydrants, $20 each. And with that fee comes with any flow testing every six months, and then any repairs, maintenance, weather preparation, clean out, anything like that, that's what that covers.
It's about $12,000 a month?
Correct.
$53,000 a year?
Correct.
You're looking to add another 737 or another 8,800 per year, with initial capital cost of 180,000 for the additional 59 fire hydrants, correct? So a one-time $180,000 purchase of those 60, 59 public fire hydrants, and an additional $800 a month for them to, for PA Water to test them and do, do the testing that they're doing, is that correct?
Yeah, it'll be 631 plus 105. The 59 public fire hydrants you see there are, we pay Marsville Fire Company. So down the lower end of our township, Marsville Water Authority comes in and is responsible for the fire hydrants.
Okay.
So we pay them a one-time fee, beginning of the year, 80, 8850, which I estimate it'd be 9,500 next year with their increase. So.
And just, I, I was talking to Allison, James, but just, you, you said something, did you say something about $180,000 payment to, there, there's no, that's the total cost all in, so it's not like we're purchasing these hydrants. Is that, is that, did you?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, that we were, since we're taking them over from a pub.
No, 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 there's no lump sum purchase. This is just the sum of, of what the respective monthly charges for the rental charge in essence would be, assuming that we would assume these, these additional hydrants. So there's no, there's no lump sum payment that we're making.
There's not like a one-time payment transfer, and then we have to pay for maintenance of them, it's just basically.
Correct.
Take the maintenance of the additional ones.
Correct.
PA Water sets the fee?
PA American Water sets the fee, yes.
So anyway, we can try to negotiate that?
That's a P.
I assume it's a tariff issue.
Yeah, they're regulated by them for the rates, so.
I'm sure they're high for.
Good luck with that.
Curious, because it seems like, seems like it's a pretty high rate for flushing, but maybe, maybe not.
And like I said, it's the flushing, the maintenance, if a fire hydrant breaks, they replace it right away, you know, within that timeframe. So that $20 a month for that fire hydrant, if it gets hit three times that year.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's interesting, we pay that much, given, anecdotally, looking at the picture you have on the cover and some that I've seen.
That, that's one of the private ones.
Well, I, well, I, I'm curious, because.
And, and that, and that was talked about with them when we met with them about keeping up on that, because once again, they say to have lack of manpower and that, but I told them that we need them to be up kept better with paint and stuff like that.
We, we've all seen some public ones, I think I had one not too far from me that is, that they recently did some work on, it looked pretty sad.
Yeah.
Didn't look much different from that picture. I hope we're, we're getting what we're paying for. That's the main, main idea.
So.
On from fire hydrants?
Yeah, fire fund, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just one, one small hydrant question, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Dave, from your, your budget worksheet, we're looking at a projected shortfall of $6,213 for the hydrant fund. Next year, assuming the 179, 290 for PA American Water, which I, I assume includes the purchase of these, these qualified private. So, you know, that's, that's moving in a bad direction for the, the hydrant fund, especially if costs increase year over year. Is that what we are talking about here, is we're going to be negative on this by 6,200 bucks?
What it's currently showing, yes, is that there's, there's $6,200 of, of, of fund balance that's being used. So there is a, there's a slight reduction in the, the ending fund balance. But again, there should be some growth from an assessment standpoint that will happen year over year. Again, it's, it's limited, but, but there is some assessment growth, so. It was, you know, with other, everything else sort of going on related to the budget, that, it seemed to be tolerable.
It's not the most important 6,200. Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we're moving on to the fire fund.
So with the packet that is in front of you, I broke it down, account per account, so we'll just go through them real quick. We'll, we'll start with the personnel. You see, I, it's up to 165. So this accounts for an increase in the time for the two part-time fire inspectors. When my position was created back in 2022, it started to become more involved with plan review, inspections of new businesses, a lot of being out on the road more and more. So the time needed for these fire inspectors to help me out, to keep me in, in the office to help out with, with plan review and stuff like that is, is essential. Also, looking into them as well, as you see, they work roughly 1,100 hours inspecting the 473 commercial properties, and not everyone gets inspected just because of the hours. So that, that increased hours will help. Along with this, they use their own cell phones, they have no vehicles to use. And comparing them locally around with fire inspector salaries, right now they're at 2646. I'm recommending up then to 2946, just because they're using their personal vehicles and personal cell phones when they're out doing these inspections. That's all in the 165 proposed, up of the personnel budget. So that's why it's up from the 125. And as you see, the explanation of the offsetting of the 125 and the 144 from the contracted services for this year, that mends the salary for this year. So you'll see the projected for the end of this year is 128, so it's going to be over to 125, but that 144 covered that, so.
Keep going.
Um, going down, I'm not going to hit a, a lot of the matching, the healthcare and stuff like that, uniforms, I kept it to 3,000. As you, you can see our fire inspectors, they are, they are represented very well with their identified uniforms, something they, they never had before, so I want to keep that up.
I just have a question.
I just. I'm sorry.
That's okay. A quick question about personal vehicles and cell phones. Are they, these, both of these fire inspectors, do we pay them through 1099? Are they, are they W2?
They're W2.
They are W2, okay. That was it, thank you.
Okay. Office administration that pays for all the printing of all their reports that the fire inspectors use. Also, this past year, as you, as you know, back in July and June, I think it was June, we honor a lot of our volunteer firemen or firefighters, so I like to do that as well. So that's why I upped it 1,000, just to, to present them with some, some honor and stuff like that. Fire prevention and safety material, I upped it 2,000. That category allows me to give out fire prevention material when I go out to the schools, coloring books, handouts, anything at that to promote the fire safety for the kids. Little kids love the coloring books, the squishies, everything like that. Also, it helps me giving out things to the residents when I do the smoke detector checks, and give them pamphlets about information about home fire safety and stuff like that, so that, that account covers that. Um, oh, sorry.
Sorry, quick question on that. So when we're talking to kids with fire safety stuff, are we using that as an opportunity to cross-sell opportunities to get people to volunteer?
We are, yes.
Okay, good.
Unfortunately, I can't get the five-year-olds to commit yet, but I'm trying.
Parents, right?
Yes.
You know, that's, what an ideal opportunity to use young children as a, a potential referral source for volunteer firefighters.
Exactly. I'm trying my eight-year-old artist. So no, it's a good point, no.
Come up with a commission program for the kids?
Oh, there we go. Good point, too. I like that.
Colin, I'm sorry, did you have a question? No? Okay, good.
Moving on to volunteer recruitment, I kept it at 10,000. So this past year, we put banners up around town, we sent the postcards out, which everybody should have got earlier this month. Pamphlets, handouts, magnets to promote the, the volunteerism. It has been very successful, as you can see. Last year, we had 31 active members, date, we have 45 active members. Now, when I break those members down, we have some more participating in the fire police activities than more firefighters, but they are still active members of the department, which are very, very good. So the recruitment is working, I want to continue to do it, send out the postcards and stuff like that, so we'll keep that at 10,000. The fuel and vehicle maintenance, we had 5,000 in there to cover the cost of the fire director's vehicle and the maintenance for it. I'm proposing to up it to 30,000. So the volunteer fire company pays about $22,000 a year in fuel. What happens with that is the township bills them, and then they give us money and pay for that bill. To alleviate some of the paperwork behind the scenes, I, I would like to just put everything into one lump sum of a fuel for the fire service, being technically they're paying for it out of the money that we give them anyway. So we can put all that in there. Along with that, I don't want to take away 20,000 that we give them in the fire tax money, because they can offset something else with that money. And I will explain in a couple minutes of, of their bills and, and what they, what their budget is and stuff, but.
So that's just an accounting move, or is it an actual delta? Okay.
Yes, and it'd be easier on, on everybody in the finance department of having the bill, and then the fire company having to cut checks and stuff, it's just a, yes.
So where do we see the offset? If, if, if the proposal is that account 251 is going up, what account is coming down?
I, I'm asking nothing to come down. I'm, I'm, I'm asking, we give the fire company 365. They pretty much take 22,000 of that and give it back to us for the fuel. Really, in the end, it's only about 343, or whatever it comes out to be. I'm asking to take over paying for the, or not paying for the fuel, put everything in one lump sum of a fuel account.
I, I think we're connected, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So you were, that 22 that they, we're, normally we'd give them money, they give it back to us, and we do some paperwork, give our accounting, finance department a headache, right? So that 22 extra that we would normally give them, that they would pay us back, what line item is that here? Like, we're talking right now about line 251. Which one is that here, where that, they pay it, that we give them, and they would pay us back normally?
So it's account 530. So again, he's, he's proposing an increase in, in the contribution of the volunteer fire company. So there is no net out, so he's, he's saying we would assume the additional cost associated with the fuel, and then in turn, he's recommending additional support to the volunteer fire companies.
So five, and I'm sure you're going to get to 530, but 530, if I see this correctly, is going, last year was 511 and change. This year, you're looking at 375, so there's, there's, there's drop, but.
The 511 and change includes the ARPA transfer to cover the, what was it, the throttle filling stations, I believe?
The filling, the breathing air stations.
Can you turn your mic on when you, when you speak? Thanks.
I get closer, sorry. No, that 511 number does include the. No, that 511 number does include the ARPA transfer that was, um, board approved for the bottle filling stations this year. So it's a little overinflated.
It's probably better to compare it to the 365 or 360 from years prior.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I still don't understand, but I'll figure it out.
Okay.
What, I, I was just going to say effectively 530 is going up $10,000 over prior year budget. And we're removing a $20,000, well, it looks like $25,000 expense burden from them. So it's an effective increase of $35,000 in contributions to the fire company.
That is correct. Yes.
Which comprises the vast majority of the $48,000 shortfall.
Keep going.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
You, you'll understand why I'm looking to try to get more help for them.
Yep.
Uh, contracted services, um, we're going to drop that down to 1,200. That was used in the past, um, for the third party that oversaw the two part-time fire inspectors. That's how that person was paid. We don't have that anymore. So all I'm asking to keep is 1,200 hours in there because we have to have one of my deputy volunteer fire marshals go to court. Because they did an investigation for me or helped with an investigation. There are court fees that the attorneys have to pay. So they'll pay us and then we're in turn pay them for their time. And that's where that would come out. So that just to keep minimal in there, that will never really go away because we'll reimburse the, the money from the attorneys when they pay for it. Page five, training.
I have a quick question about that. So I'm just reading this in 2022, in 2022, the 14, four was kept in this account?
It wasn't re, it should have been allocated up to the personnel account. So that 14, four has not been expensed this year for 23. So it's offsetting the overage in the personnel.
Shouldn't that have been kicked back to the general fund though? Cause the point of hiring Tim was to eliminate that salary, right?
But it's all, all of this is funded by special purpose, special purpose fire. It's not, it's not, it's not, doesn't relate to general fund at all.
Okay. Thank you.
It may just be some of the verbiage in this stuff that's a little hard to follow.
Okay.
Good.
Yes.
Uh, training and seminars, we kept it 2,000 to pay for any training that myself or the two part-timers have to attend to keep their certifications up. Um, communications, I dropped that down to 12,000. Uh, this past year I, I purchased a, a radio for the fire marshal's vehicle or fire director's vehicle. Which is still not here. It's taken almost 12 months and it's not supposed to be here till January. And I ordered it back in January. So the, the time it's taken for these radios is crazy, but, um, I kept it at 12 because I, I would like to purchase a, um, uh, radio for the office. Right now I'm currently using one of the, the fire companies. Um, and then I also like to purchase a laptop to help with investigations. Also with our CAD system in the county. Um, and then also using, um, my personal cell phone to serve reimbursement for that. Um, that would come out of the communications fund as well. So. We'll go down and casualty insurance, workman's comp dues or any dues and descriptions that need it for, um, us to keep our memberships with different investigation companies, um, NFPA, stuff like that to keep us, uh, myself and the two inspectors. Excuse me, certified. Uh, page six miscellaneous equipment. Uh, this was 2,000 this past year. I'm up, I'm asking to up it to 3,500. This past year I bought a lot of hand tools and stuff for the vehicle. Um, this year I like to purchase a gas meter for the vehicle. So if I have to go out somewhere, I can actually monitor any gas levels, um, a camera for fire investigations. So I don't use, uh, small one, um, and some miscellaneous, uh, investigation equipment to put in the vehicle.
Tim, can I?
Yes.
Sure. When, when you're doing, when you're doing your investigation, taking photos, all that stuff, how did? This, uh, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to understand how it works. Um, how does it work with, we have the fire police and there's a, there's a group within the volunteer group that has, I don't know if there's an overlapping role, at least it's, to me, it sounds like they might have a similar role. So I'm just curious. Your role, obviously you guys augment each other, you work together, all that stuff and, and you know them better than anyone. So I'm just trying, I just want to understand how, how it operates. When, when you're doing an investigation, who does what? What are you responsible for? So that we know. All right. He, he needs this stuff and why? And these guys have this stuff. They're doing something different. So we're not double dipping.
No, it, no, it's a good question. So fire police, they actually assist the police department with directing traffic, crowd control and stuff like that. So that's their job on an emergency scene. Firefighters are doing the, the operational stuff. When it comes down to an investigation, um, it's myself. Um, and I actually have four deputy volunteer fire marshals that assist me if they're there. Um, and then we split up roles. Um, one will actually start doing interviews. Um, one will start sifting through, um, debris. Um, another one will start taking photos. So it's not pinned on one person and you're there for six hours. So they all have their niche. One person loves to take photos. One guy loves to talk to people. Um, one guy loves to dig. The fire marshal I took over for, um, Kenny Richards, God bless his, you know, soul. You're getting older. So he digs for five minutes and takes a break, which is fine, but I use him for his knowledge. Um, so we all have our defined roles there. Um, when, um, an incident occurs and I don't have all them, then we have to take on those roles ourselves. So, um, if we do have a fire and my photographer quote unquote is in there, then I have to use my iPhone or somebody else has to grab a phone or I gotta call, you know, and try to get one. So that's why I'm looking at purchasing a, a, a camera and stuff like that. So we try to share the roles. We do an investigation as a team, but it's usually one person that leads it. So if we gotta go to court, it's usually if I'm there, it's myself or I assign another one that takes the lead. So. Try to do it.
The company doesn't have a camera that gets shared around. It's, it's more probably a, someone who's a pretty good photography hobby or something and likes.
He loves to take pictures. Yes. Yes. So.
Thanks for that.
Mm-hmm. Moving on. Um, so we'll go to account 530 as we kind of talked with the fuel and maintenance. So this past year was 365. You know, the 511, 406, like Allison said, that's why it's, it's, it's up. But I'm asking to up at the 375. Along with not charging them for the fuel, which will give them another $20,000. So yes, it's a, it's a $30,000 swing basically. But as you can see and look through this packet, everything that has been purchased past couple of years with their funds from us. Um, and remember we give them 365. Um, and a lot of the stuff that they had to replace over the last couple of years have cost a pretty penny. Along with this, to increase volunteerism, to keep the current volunteers, we, they've started a low sat program. They started the, uh, incentive program. Those programs alone cost us almost, or cost the fire company almost 56, there are $86,000 a year just to try to benefit and keep the, the current membership that we have. Um, it's been successful. It's been able to keep us from having to worry about hiring paid staff years ago. Um, and I want to try to help them and offset some of that stuff. So that's, that's where the, taking over the fuel and offsetting that along with increasing them $10,000, um, to do that. The benefits that are all offered, as you can see, past the next couple of pages are all covered by the fire company, paid for by the fire company out of the, the budget, um, and the money that we, or a, a lot to them through the, the tax. So. Any questions on?
Roland.
Okay, good. Um, the rest is the contribution that we get from the, uh, state allocation. So it's the relief, the money's to Marsville and, uh, Yardley, uh, Makefield. So that's, that's pretty much staying the same. It's really depends on what we get in, um, and then the pension for, for, for myself. So. I'll move on to the revenue side. So, um, working with Dave and stuff like that, um, we kept it at 1.1 mils. As you see on page 11, I just kind of gave you a breakdown over the past 22 years of the millage, um, and the contributions to each department, Yardley and Marsville, what they've gotten.
Happened between 2004 and five, the millage dropped.
Yeah, I, I don't, so this is a mystery because I, everything that I ever read is, you know, Bucks County hasn't done reassessments since 1972. Um, but there seems to be something that occurred in 2020 or 2004. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. Perhaps somebody that's lived here longer would, would know that, but, this supposition that was offered to me is that it was reduced to, cause, because of, because of reassessment, but I, I don't, again, I don't, that doesn't, everything that I read, it's 1972 for Bucks County. So I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, John.
Uh, moving on down, plan review.
I mean, the ability to drop it was, whatever happened was great because the cap is 3% under the second class township code, three mils. So, um, so if you were, you were. Yeah.
Moving on, um, plan review, there was nothing budgeted for this past year. Um, I really had no idea what we would, uh, generate from being involved with this. 2024, I just put 10, $10,000 in there based on, um, so far we brought in almost 18. Interest earnings, the state shared revenues, as I talked about with the relief money. Um, we were good this year. We brought in 311. So it was up again this year, which was good. So. Um, fire inspection fees, we, um, up the inspection fees last year, um, which increased the, the revenues for that. Um, so I, I pretty much kept it the same for that as well. You go to page 14, I have some proposed future items that I like everyone to kind of look at and, and ponder over. I don't know if everybody knows on the board, but the township does own a fire truck. Um, we bought it, um, back in 2018.
I think technically 2017. I think that was a.
Yes.
For us.
Yeah, it was pretty, yeah. Um, so.
It's a tank Toyota.
I signed the check. Yeah.
So, um, at the time there was no money allocated to purchase that. So money was taken from the 2016 bond after working with Allison to figure where it came from. And we're almost paying about 50,000 a year to pay that off. Um, fire company has a replacement plan and also NFPA, which is, I know their guidelines and recommendations, but, um, recommend that any truck over 15 years old should not be a first out piece. This rescue truck runs out first from the firehouse across McCaffrey's on any kind of emergency because it has rescue tools on and stuff like that. Which mind you, the truck is owned by us, but all the equipment, all the maintenance, all the replacement of tools are all purchased by the fire company themselves. Um, so if anything ever does happen, we have a fire truck, but nothing comes with it. So, um, I would like to look at starting some kind of capital reserve fund. You start planning on when this truck is due to be replaced. Anymore, these trucks are, are looking at 1.5 to $2 million to replace. The fire company has, like I said, a good replacement plan. Um, so when it comes to a time when it, it's in the plan to replace, they almost get half of what was paid for because of the upkeep maintenance, um, and the cleanliness they keep these vehicles at. So it helps, but I, I'd like to look into doing something as a reserve fund. So when the time comes, we have the money in there. Along with that, with that money, the interest off it to offset things. Also too, if at the time we decide we're not going to purchase a fire truck, we're going to let the fire company purchase all the fire trucks. That money can be used to offset other things such as personnel, renovations to a fire station, whatever needs to be done for the fire service. So the money's not going to go to waste, but, um, instead of having to borrow money, I would like to look into that.
Tim, just for everybody at, at home or even the people here in the room. Can you maybe in three sentences or less, explain the difference between us and the fire department? Cause I think some of the confusion that's being caused is, you know, people see the fire departments and they think the fire departments are lower Makefield, but they are clearly a separate entity with their own budget. Right?
Correct. So the Yardley Mayfield Fire Company is a separate company that we actually pay to provide fire protection for the township with the fire tax. Um, they have set up a relief association that, where it's that we get the state revenue funds from. So they manage their own money. They have their own budget. They show it to us every year. Um, so they're their own entity. If anything ever happens to them, we are ultimately responsible for fire protection. So if they ever fold, they can't get out, they don't have manpower, anything like that, it falls back on us. So our support to them is, is needed. We, we need them just as much as they need us. So as much support as we can give them, I mean, that's what we're looking for. So when we say us and, and the fire company, the fire company is your own entity itself. It's not anything under the township per se.
And then just to go back for a second, um, about the two fire inspectors who help with the inspections that you're thinking about.
Yes.
Possibly, uh, giving an increase to. I'm not saying there has to be a match because I don't, my brain doesn't really work that way, but you know, we're going to pay salaries, the W2s of an amount of approximately 165,000 if I'm reading that correctly. And we generate in revenue, if you want to call it that, related to fire inspections. Um, a much smaller amount.
So just to clarify, the 165 includes Tim's cost as, as well. So that, that is not just related to the inspection services that are, that, that, um, fees are being charged for. So the inspectors, um, of that amount are probably in the neighborhood of what roughly 60,000 or so?
Um, with, if you look down on page 14, with the increase in the time that I would like to ask them to work, it would be 53, five for the both of them for the year. And we generate about 55,000 just from the registration fees, not including the plan review fees. So.
Okay.
It kind of covers their, their two salaries. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Cause I, I definitely thought when we were talking about account 100 and the verbiage came under that.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it.
So that, that would basically cover their salaries, but they still need training and they still need equipment. They still need other stuff that.
And that's where, yes, some of the miscellaneous costs come in. Yes.
Tim, on the
Yes.
Fire capital reserve fund. The, the 2018 truck is the only asset that the township owns. Everything else is owned by Yardley Makefield Fire Company, right?
Owned by the fire company or the relief association. Yes.
Yeah. So the question, uh, the question is, is your thought that the fire capital reserve fund is just for that one truck? Meaning that we want to focus on having, you know, providing and owning and operating the, the most recent equipment, which has a lot of the expense as opposed to the other stuff that they currently hold as assets? Or is there an advantage for us doing it versus the fire company in terms of our, we can borrow cheaper, we can be faster or anything like that?
That's something that we, I'm going to keep an eye on in the future because right now the way, the way the fire company buys their stuff is any large piece apparatus from basically a pickup truck, uh, is purchased by relief association. Right now, the way the relief association guidelines work is any career staff cannot use any of the relief purchased equipment. So when everything was going on, the township actually owned two fire trucks at one time. When the fire company replaced the 2003 tower ladder, township told them, just put it in your name or find. So it was bought by relief. When the rescue truck came up, they decided to keep, suggest to keep it in the township name. Just for the instance that if in the future that cur, per career personnel is hired, there's no red tape of using relief owned stuff and career stuff. There's still one truck that the career staff could use. It's owned by the township. Uh, moving forward, the relief guidelines are looking to change. So there's no red tape with that anymore because a lot of more fire companies are becoming combination per se. So you can purchase stuff for career staff from relief money. They can use all relief on the equipment. So that should go away. In the future, we can look at maybe the fire company purchases all the big equipment. And the township just goes and helps them with personnel to fill the, the needs that they need. So we don't have to worry about that, but that capital reserve fund could be used to offset salaries, offset maybe modifying the firehouse to accommodate these career staff personnel if they put their offices there or, or whatever. Um, it's just something that, um, I believe should be created because if down the line, time comes for the truck. Time comes for the truck and it's like, no, we, we want to keep it in our name. We have money that we can actually. Put down. So if we do take, if we do lease, whatever, we have money that we can lease with. I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I, that. Makes a good point. Um, I'm generally sympathetic, uh, specifically when it comes to replacement of equipment, creating a fund. Building up the fund so that we don't have to necessarily borrow for it. Um, and I'd be okay with some of the flexibility if things change, right? If we say, okay. But I, if we're going to create one, we say, okay, we have the twenty eighteen truck. That we need to plan for, which we think has what's twenty thirty-three. So that's coming pretty soon. And we say, okay, between now and then we're going to do over one ninth the total cost of the truck. That projected cost and then just put that away so that we're ready for that. I, I would be okay with that because then, and, and I guess. Are we up against a cap for the millage here or no?
So, no, right now you're at one point one. Um, the budget, just to be clear, as, as proposed is still showing one point one. So the, the, these are items that Tim is trying to communicate to you as either being items that you can act upon. This year, but in acting upon that would, would necessitate an increase in, in the special purpose fire tax. Um, or items that you may just want to consider as you're, um, as you're moving forward. You know, on the apparatus, um, again, I'm sure there, there could be two sort of counter perspectives. One would be to. You know, do some incremental sort of set aside for purposes of, of essentially making a pay-go purchase. Um, or somebody could say, well, why not just finance the purchase when the purchase materializes? Um, and then at that point, um, again, you have, um, you know, an asset that, that has. You know, a fifteen-year useful life, um, based on NFPA recommendations. You know, maybe you do a, you know, a, a ten-year lease purchase sort of arrangement. Um, so there's different financing. And again, I'm not advocating for one or the other at this point, um, but that, that's, that is an alternative. And so. In part, um, again, with some of the other discussions that, um, we anticipated getting into as it relates to this budget. The, uh, current budget has shown again retains the millage rate at one point one and does not create this. Capital reserve fund for purposes of this, uh, apparatus purchase. Um, again, if the board, you know, wishes to, to go in that direction, that's something that, that, you know, we could do. Um, but there are other options that would be available if, if the need for the purchase of that apparatus would materialize at some point in the future.
I, I gotta ask the question because it, you know, we have a truck, but yet we don't have anyone to use the truck. That's a township employee, you know, to drive that there mentally for me. Well, uh, he'd be driving Zola. So. What if? I'm trying to think of different, I'll just say that what if we gifted the truck or sold the truck to the, to the. Fire company and we, so they took ownership of it instead of us or put it on paper.
They can drive our stuff. We can't drive their stuff. So they're allowed to drive our truck. What Tim's, what Tim said was that. If we ever really have of a high, uh, paid fire department staff. Our people can't drive any of their stuff. So if we give them this truck, now nobody but them.
So that, that's a good segue into my next question.
There you go.
It's, you knew it was coming. Um, you were saying that recruitment's been working, right? Forty-five versus thirty-one, if I heard that. So that's, that's a big feather in the cap for you. Um, so that leads me to think. You know, why, why would we need to hire more folks if, if recruitment's actually working? So an increase that.
No, 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 no.
You know, because you're giving us good information and it sounds very positive. So now I'm like, okay. That's all good stuff. So why, what, and like John said, I'm all about. No matter what the fund is, if we have to buy stuff, always have a capital reserve as best we can. That, you know, public works will hear me say that all the time. They know that. So that, that I think is smart. I think that that's a smart move. So now I want to understand. Can, can we, can we shake the, can we? Shake the ownership of that truck and so that we don't have to carry it and then replace it in the future. Directly through the township budget, maybe it's through helping the, the fire, you know, something we would normally do, I think, right? And then reassess whether or not in a few years here, whether, depending on how recruitment's going and everything else, whether or not we actually have to hire someone. That, that's, that's my.
All right. And, and I understand where you're coming from and I totally agree. And like I said, there's a, the red tape on the relief side of stuff owned, I think is going to break. So if that comes over and there's career staff hired in the future, there will be no problem of using whatever equipment the fire company owns, we own, whatever. To move quickly, because I know times of, of an essence here, flip to the last two pages. Of the packet that I gave you when you talk about recruitment and stuff like that. Yes, our recruitment numbers are up. Yes, we got a lot of active members. When you break down those members, there's two charts I want you to look at. The bottom of page eighteen, the average age of our membership is fifty-three point seven four years old.
But does that not include the new volunteers or did you recruit?
That includes the new volunteers.
So on average, then if we went up, the people that you recruited were over age fifty-three?
Um, I've, I've gotten some sixty and seventy-year-olds, yes.
I thought, I'm not, I, I'm sure you know, I just remember the picture on Facebook. They, they looked much younger.
Got some youngers, but they're, they're not offsetting my older ones. Um, and then we talk about future staffing. Um, the next chart on page nineteen shows the average age of the, the fire truck that responds. That the township owns from the Woodside Station across from McCaffrey's. Daytime is fifty-six years old. So daytime, we are limited on our, our younger people, as you saw on the picture and stuff like that. So. In the future, in the near future, and as you can flip through this packet, because I have some more information, but I won't spend time on it. Um, you can see that we might need some daytime help. With getting the fire service out for the fire company, I'm saying. So that ownership of this truck could come key if. We have to hire personnel in the next one to three years for daytime purposes, you know what I'm saying?
No, it's good information. I appreciate that.
So.
I have a quick question. Volunteers, are they limited to being township residents?
No.
Okay.
No, we, we have some volunteers that live outside of, of Lower Makefield and Yardley Borough, yes.
All right, good. Excellent.
Our twenty twenty-three call volume, is it tracking higher or lower than last year, which is really high comparative?
Um, right now, we're just at five hundred right now. We just, we said, our five hundredth call today. So we're tracking, eh, it fluctuates unfortunately.
Yeah, so that's.
But.
Okay.
As, as I like to explain to people, the, the call volume, yes, it's, it's not in, in the thousands as you would see city companies. Um, but the, um, amount of, uh, protection we give to the people with the properties that we protect is growing. So, um, the, the, the value that we, we save them, um, as a, as a fire service is, is invaluable. I'll put a number on it. So, so. I will end, end with that.
Really, really quick question. When we do a new development, that's, that's going in and we do a development agreement. Any of that go to you? To, to your, to, is there a fee assessed for fire services as part of a development agreement?
Nothing, nothing beyond the, uh, uh, just the, the increased assessed value that ultimately is subject to the tax that, that is the special purpose tax that's, that's. Helping to support the fire company.
That's something that would be legal to do if we wanted to consider that in the future.
Uh, I, I would have to look at, I, I don't know that that's legal, but, um, but I, but I, but I can, we can.
Being loose, we got other stuff being loose. So I'm, I'm just curious. And then we, other, other sources of revenue that we're considering, right? Come, you just talked about the, um. Firework stuff and, and that last meeting, right? With potentially not just fireworks, but fire alarms, all that stuff. And then, and if we, you know, um, special event permits could be a fee associated that, that could also create some.
Correct. Yes, we talked about that. And we also talked about use and occupancy inspections. Not for new places, but. Places that move in, don't do any renovations that don't require a permit, there'll still be a use and occupancy permit they need to get. Which will require a fee and inspection by myself and the building code official.
And it probably a yes or no. Is this, is any of that contemplated in this budget this year? Any of those revenues?
Not those two, no, no. The only ones that are, are in this budget for this year are the ones that I've generated so far. And I estimate it what I'd be bringing next year for the fire plan review and the fire permits for that stuff. Yep.
There's not, there's nothing that would prevent, again, through adoption of a fee schedule that you would address those issues in twenty twenty-four. Um, they're just not reflected from a budgetary standpoint. And so when, you know, we're looking at. Sort of overall performance in the fund, there may be some opportunity for additional revenue to offset, um, some of the utilization of fund balance here. So.
Trying to get you some money. Yeah, that's fine. Take whatever you can give me.
Yeah, thank you. The presentation was really good in terms of how you structured it and given us the detail we need. So.
Thank you. Any questions you have, just reach out.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
As, as Tim's leaving and you don't have to come back to the mic, I just wanted to say thirty-five thousand dollars given to the volunteer fire company I know will be used very well. So I'm not scrutinizing how they use their money.
Hey, Mike, you're next.
I missed it.
COVID killed.
It always went, it always went to them. Oh, mine did.
Evening, everyone. I'm Chair. Thank you for having us today. Uh, Brian McCleskey here with Mayor. Finance Director, um. Appreciate being able to speak to the budget and, uh, go through everything. I apologize. I'm going to be on and off with my glasses looking at these numbers. But, um, I, I thought maybe we take this and kind of, let me give you a quick overview, uh, and then we can kind of jump into the. Um, each sheet and kind of talk through each page of the, of the budget revenues in each of the departments. You know, first, I think our investments into the property over the, uh, over, over the years with food and beverage operation, our banquets. And our driving range are showing some great results now. A few years back, we were talking about a lot, talking a lot about food and beverage and. We're going to hit our first one million dollar mark in, in food and beverage this year, which is, uh. Uh, a, a really nice thing to say. So seeing that happening, um, on the driving range, the top tracer investment, we're seeing. Uh, some great results. We're, uh, currently about twelve percent over revenue right now from last year, which was up from the prior year. We're about two hundred thousand, uh. We hit the two hundred thousand mark right now through, uh, September, uh, looking, looking to track well over, over that obviously. Once we get through November. Top Tracer's doing great. Sessions are up. We're doing, uh, about five hundred and forty-nine sessions or engagements that we're having with the customer. Up over from four hundred and twenty-six last year. So that investment and that impact that that's making, it's also helping our lessons. Our lessons are up. From a hundred thousand to about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, through September. So things that continue to track, uh, in those areas that we've invested in, in, in the operation, obviously. There's still some needs, uh, as far as capital that I'll, I'll address as we get through the, through the sheets. But overall, we're, uh, we're continuing to look, look, uh, very positive. Uh, rounds through October this year are forty-six thousand eight hundred. Last year was forty-four thousand, five thirty-eight. So a little over two thousand more rounds this year. Um, we still are going to continue to budget in that forty-three thousand range. Um, just because of weather, it was a pretty, pretty good weather year, a little, little bit of hiccups in September, but for the most part, um. Uh, weather was, was fantastic and continues to be. So with that, you know, we like to be conservative over the past ten-year mark, forty-three thousand's been kind of our, our magic number to kind of use with. Rainy years and, and drier years. So that helps us kind of work from that number. Um. But if we start on golf participation fees on the first page, um. Continue to look at, um, you know, slight increases. Again, these are against numbers of a couple of thousand less. So if we do the same. Uh, number of rounds of golf we're doing this year, we, we would expect, uh, those numbers continue to grow. Uh, we would put some slight increases in the rates and propose those for the springtime again. Um, within a dollar to two dollar increases, uh, across the board.
Mike, you're basing those, uh, recommendations on some kind of survey of other like courses and what they're.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, right now what we're saying, I mean, we still kind of sit at the top tier of the, of the pricing and the market. Um, we still tend to do at the top tier of the number of rounds of golf in the market. So when we're looking at. At the stats that we get from, and we get those through, uh, through data, through PGA and Golf Course Owners Association. We're still tracking really well. Um, so, you know, it's supply and demand type, type situation and, you know, the, the golf course, uh, is in great shape all year. So I think. I think, you know, it certainly demands, uh, the rate that we're, we'll be looking. So, you know, a couple of highlights, driving range again, still kind of looking at, um, you know, uh, slight increases throughout the range and. Uh, cart revenues, we think will continue to go up. Handicap fees, those things that are all related to golf and, and food and beverage. I think we're, we got a budget when you add it all up to about. A little over a million, million fourteen thousand two hundred. So all in, we're looking at three million eight forty-six, nine fifty versus. Projection of about three million seven seven three this year. So.
Mike, on, on food, food and beverage are our favorite topic with the golf course, right? Um, I noted it looks significant increase, uh, in revenue, uh, I think. In, in banquet-related items. So it seemed obvious, I'm guessing you've been marketing more for, for banquet-style.
Yeah, yeah, the, the marketing, um, we've, we've hired a new banquet, uh, sales manager this year. She's really. Has done a terrific job kind of getting into that position. And just overall, you know, we're just starting to see more, more calls, more activity and she's closing more, more banquets than we were. So that's.
In terms of food and beverage, um, you know, we've talked about the kitchen versus, versus, uh, what we can, you know, how, how we operate things over the years. Have you done any recent market analyses to see what, uh, a restaurant with similar number of tables? Could or should produce in revenue per year, given the hours that are operated to see what, what our goal might be for, for improvement if.
Yeah, I can't say we've done a analysis of other restaurants. We're very different. Yeah. I mean, versus other golf courses, um, most golf courses. Look at F and B and tend to look at that as a, a lost leader, uh, honestly, in, in, in most cases. So. Having a profitable food and beverage operation alone and in a golf market is positive. Um, so we are very different than kind of the, the restaurant on the, you know, on the main street type thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
You need to drive them there, but we also have a captioned audience with the golfer. So what we are seeing, I think, from. The menu standpoint and the product is that more people are staying and eating and, you know, so we're seeing the a la carte increasing. Um, and then banquet piece as well.
Here, I'll give you a few criticisms just based on anecdotal. Um, some, some of the issues we've, I, I try to go over with my family every now and again. Get something just on a whim, see what's there. Um, oftentimes try to call ahead, see what, see if there is a banquet or something. And but whether it's in the evening, early evening or on the weekend or something like that, and no, can't get, can't get through to see if what's going on. And we've had times where we get there and it's like, oh, sorry, banquet, we can't get anything. Or we, we get there and there's very, very slow service. Um, so just looking for ways to improve, improve that. And that's more communication. I know you, you've been active on social media, trying to promote certain things and doing some different things, which is good. It's just. With restaurants, anything else reliability i- in terms for me to go or anyone to go and say, okay, I want to go get it. Maybe I want to go get a beer because it's forty-five seconds away from where I live. It's just a neat place to go because it's a nice, nice setting. But then you can't tell if you're, if you can go in or not. So you never say like, all right, I'm just not.
Yeah. And then honestly, with the, with the phone this year, we spent literally almost three, month and a half, the last two months with Verizon trying to get. We had literally one phone line coming into the building.
Yeah.
That's resolved, thank heavens. But we did have some challenges with the phone this year.
We'll point, counterpoint, uh, I, I think the increase is due to the Blundies. They're.
Are you regulars now?
Yeah, we're there. Uh, thank you for bringing in the big cubes. Um, it's a great place to get a good old fashioned at a reasonable price. I think we can do more. I'm, I'm confused as to why people besides us don't go there. Um, and I appreciate that the, the golf community is the target. And I don't have a solution yet, but I think, I think we can do better. I was wondering, you had those signs up Woodside Road for a while. They were not intended to be long term, and I'm wondering if there's, you know, similar, similar golf courses have a nice sign up front and maybe. You know, you could hang open or something and and that might drive some people on the way in.
Yeah, 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 we've done, we've done a few different things. There were, we've had some issues with, with some of the neighbors on putting stuff on the fence, so we've been. We've been a little careful with that, honestly. But yeah, we can look at the signage and certainly, certainly look at that. But overall, again, the the numbers are kind of speaking to improvement and growth.
We like seeing that.
On both sides, so. Someone's, someone's liking it out there, so it's good, it's good news. So that kind of takes the revenue side, if anybody's got any questions on.
One, one quick, Mike, remember, this has to be five years ago. We did an analysis of ARPU, or average revenue per golfer. Between what we were doing versus peers.
Yeah.
And at that time, the reason for food and beverage was we were doing really well in the greens fees, we were crushing it there, but we weren't doing as well as peers. On food and beverage. Have we gone back to take a look at one of those?
We do, we, we look at it pretty regularly, John. It's, again, the, the data isn't awesome right now, but. It's getting better because more golf courses are starting to participate. A national program that golf course owners are providing. So looking at the data, yes, we are continuing to see growth, and again, it just kind of ties to the number, we got about a seventeen, eighteen percent. Growth and on the restaurant side, and we're seeing that against our competitors, so it continues to go on it.
Yeah.
Page two, go on the golf course account, course and grounds. I'll, I'll just hit the highlights. You know, chemicals, fertilizers, gas, oil, they're the ones that we're just struggling, you know, the, the cost of those things continue to go. Petroleum base products and, and things like that are are really what the difference is from. You know, budget versus actual to what we're looking at for next year, so, you know, being conservative, you know, rather. Budget a little higher there on those areas, just, just to be, to be safe. We've, we've noted on equipment leases, we've kind of maintained the lease number there, which. Kind of helps us through, as, as leases are falling off, we're starting to save some dollars. We've got the fairway mowers coming in, we ordered them last year or this year into, for next year, so that'll keep that number. Steady and we'll see again another lease fall off in twenty five, I think. I think we had another one falling off in twenty five, so again, will give us that opportunity to continue to do our, our normal replacement of equipment. Without changing the, the dollars. Repairs and maintenance, we got thirty thousand in there, budget was thirty three. We're, we're running a little light at twenty six, which is great, and then with the new fairway mowers and the new rough mower we bought this year. We feel like we're not going to be spending because a lot of our money was going into those pieces, so we, we feel like we'll be safe at that number, so slight increase from. You know, seven, you know, we're looking at around seven fifty, we're going to end the year at seven eighty one, and like I said, most of that's kind of hitting in those. In those areas that are the uncontrollables. Just the bottom of the page, practice range, that's just the driving range. Walls and supplies, slight increase there, same thing, golf ball prices are continuing to increase, our range balls are going up in price, so just. Just to manage price increases. Next page starts with carts, so that department, pretty steady, don't expect any, any real changes there. On the, on the cart side, that, those, that is the. The staff who is handling the outside ops with cleaning and managing the range and and the golf carts. And then obviously the lease is, is steady and the repairs and maintenance is contracted. There, so those we expect to be about the same. On the pro shop side, we made a little change in payroll. With, with some greeters and starters, we're kind of handling some of the starting from the front of the building, which is helping with greeting on. A little better customer service, so someone standing out there greeting the customers as they pull up and also acting as a starter part of the day. So we see that as a way, probably save a few dollars from what we were doing throughout the year this year. So overall, no real. Changes in in this department, I think we're going to end up right about where we budgeted this year and or spent this year. Going into food and beverage. Nothing of real significance and about the same on, on, on wages, we did. Lose a chef this year and hired a new chef recently who's doing a great job. Israel's doing wonderful in there and putting out some great specials, some great food, so hopefully some people will be coming out and trying some of our specials. But doing some really nice stuff on the, on the a la carte side and.
They have a lovely fried chicken with a honey barbecue sauce reminiscent of Nashville.
Yeah, Nashville, yeah. Yeah, there's been, he's been doing a really nice job on, so he's really picking up, I think, what maybe some of the things. As Granger was talking about, as far as the selections and the options, and he was changing a little more regularly, so. Pretty good stuff, so.
Dave, but in terms of revenue, when we're looking at accounting of revenue versus expenditures. Food, food and beverage on the revenue side seems to be rolled up under golf participation fees along with a lot of golf stuff. Versus, obviously I'm oversimplifying, versus in expenditures, there's a specific food and beverage number. It would be, it would be nice to have it be the same or similar so we could compare.
Yeah, yeah, and we do do that on our financials, so when we submit our financials, we do have it broken down by department, so you can see the revenues, costs of goods. For each or golf.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that issue from a presentation standpoint, again, I, I, this is just simply how you've been doing it, but. I, I would, I would agree, I mean, it, for comparative purposes from the revenue and expense side, it, that, that makes sense.
You know, ideally, the reason we'd want that data is the pro shop and the food and beverage, what's our margins on that? So yes, we've got some increase in revenue, but as I'm trying to calculate some of that, and I'll do that when I get my laptop. You know, what's our mar, what's our margin on the pro shop? Now granted, I know most of that salary is for starters and it's not for the merge stuff, but. That's kind of one of the metrics we want to be looking at.
Yeah, we, and we do, we look at, you know, I was, it's a real percentage game, so this year, I think revenues are up. About eighteen percent over budget. So every, you know, the, the cost of those, of that's going up a little bit too, trying to manage to that percentage and make sure we're not going the other way. But we can, we kind of, we do supply that, so if that's something we can work in so that you guys get a little bit of reporting, that's fine, it is available. Going down to marketing, no real, no real change there, we expect marketing to kind of stay steady, so we left the budget the same. General administrative, probably little savings on the salary side, Ellen, who was our longtime. Bookkeeper has retired and then decided she really would like to do some work, so she kind of, she and I made, made an agreement for her to come back. She's, she's actually been doing terrific and it really is saving us some, some dollars that way, so we'll save a little on the salary there. Everything there, the, under legal is really the insurance, we didn't have a line item to put that in, I think I highlighted that. That was what I talked about with the liquor insurance, you know, one of the cost of selling more liquor is the cost of insurance of more liquor. So there's a slight increase there, so.
What, what are credit card charges? Is that just like three percent that credit card company charges?
Yeah, three, yeah, it's about three, three and a half, and that, that's a question mark for, you know, conversations as we go forward, we're going to start putting some. These on some of the credit cards. And I know, and it's something maybe we could talk about as far as, you know, policy, what town policy it would be, but. You know, for some of our bigger events, for our outing and things and the banquets, we're asking them if they're going to pay by credit card, that they're going to, you know, just cover those. Cover those fees and then some golf courses now are putting it on, on green fees and on everything they're selling, so just like the restaurants are, so. There is opportunity to make a big savings there, or do we look at just maybe raising prices? Two schools of thought.
So Mike, I had assumed that was related to the phenomenon you told us about people having cards file.
Yeah.
So has that issue been corrected or fixed, or is that still an?
Yeah, we've, we've, we've kind of weaned them off that concept, you know, they got comfortable with, you know, throw it on my card kind of thing, and so, yeah, we've been weaning them off of that. And the only place we really use that is during league nights, which is just a convenience, it's so. You know, a hundred people coming at you at one time, it's so much easier to, to take care of them and get them set up on their carts and them not having to all stand in line, basically. So beyond that, we've, we've gotten, gotten better about trying to take their card off file and make them dip the card.
Is that, is that a contractual thing? I guess if they dip it into the device and they're being disclosed that they're being charged that fee, I think that's, is that how, what the coach is, or? If, if we decide to do go that way?
The card, then your PCI compliance and your rate's better. So if they don't, if you don't have a card that's actually physically being. Dipped into the device, then you're paying actually a hard fee. If you swipe a card, it's one fee, if the card's not shown, it's another fee.
That's amazing.
Credit cards.
Well, tap versus slide. Tap and slide the same?
Tap, tap and dip is the same.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you want them to be doing.
Okay.
Versus swiping or like a card on file.
Got you.
If you really wanted to lower the cost, you'd structure an ACH program to their checking accounts. That, but you, the question is, would high intensity customers or the, like, Desil One customers. Would they go for that if they felt like it was part of a loyalty program?
Preferred tee times, that sort of thing?
Or even just.
Almost, yeah. Done it with our private clubs.
I mean, private.
Yeah.
That's how I settle up at our, a couple of clubs that we belong to.
Yeah, yeah, as a membership, that's generally. Free, it's a little, they're a little more comfortable doing that, I'm not sure in a public. Although they are very comfortable with putting the card on file, so.
Yeah.
Which all kind of happened during COVID, you know?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, when a person signs up for the app or signs up online for the scheduling. Instead of asking for the credit card, I'll ask for their routing and transit number. And say, okay, the first time you do it, we'll give you a five dollars off, and then, you know, the next time that it's already preset. And it becomes, you know, a benefit, so that's sort of the trade off of that.
Yeah, it is definitely less expensive. I actually have a call with.
I'll start paying by check when we come.
Don't take her checks.
What's a check? Yeah, you don't see, you don't see checks. But yeah, that's a good idea. I do have a call with the, with our app company, so I'll bring that up and see if they do. Then flipping the page, still in G and A. Kind of gets you down to the bottom of that page. The, the, the key items here I wanted to talk about was capital. Kind of where we are with capital and then going down to. Where the transfers were and how the transfers are set, so I've earmarked. Two hundred thousand dollars for capital, and then I've earmarked two hundred and twenty five thousand in the transfer to the capital fund. And I left the transfer of the general fund the same and left the transfer to the golf fund, golf bond repayment the same. With the idea that we know we have a, a pond issue that we've been talking about for, I guess, before I've been here. And, you know, something, you know, that needs to be addressed, the board at one time. Was about to address it, you know, we, we bid it out and then decided at that point not to fall through with the bid, through with the project. But, you know, it's a continued cost, you know, and the cost of water right now is just obviously getting more expensive, so. I think if we did a transfer of the capital fund for the next two years, we, you know, guarantee that we'd have that money available in two years so that we can. Start working on that project and try to get that pond taken care of.
Mike, the pond, you mean the irrigation system essentially? Okay, so essentially this is going to be a capital reserve for a long term, big irrigation.
Two pieces to it, regard the two pieces, the, the pond itself, the liner. Has been leaking and needs to be repaired, so we spend, you know, when we get into those really hot, hot stretches, dry stretches. We've spent up to sixty, seventy thousand a year. Purchasing water, so we could eliminate some of that cost that obviously if we retain more of the water on. Irrigation, probably ten years down the road. Is going to be a, a big number, so again, you want to make sure we're reserving enough so that we don't have to go dip in or have to pick out any kind of.
The, the, the third one that I would look to target as well is the paths, and I think that you know, you know, some, some of those paths and. Maybe a, a partnership with the Public Works or paving, if we're getting contracts for paving done, if there's, you know, there's always kind of excess paving. Or material, if we can maybe kind of use some of that at the same time and kind of save some money on, on the, on the expenditures of it, but I know the paths.
Yeah.
In some areas have definitely been.
Yeah.
Pretty depleted, yeah.
Derek and I did speak and we mapped out kind of the areas that need the most. And kind of figured out, you know, what that might look like and how many linear feet we need, so, yeah, it's on our radar for sure.
And I assume the equipment for a golf path is probably going to be different than for a street, so you might have to have smaller.
Yeah, it's a smaller.
Truck come in and do that, just so I'm looking at this, and I don't want to skip ahead if you were going to get to this, so it looks like. The twenty twenty three, it looks like there was seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars at the golf course. Was, was in the, in the, in the good side of, half of that, four hundred, oh, more, more than half of that, four hundred and fifty five thousand of that. Was kicked back to the general fund for repayment for prior debt. A hundred and fifty thousand of that was sent to a, a park and rec capital fee and then seventy five to a, a bond payment. And then seventy five thousand to the golf capital, it looks like what you're looking to do in twenty twenty four is almost the exact same numbers.
Yeah.
Um, but instead of giving a hundred and fifty thousand to the park and rec, you're going to cap, recapture that for golf.
Yeah.
Capital.
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly have, you know.
No, you need it.
You need it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have these needs that are going to come up and, you know, this doesn't make sense to create debt, you know, going forward when we have the money available to. Reserve now.
Yeah, and I think conceptually, the idea of, of what we did with the sewer sale and paying off golf debt was to be able to make you guys profitable. In order to kick general fund money back to us to repay, but also, once that was done, to, to start creating this capital fund for you guys to make sure that the golf course. Maintains the high level of, of play that people expect from it. And I think little things like that, obviously the irrigation, the golf cart trails, I mean, people look at those things and they kind of say, uh. You know, mentally, the golf course is, you know, kind of slipping, so I think that it's important for us to maintain those, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, so looking at that and then, you know, just knowing, you know, again, some catch up things, but again, the capital for this year, if, if we look at some of the items that. Potentially could be accomplished if we invested in, the, the deck is a big one and the range is a big one, the deck could, again, create. I think more F and B opportunity for us and more event space opportunities just gives us another, another outlet. And the current deck is, you know, just, A, it's deteriorated to a point, it's. At minimum, we have to redeck the entire deck. We would propose going back to, I don't know if this board recalls, but back several years back, we did. Analysis of the entire clubhouse with, with an architect and one of the things they did is kind of square off the deck to give us more space out there. At a pier and kind of make it a rectangle so we can cover it as well and get away from umbrellas and things flying around and that kind of stuff, so. That, in our mind, would probably be a really good spend of money to kind of accomplish that. And if we could look at that two hundred thousand dollar number a year, I think, you know, we can lay out. A, you know, five year plan where we're tackling all these things, because the clubhouse is getting to that age, you know, HVAC issues. Roof is pretty good right now, but five years from now, you know, ten years from now, you got something about those things, so just want to make sure we're, we're planning ahead.
So Mike, we, we love that idea, I think, I'm going to say we love it, even if they disagree. But we'd really like to see that plan.
Yeah.
Not, not. Not, not per se to hold you to it.
Yeah.
But I think one of the things that the board really wants to understand is not just what today's costs are, but what's coming down the pike. So if you could put something together, again, not per se that you would be locked to it, but just that we would have an understanding of what, oh.
Might have something similar. But, uh, uh, why don't I do this? I mean, I can share this, um, uh, and this is just kind of a rough, but. Basically what I did is just kind of work out a five-year plan. Um, the, the, the big items, uh, the deck. Bar updates, you know, we think there's an opportunity with the bar, you know, the bar, existing bar, the infrastructure, the bar itself, the plumbing and. It's, it needs to get done anyway. So to go back and spend all that money on that existing bar that really doesn't seat enough people. I think there's an opportunity to create more seating in there, which then creates more revenue. Uh, HVAC and siding roofing, walking coolers, they're all just at their, at their age. So we've planned those out over the next five years. Inside that $200,000 number per year, um, and then let 50,000 a year continue the bunker project because we're done just about with all the greenside bunkers. And now we want to tackle the rest of the fairway bunkers. We continue to do that. Our pets. It was on the list. Um, and then the range, you know, there's still more opportunity. We think with the range, we both have an issue with the field. Of just, it's a worn out. I mean, it's basically no topsoil left on the, on the fields. Uh, we'd like to try to think about. Fixing some drainage and then putting some topsoil back out there, reseating that. And then, um, there's always opportunity in the rain with covered bays or more, uh, indoor outdoor simulators. There's so much opportunity there, what we're doing with the construction right now. So, um, I've like kind of laid that into a, into a five-year plan. So I can button this up and then share this with, with you.
Mike, if I could follow that up, you know, a big, big part of the reason for, at least in my mind, for. Doing all these things to make the golf course that much better, that much cooler, that much more workable is to create more revenue for the township, right? So when, when we're seeing. And, and I, I'd like to see what the revenue increases will be back to the general fund, back to park and rec because. It was part of the sewer sale process. Some of the numbers were coded that the golf course would kick back to, to the general fund or park and rec. We're probably double what's going on right now. And if we have a five-year plan, we're going to be expending a lot of mon, hundreds of thousands.
I don't, I don't know where, I mean, we've always hung in around that, uh.
800 was the number that I thought it was.
800,000 dollar number.
As a million per year was coming back to.
Oh, wow.
By, uh.
We've never even, you know, netted that idea. Nah, that, there's no way because we've never, never been in that number.
Yeah.
We've had good years where we've made a million, uh, pre-debt, um, EBITDA basically. And we've made. You know, kind of average in that high seven. So that's why we kind of stick to that number on the budget side.
No, I understand from your side. It's just that I was skeptical of some of the numbers I was hearing and it sounds like.
I would be too. That's not.
Sounds like there may be a miscommunication, but at least we know where we are and we can move forward.
Yeah. I mean, obviously you're, you're, you're maxing the golf part of it. Everybody's known this, right? So you guys are running a fantastic operations from a golf course standpoint. It's how, what your other opportunities for revenue are. Obviously those are the food and beverage. Um, I just took a couple of notes and I think you used to do the tap takeovers. Are you guys still doing that kind of program? Some of the local brewers?
Yeah.
I think there's local distilleries now and I don't know what the rules are with that.
Um, well, through our vendors, we can do certain things and then specific breweries like, um, you know, we always do a, a beer with ball.
Okay.
Brand.
Sure.
So, and then we do the different tap takeovers.
Yeah. It's, it's tough. I mean, it's always the challenge has been that this place is down a long driveway off the beaten path. It's a golf destination. It's not necessarily a foodie destination. So it's, how do you combine those two things? I mean, most people that show up, I'm sure are just residents. They're not.
Yeah.
People aren't coming over from Ewing or from, you know, Newtown to come.
Yeah.
Have dinner.
Yeah, no, you know, the Friday nights kind of drag more people in that maybe not be the regulars that, you know, if we do entertain and it's certainly. When we have the entertainment piece, we see the value. We increase the entertainment. You can see the entertainment expense line went up this year, but. We also, you know, went every week with music versus doing it monthly or every other week. So, you know, we took advantage of that so that we could create more revenue.
Yeah. Though just to, to be clear, we're, you're still predicting somewhere between seven and 800,000 dollars of.
Yeah, you know.
General money back to the township or, or profit. And then from there, your commitment is still back, you know, our commitment is still back to the general fund. I think it was 2 million total that, that they would. So about a four-year plan, we would be square. And then after that. That additional 500,000 dollars would just go back to general fund surplus to be, I guess, divided. As needed, depending on whether it was park and rec or.
Honestly, after five, 10 years, you're back to doing new projects again. So it'll go back to.
Back at the township or back to the, to the golf course.
Well, that's why I think, you know, if you keep, if you keep plugging that 225 reserve in. We'll be in pretty good shape to deal with the irrigation, to deal with the pond, to deal with, you know, the bigger items that are gonna, you know, and HVAC could be a big number.
But that still leaves the 455 that we're not repaying the general fund after year four, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So my understanding on that is that, um, the intent was that you were, you were essentially amortizing the subsidy that occurred over a period of time. And then when that, when that ended, the intent was to take the 455. So you, so you also have. You have an outgoing transfer right now from the golf fund to, um, what you called, and I don't. You ha, you have a golf bond repayment fund where there's a $75,000 out transfer. So my, my understanding was. That once the amort is, the amortized loss is repaid or, or subsidy is repaid. Then you would just, you would accelerate repayment back into that golf, golf bond repayment fund, which then you could use for whatever you chose to use it for. It could be go, it could go back to support general operations. It could go to fund, you know, capital park and rec. So, um.
So essentially a revenue stream is, is what it becomes.
That is, that's what I under, I understood again to. Take into consideration that you, you, you spent, you know, 14 and a half million dollars of, of, of sale proceeds. So it's just amort, then it's starting to amortize that back. And that's the intent is to eventually amortize that back. Um, and then when that's. You know, when that's done, then, then that's going to be a number of years in the future. Um, but, uh. But there, you, you know, it, it should still provide the ability to push some revenue back to support other operations in the township.
So the structure and the theory of what, of using the asset is correct then?
It seems to be performing, again, I don't know what was communicated in terms of what the expectation of performance was, but it is pushing money out of the golf fund. Supporting other, other aspects of township government, right? It's, there's, I mean, the direct transfer back to 455. Once that. Now, again, that's being labeled as repayment of a, of, of a subsidy that occurred during a period of time, but there's nothing in. You know, at least that we know right now, that won't continue to perpetuate that payment back, uh, to, to the township. So. So yes, it, it, again, I don't know the specific dollar amounts that were communicated, but it is, it is pushing money out. Yeah. It's generating revenue.
You stated the intent perfectly. It just may not reach the amount that they predicted it would.
Right.
It, it, the intent was correct.
And so to the point, I think that, you know, the discussion of getting a better understanding of the capital needs of the asset, um, and Mike has that and, and he can provide that, um. You know, I think that should be, you know, primary purpose, right? Or else you're not going to have an asset that's pushing anything out. And, and that's sort of what. Has happened in, in, in the past with other, um. Other sort of enterprise funds.
Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, I think that covers it.
Anything else for Mike?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, uh, Dave, I know that you, um, we wanted to get through fire and we wanted to get through golf because people have other commitments.
Yes.
Uh, and as such, you, you, uh, delayed your opportunity to give like opening statements, shall we say. So I don't know if you wanted to do that now and kind of like level set what's going on and.
Sure, sure. Um. The chief's going to go first and in terms of his, you know, specific department, but just to, to sort of provide some, some overall context as we're sort of transitioning into. The general fund, which is again, the, the township's, um. Essentially checking account, if you will, paying general operations. And so, um, you know, as we talked about, um, at the last session. In, um, the 2023 budget, um, there was, uh, an operating fund deficit that was, um, uh, that was projected. Um, again, uh, of roughly 1.7 million dollars. There were some, uh, one-time transfers that were going into the operating fund. So if you were to remove those. The operating deficit, um, would be, would be greater than, than the 1.7 million dollars. And so, you know, as we talked about, you know, there wasn't much opportunity to do much on, on sort of the revenue side. Um, and there, there was, um, you know, there's not much to be done on the expense side. Um, there's not a tremendous amount of, you know, discretionary spending in a, in a municipal, um, general fund budget. Uh, again, most of. Or a significant portion of your costs relate to labor. Um, so short of, um, reducing labor force, uh, and in turn reducing, uh, service provision. Um, there's, there's, uh, very, very little, uh, to do there. Um, so again, we've been working over the past two weeks, trying to sort of refine sort of where we're at. Um, and where we are today. And, and again, I'm sure there'll, there'll be continued refinement and work on that. Um, but as I communicated via email, the general fund deficit, uh, is still showing. Is still in excess of a million dollars. It's, it's at 1.2 million dollars. Um, and again, as I noted in, in sort of the email to you, um, that does, uh. That doesn't include, or, or the revenues are including, uh, some one-time transfers that are not, you know, not insignificant. And these are non-recurring, uh, transfers. Um, so again, we, we talked, uh, a lot about, um. Sort of maintaining flexibility with, um, those liquid, uh, sanitary sewer sale proceeds. So there's about 1.4 million dollars. Uh, being transferred to support, uh, general fund operations. Um, there's the remaining, uh, ARPA dollars of about 140,000. Again, that's being shown as a transfer into the general fund. So if you would remove these one-time transfers, um, you know, the general fund deficit, you know, much like 2023. Um, would be probably closer to, um, uh, about 2.7 million to 2.8 million dollars. So. Um, I just want to, again, I'm, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding there that, that. You know, as we're sort of looking at the general fund, that there is, um, a challenge in terms of being able to meet. Ongoing recurring, uh, operational expenses in the general fund. And there's some ways to deal with that, but, but I just want to again, sort of set, set that stage. Um, so as it relates to the general fund, um. The general, uh, purpose rate, uh, tax rate, um, is currently, um, at 13.88 mils. Um, it, it is proposed to go up to 14 mils, uh, which is the statutory cap. Uh, just to put that in perspective, um, again, because of relatively flat assessments and outdated assessments. Um, that increase generates, uh, about $66,000 of additional revenue based on, uh, current total assessment. So. There's again, not much revenue generation potential within the existing, uh, general purpose millage rate. Um, and as we spoke about, uh, previously, you, you know, that, that. Where you're at is largely, um, largely a function of the fact that there has not been comprehensive reassessment done in Bucks County for. Uh, some time. And as a result of that, you're now up against a statutory cap. And so, um, there is the ability to exceed that cap. But that exceedance requires you to go, uh, to the court of common pleas in order to, uh, to obtain that. Um, so we, we do need to keep that in mind, not only as it relates to 2024, um, but as it relates to, um. As it relates to subsequent budgets, um, because eventually you'll, you'll spend your fund balance and you will have, you won't have anything.
So Dave, just to say it again, in, in maybe more simple terms. We are fortunate right now to have. Funds that have come from different things, the sale of the sewer, which was a difficult decision to make. Rescue funds, um, other things that are helping. Keep us. To appear, to be operating within the budget, right? So let me try it a different way. We have the ability to, um, levy taxes. Those taxes are regulated by the state as to what percentage we can have. We are almost, as you just so eloquently said, at the cap of 14 mils, uh, for the general fund. And with those other fees that we can do, whether it be the park tax or the fire tax that we heard about earlier. We still don't. Have enough revenue. To do all that we have promised the residents we will do without dipping into those other funds.
Yes, that, that's, that's fair. And, and again, this is provide some perspective because I, I know, um. You know, at, at 14 mils, which is the cap, just the, and the average residential assessment in, in this community being at 43, 600. The general purpose tax at, at, at the cap. That a resident is paying for the services that this municipality provides is $610 a year. That's the amount. So, uh, again, I just offer that. I, I know obviously folks have tax bills that are substantially higher than $610 a year. Um, but, uh, when we're talking about where those tax dollars go. Um, that's, that's the extent that the average residential assessment, uh, in this, in this community is paying in terms of. Supporting, you know, a police department, uh, supporting, um, you know, the public works department, uh, and all the, the services that, that come with, um, with, with. You know, living here in, in, in Lower Makefield Township. And so, uh, unlike, you know, the school district that again, while they have a cap in terms of the. Rate of escalation that they can, um. Uh, propose, uh, under, I guess, the act one index, but they have the ability to petition to go over that. You, you're, you're statutorily capped without any increase in that cap. So it's not like. Oh, you can go up 2% or oh, you can go up 3%. You, you can't, you can't go up any percent. You're, you're, you're capped by statute. And again. There is a mechanism to exceed that cap, but the, the exceedance of that is, is, is then in turn limited to, to five additional mils to go up to nine, 19 mils. And so. Again, the, the combination of that with. Assessments that are substantially lower than what the value of the real estate is in, in this community is, is sort of creating the situation that we find ourselves in.
Yeah. No, I, I think it's, it's good to try to level set it. And even though I'm not eloquent in trying to say it, uh, the way that I say it, I think it's important for people to understand that. You know, we've made some tough decisions. We're going to have more tough decisions to make. Um, but even with all that being said. It's fairly frequent that we'll get, um, an email or someone we, will reach out to us. And, you know, talk about taxes and, and how frustrating it is. And most often they're talking about monies that don't come to Lower Makefield. That aren't paying for your roads or your police or, you know, your fire or whatever. But are other important things like school, like you mentioned, or to the county to provide those services. But it, you know, you know, people think, and I understand it, I, I appreciate it, right? You know, you should, we should have good roads. We have these things, but. The actual amount of money that we have to do all those things that people want is limited. So prices keep going up, but. Our revenue doesn't really go up.
And I think if you even look at, I mean, again, just to provide some perspective, if you look at your neighbors, right, that have. Um, other forms of revenue that they're, that they're collecting. Their millage rates are not substantially different than yours. So despite the fact that they are collecting substantial sums of revenue through other forms. They're, they're still having, you know, millage rates of, of total millage rates of 20 or, you know, 21, 23, whatever it may be. And again, that's. That's largely a function of, of, of assessment within, within Bucks County.
I, I had a quick question. So do you know how other municipalities, and that's what I was going to ask you, are managing the same type of issue? Like is Upper Makefield running at a, at a deficit? Is Buckingham running at a deficit? Are other municipalities running at deficits? And if they're not. What, how exactly are they're running their, their books if they're still being strapped the same way by the same assessment issues that we're having here?
Well, again, in many of those circumstances, there's, there's other revenue sources that they're collecting. So whether it's, uh, um. You know, whether it's a local earned income tax, whether it's, um. You, you know, an amusement tax, you know, Middletown, for example, collects about a million dollars in, in, uh, amusement tax revenues. Um, in some cases, depending on, uh, the nature of the community, they could have business privilege tax. Um, now business privilege tax again is, is not, if you had it, you're able to keep it, but it's not something that you, you can go and do now. It's been removed in terms of the ability of, 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 of you to levy that.
Is that like a mercantile?
It would almost be like a mercantile tax. Again, you don't have a large commercial base here in Lower Makefield Township. But but again, you you, I mean, you don't even have the statutory authority to do that at this point. So again, beyond getting beyond those those restrictions within the second class township code in which you're 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 governed by. You know, there's there's limited tools that are available in order to address the situation.
I think to Suzanne's point, I think the 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 issue is we've been facing this assessment issue for forty or fifty years. The hope that it's going to change in the next five years should probably be none, right? So chances are that it's not going to change in the next five years. And then, so and we have maybe two to maybe three years of. I mean, we're using our savings to pay for our mortgage essentially, right? So we have two or three years of that left. At some point, we have to figure out a way where this where we run at budget. And and it has to be through expenditures. I mean, that's the only thing that we can change.
Correct. That's our collective challenges. How how do we make, you know, how do we make that, you know, work? But again, you're you're seeing revenue growth of less than one percent in your primary source of how you're funding services. And that's how it's been for a number of years. And and again, there's schedules and so forth that are in your adopted budgets that I think show that, you know, five year trend is less than one percent of revenue growth. That's that's occurring year over year. So again, there's 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 tools that that I think we, you know, we need to, you know, have conversations about. It's not an all or one proposition. It's not this one or that one. It's 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 ultimately a decision for, you know, for this body to make in terms of how you want to address that. I I'm just, you know, the situation that you've been placed in. You know, is a difficult one because there's there's things, to your point, James, that that are outside of your control. And so if reassessment is not going to be in the, so just on that issue, if there was reassessment, statutorily required to reduce your millage rate down to generate an equivalent amount of revenue. So it's not like if the assessment went from its current five fifty to, say, two billion, that you have the ability to stay at the same tax rate, you would have to reduce the rate down to generate the equivalent amount of revenue with that with that millage rate. And so the the purpose of that or the benefit of that is it allows you additional room under that cap. So if you had a, you know, if it went up four four times what it currently is based on old assessment, you would have to essentially have one fourth of your millage rate. And so your general purpose millage rate would drop down to twenty five percent of what it is currently. And then you would have flexibility as as costs have gone, as as costs go up to address those costs on the revenue side. So.
If you're three percent or say a two and a half percent increase after year, you should have a two and a half percent flex on the on the millage side to be able to collect.
Right. So again, I don't mean to be somber when we're getting in, we're getting into this, but but it is. It is, you know, it is a challenge. And, you know, part of what we talked about in in terms of study and sort of project in in twenty twenty four, there were a couple of items that could could help address this, you know. One, you know, from my perspective, was, you know, D C D Strategic Management Planning Program, which would do sort of a trends analysis based on, you know, what has happened in the past and also what trend moving forward would look like. And then would also evaluate, you know, operations and and look at, you know, is there an opportunity to reduce expenses in this functional area? Is there an opportunity to deliver a service differently? Is there a way to to do that? And so I think, you know, I think that.
And that's a holistic study, top to bottom.
I I think we should be thinking about those things. And again, it's this conversation is really doesn't relate to twenty twenty four. It really relates to years beyond twenty twenty four. Go ahead, chief.
Man, he really set you up.
I'm sorry.
Uh, we.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I think we're.
That was two weeks ago.
Are we doing that again?
We're in the weeds, but.
We're down in nitty gritty now.
I'm not getting into the weeds with you. Kind of staying at the same level as as James and and Mr. Pat are here. I I think fundamentally looking at new ways to do things is is going to be key. Just because we are at limits, we're not getting type some of the revenues that maybe we thought we might on certain things. And some of the expenses may be greater than maybe had previously been told on other things or just by nature of inflation or other market forces. Like public, you know, I'm really interested in public private partnerships to see where we can be able to manage something differently. For example, the pool, could we look at an outside? That's kind of like we do with the golf course. Could we look at an outside management service, whether it's? I'll make it up. The YMCA, for example, if they did that, see if we could do that with the pool to to try and save money there. Looking at fees rather than taxes where it makes sense, it says the stormwater fee, because that'll build our nest egg. If we look at some of the special projects you have listed on our on the back of our thing here, that right there, I think in total, when I look not only on the back, but in some other stuff was pushing pushing three million bucks, I think. Or stormwater related projects, whether it's the P R P, the Pollution Prevention Plan stuff, pretty hefty. Some of the, I'll say, more direct stormwater infrastructure stuff with culverts and pipes. Obviously, those are expensive, but we're going to see more and more of those over the years as stuff falls apart or we just have to replace it or whatever, maintain it. So getting that fee started sooner rather than later so we can build up that nest egg so we're not assessing more and more taxes to cover it. We're doing it through a specific fee would be would be good. The special events permits, that probably isn't that as big of a generator, but we do have some rather large special events that haven't really gone through that process in the past that could could help out as we were talking with our fire services director before. I think, I I think all of our, everyone's been saying over the last couple of years about developing nest eggs or not nest eggs, but a rainy day fund for different funds. Just kind of looking at that, that, that's the other side of my mouth where we're getting a little developing a little more money from other source potentially, so we we don't have to assess it all at one time. And then, you know, when I think the R F P process also generates competition, which should in 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 theory, drive some costs down in again, in theory. So I think it, you know, what was it back in nineteen? We passed a resolution, R F P, all kinds of different things. And I don't think we got even a third of the way through some of the things that we're working R F Ping. So I think it would be worth looking at that to see where we may get savings on on different services moving forward. And who, you know, maybe we, we're just talking about golf course. Maybe we R F P food and beverage specifically to see if we could get a food and beverage professional service in there that might might be a little bit better at it, but let the let the golf course management team that is so good at managing a golf course manager, golf course and really drive those margins up. And maybe, I don't know, that's just theory again. Maybe we get a food and beverage group that's just as good on the food beverage side that can help us with margins there. I don't, these are just, these I've been thinking, thinking a lot about and trying to figure out how we can make it work to to reduce the need for additional taxes, addition, you know, additional expenditures where while still offering a solid level of service. Yep. There's only so much, so much you can squeeze out of that rock, but we we want to do what we can, you know.
Absolutely.
Well, that's that's a great idea and a great thought because many, many years ago in Philadelphia, Philadelphia Police have over a five hundred million dollar budget. There are officers, but they still did a public police partnership program. And that started, and I was involved in that, and they raised close to a million dollars a year for police and police equipment, funding for officers and SWAT gear and tactical gear and safety equipment and K nine dogs and things like that. I mean, I can go on and on. You get the idea. And they did it through partnership with businesses businesses in Philadelphia and donations, but also fundraisers at the Union League each year where they had auctions and donations and bidding on different items and raised money. And it was very, very profitable for the Philadelphia Police Department. And they're, they're talking about a five hundred million dollar budget, and they still needed that resource. So it's excellent. It's great thought, you know, be able to do something like that.
You have ideas. Let's do it.
Perhaps, perhaps we could host those at a revitalized Patterson Farm.
So anyway.
Ready to go? Yeah, if you want to go, chief.
Okay. At our last public meeting, we talked a little bit about the police needs and the police narrative and budget. And looking at that, there were some corrections made in the salary schedule. And I overlooked it was brought to my attention by the manager and the Assistant Finance Director. So we we adjusted some of the figures. So if you don't mind, I mean, I don't like to read something to you, but for the public's information, they didn't have an opportunity to see this. If you don't mind it, I just go over it and read it and then I'll talk about certain parts of it, aspects of it. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, the budget includes a four point two five percent increase in salaries for uniformed employees as well as a four percent increase for non-uniform administrative personnel. The uniformed employee increase is based on the January first, twenty twenty three through December thirty first, twenty twenty six collective bargaining agreement. Now, when we talk about that, we talked about that as as non-flexible items in our budget because obviously it's all contractual issues. Now, for the the correction was that the twenty twenty four budget now comes in at seven million seventy three thousand two hundred and eighty two dollars, which is a five point seven nine percent increase over the previous, over this year's budget. The flexible portion of the proposed budget consists of office administration. That's not salaries, that's supplies, minor equipment, crime prevention, education and training, range maintenance, dues and subscriptions and miscellaneous items and equipment. That flexible portion of our proposed budget is one point two, one point one two percent of the overall proposed budget. And that's not including any capital purchases. So in twenty twenty three, the police department received one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars in grants. Sixty five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars is remaining and will carry over to twenty twenty four budget. It's anticipated that the police will receive forty nine thousand eight hundred dollars for police services and overtime reimbursements. Those services and overtime reimbursements are for investigations conducted with the Attorney General's Office, District Attorney's Office, some investigations and some drug, drug investigations. And in addition, we get a hundred and two thousand fifty nine dollars from Penbury School District towards our school crossing guard salaries. School crossing guards come under the police department. So there's actually three S in our budget. And one of the S is a replacement officer for an officer who retired. One police vehicle, which is a leased vehicle, and one fixed license plate reader for the township. So to get into the officer staffing, the police officer replacement tries to keep our minimum approved level of staffing to forty one officers. We don't, we're not going to quite get that there because we have some officers who are injured and are out of work at this particular time, but that's what we're trying to maintain, we want sworn officers. So the new hire replacement officer is a starting salary of sixty seven thousand dollars. He'll be replacing an officer who salary was top salaried with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with a full bank of P T O. Now, the starting salary officer at sixty seven thousand dollars is starting fresh, but probably won't even be on the payroll until sometime three quarters of a year or maybe even a year from now. So you're not looking at an immediate sixty seven thousand dollar hit in the budget, but you are looking at a reduction of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars where the where the officer was full paid.
Chief, when when you talk about, is that showing up? Is the full cost of that officer or patrolman or whatever their title will be showing up in the twenty twenty four budget? Or is just some portion of that that anticip that you're anticipating showing up in twenty twenty four?
No, I don't anticipate any of that salary showing up, that one hundred and twenty thousand dollar salary is done.
No, no, I mean, the the sixty seven one thousand, the new one.
Maybe a small portion of it. I can't say for sure because it depends on the time we hire, the training involved in it.
Just from a, does it show up as a line item?
I think what he's saying is from the seven million.
Yeah, is it in that?
Oh, it does. It is in the seven million. Yes, full salaries, you know, in this.
I'm just making it from an accounting perspective. That's all I'm asking. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the police vehicles. The police vehicle of lease cost for twenty twenty four will be fourteen thousand dollars. But obviously that will be added to the lease from the vehicles purchased in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. So the total amount lease cost, and this is not in capital, you'll find that in account number four twenty, is one hundred and sixty nine thousand seven hundred and nine dollars total for twenty twenty four.
So chief, if I could just just quickly on on that for a second. So that, this is really, so the five point seven nine percent increase overall, as the chief noted, that's netting out that hundred and sixty nine, that hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars of cost was cost that again was being shown in in the in the capital fund. Again, it's an ongoing operating expense. It's it's you're not, it's not a lease purchase arrangement. The, you know, while you can build equity in those vehicles, you're ultimately turning the the asset back to enterprise and then capturing any equity. So part of the increase when you're looking at, you know, budget to budget, I I just wanted to point out is not a new cost, it's a cost that's just being presented differently here. So just so that 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 was that was clear. Again, it was something that was in the capital fund and I'm recommending putting it into the departmental fund, recognizing that it's an ongoing operating expense.
How long, how long is that lease agreement good for? I for I forget the enterprise one. Was it a three, five years? What do I don't?
No, was it canceled anytime. There's no.
Yeah, there was no fixed term.
There's no fixed term.
There's no term on it.
You know, in comparison, just going back to that lease payments, what we would have been paying for car expenses?
We usually average probably around two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Because I knew, yeah, when it was proposed, it was definitely a savings. Yeah.
Yeah, because chief, how how much were you generally, you know, how many vehicles were it for or so a year or?
Yeah, we were, yes, three vehicles some years, four vehicles other years.
Yeah. So I mean, again, you're talking with upfitting and everything else, you're talking, you know, easily sixty K probably, yeah, for the fifty, sixty thousand K a vehicle.
And I also put in here just for your information that the reimbursement to the township or old police vehicles that we turned over to enterprise was pretty substantial also. Forty two thousand in twenty two, thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty three. And we anticipate in excess of fifteen thousand, we put fifteen thousand again to be conservative, but in excess of fifteen thousand for twenty twenty four. The anything on questions on that? Okay.
I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to ask real fast about the L P Rs.
Yeah, I'm getting into that now. Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. No problem. It's a, now this is a capital purchase, twenty five thousand dollars. And it's for a stationary license plate reader. And I want to go into after after this budget presentation to give some statistics and some things that we faced and encountered in twenty twenty three as far as public safety. That is a a fixed license plate camera, and we have two already. The first license plate camera we received was through Homeland Security money. Our command staff worked to place license plate readers in almost every township and borough in Bucks County. Led that initiative. It was all based on Homeland Security money that we got that. And we we resulted in getting one for ourselves. We'll hold off on talking about the locations because we don't want to reveal locations where these are. But and we, and in previous budget years, the township purchased one through capital for us also. So we already have two. So we're looking to be at how to get a third one to complete the loop in the whole township.
Does that include the one that you, because there's one that floats right at like Cole's Oxer Valley Road, right? Yeah, somewhere, yeah, somewhere that is, yes. But yes, is that include that?
We're not sure where I put that.
When you, when you say fix, is it?
It's fixed. It's not mo, it's not mobile. We have a mobile.
Okay.
These vehicles.
Got you. Okay. Okay.
Colin, your question?
Yeah, well, so it's a bit of a compound question. So I think I've been seeing a lot this year that the L P Rs that the township does have have been very productive in helping apprehend some some rather serious criminals moving through the township. You you got a hit on an arsonist just in the past week. You you got a hit on an arsonist just in the past weeks, is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
I know through my work with with other municipalities throughout the country that LPRs are often seen these days as one of the better tools that that law enforcement can deploy. There are a lot of municipalities looking at private partnerships, especially when new developments come in with an HOA. Encouraging the HOA to purchase and deploy a an LPR within the boundaries. And it's just, I guess, more of a comment for the rest of the board, it's something that I think that we should try and pursue with any future development that does contemplate an HOA, it it really improves the overall safety of the township.
Excellent, very good. In addition to that arson that you've mentioned, our license plate reader technology resulted in six felony arrests, five misdemeanor arrests, three arrest warrants on individuals, and fifteen investigative leads, including information related to a robbery of a resident Newtown Township who resided right at our border. The male was followed home, pulled from his vehicle, pointed gun by two masked men and robbed. And we're working on that, and the license plate reader did identify a location of one of the vehicles, and it was also traced to Philadelphia. So it is an excellent, excellent tool.
If if one of your officers had that kind of a record this last year, I think you'd be pretty happy with the work that they were doing for the township, right?
He'd be standing up, getting citations and commendations up before this board, that's for sure, that's for sure. So those are the three S in our budget. I mean, as I said, and I use the terms bare bones budget, it really is a bare bones budget. I mean, we can't get away from the cost of the contract and the salaries, although we did gain some things from the salaries and contributions of officers in pension and medical. And I think we started on the right track opening that door. But you know, you're not, you're just not going to get away from that, and and I have, I can't work with that at all, you know.
Question for you, chief. And this isn't the rainy day fund, but sort of the the long-term planning. When we look at our current staff and years of experience and what, I don't want to call it our replacement rate, but as as folks might age out or retire, do we have a good idea over the next however many years, we we'll see more officers?
Well, I could tell you that you'll
We're gonna have a bunch of one time that we're gonna have to replace or anything like that.
I could predict that in twenty twenty five, you'll probably be facing the same issue and maybe with two officers, one for sure, maybe another.
We have a pretty good distribution agent relative to
A median age is about forty three years old.
Yeah.
I skew it a little bit, but it was a little
Are you a volunteer fire mech fighter?
Too young to be a volunteer.
I have one other question as well, in the grants and reimbursement, anticipated police will receive forty nine thousand, eight hundred police service reimbursement for police services and overtime reimbursements. You mentioned the DA's office and investigations with the DA's office. Does any of that include any overtime or any time spent at Shady Brook Farm during the light show?
No, not at all, that's all paid by Shady Brook Farm, we bill them each year.
Okay, so that's paid directly by Shady Brook Farm, doesn't, okay.
Yes.
Excellent.
That that's just strictly investigations, attorney general and
Okay.
covering investigations.
Okay.
John, I didn't know if you had a question, so your mic was on, no?
All right, if I may?
Follow up, that was a good question. And I'm not, I'm not gonna ask about any specific third party, but when when officer services are required for special events, I'll say it that way. Is it, is it strictly labor that is paid on some overtime rate? Or is, do they pay for use or rate for administrative vehicle, whatever it may be, equipment use, all that stuff?
It's actually based on the hourly rate of the officer, but the way it's computed, and I think in our fee schedule, it was eighty five dollars an hour or ninety dollars an hour. I don't remember exactly what it was. But it's an average because some of the officers are lower salary, some of the officers are higher salary. So we think that it pretty much covers mileage, gas and things like that also. But all the equipment costs and all is not calculated to the penny in in these reimbursements.
So it's just as we look at special events permits and stuff like that, that will ultimately help cover that.
Yes.
Address that to see what's
Hopefully, yes.
equitable.
Right.
Okay.
And Dave, I don't know if you want to capture this or not, but when Dan says special events permits, I think we might be thinking about different things. But we are coming into a big election year, we do know that typically Lower Magfield does draw the attention of national candidates. And often we end up up the bill. So maybe we could do something that before we issued the permit, they actually pay for the extra costs that are going to be associated with their visit to our beloved township and and maybe not end up losing so much money.
Okay, well.
We can try, hope springs to trial.
We fought this fight many times.
Well, uh
Fought this fight many times.
We can only, if we have a permit, you know, a special permit fee, maybe we could say, no, you cannot come, who knows? First Amendment, who knows?
Yeah, we can look at that. And just, just, just for informational purposes, as the chief mentioned, the reimbursement currently for police personnel is is eighty dollars an hour with a minimum of four hours. So so it's, there is a minimum number of hours, so a three twenty would be the minimum charge that that anyone would be charged per per the fee schedule.
Thank you for that, Dave, I couldn't remember what
That's fine.
Sorry, I couldn't answer that myself.
Okay, so when we talk about Lower Magfield Police Department, we always use the term, it's a full-service police department. Some police departments respond to calls for service from dispatch, they write their report and they're done with the call. We don't operate that way here in Lower Magfield, we never have operated that way in Lower Magfield. So when we say full service, we mean that the department responds to every request of a citizen to talk to a police officer. Even if it's not crime-related, has nothing to do with public safety or policing, we will talk to the individual. We can't help them, we'll send them to the right place or the right person who can help them. And it's mandatory that an officer follows up with that individual afterwards and lets them know or tries to find out if they were satisfied or not satisfied with it. So that's how we operate. Does it cost extra to do that? No, I don't say it costs extra, it's great public relations, and it's a great way to run a police department because you build, you know, you you build network with people and and it's it's very helpful for us. But aside from that, just to give you some statistics and for the public to know that we had four hundred and forty eight active investigations or cases in twenty twenty three to date. Police department received over ten thousand, two hundred dispatch calls for service. And that does not include walk-in calls or what I just talked about, I mentioned interaction with residents. And it does not include traffic citations or warnings or any vehicle stops or pedestrian stops unless it amounts to an arrest. The department has responded to several instances of violent crime and crimes against person. Police responded to approximately eighteen assaults, both aggravated and simple in twenty twenty three. In addition, there were eight sexual assaults in the township. One robbery occurred where a resident was returning home, was assaulted and robbed, and that was in the Magfield Glen Development. The incident remains under investigation, and we're awaiting results of DNA testing on a lot of items that we had processed. And we obviously, you all know, we had murder-suicide and heard jokes during which a father murdered his young son before committing suicide himself. And in Cornerstone, we had the homicide where an individual shot, killed his neighbor. And it turned into a hostage situat- or a barricaded situation for several hours. And then when police responded and entered the home, he had killed himself. So further, the department continues to respond to and investigate property crimes. Department has responded to and investigated over twenty two burglaries to date. Detectives follow up on each burglary, collecting information and submitting evidence for test, for testing. Detectives also share the intelligence and information with other agencies. One of those intelligence call, calling that intelligence included a residential burger burglary in which information indicated that the suspect or suspects were part of a Chilean organized crime gang targeting Asian residents and businesses. They actually, Asian had, would have a business located somewhere else, live in Lower Magfield Township. They'd be spotted, they would be followed home. And this gang would attack and rob them. We had one in Lower Magfield, and there were just recently two in Northampton Township. Criminal mischief and vandalism complaints, you know, quality of life issues from twenty two to twenty three. There were forty three vandalism complaints, January through October in twenty two. This year, there were seventy nine vandalism complaints during the same period. What reason? I don't know, I can't explain it, but we had seventy nine as opposed to forty three.
I saw the one article that there were like a whole bunch of eggings at one point, is that included in that number?
There, that's included in that number, yeah, there was a bunch of them in the Yarley area and all, yeah, that we looked into. It ended up being juveniles, but I identified who they were, you know, that's over with. But and then fraud and identity theft continue to be a significant issue with a hundred and seventy eight residents reported to this date that they were targeted, and many of them were seniors in the township fraud investigations. Patrol officers continue to be proactive, they use the newer tools, as we talked about, the license plate readers, and we talked about the numbers, I won't go over that again. And in addition, Lower Magfield officers played a vital role in convicting a statewide catalytic converter organized theft ring by making arrests here in Lower Magfield and providing information, leading to the conviction of the whole gang that was involved in it. Sadly, we responded to multiple overdose deaths in the township. Happily, six lives were saved through quick response by police on the scene and administering Narcan and medical treatment. As you know, several years ago, we were the first department that initiated Narcan, and we made it available to all the departments in Bucks County. We had the DA's office in my office, and we had donations of Narcan. And that started the program throughout Bucks, every officer in Bucks County carries Narcan. Given the increased threats against the Jewish community and additional police are also assigned to learning centers and religious services in light of what's happening today, and I met in my office the other day with a lot of the leaders and the rabbis, and they expressed their concerns. Talked to us about what their needs were, and we're very thankful for our coverage for them. In late August, intelligence was obtained that there was a unauthorized car rally that was planned around the Cole's Shop and Center in the Oxford Valley Mall. Coordination with officers from Middletown Township and multiple other jurisdictions were on standby and ready to respond. As a result, the car rally attempted to take place when the individuals came, they were cited. Some were cited, there were arrests made for DUI, and several cars were towed. The unauthorized pop-up events consisted at several times and had over a hundred cars and have caused death and injury. The most recent was Wildwood, New Jersey, where two people were killed in the rallies. And other rallies took place at Willgrove Mall and on I ninety five in this, in center city area. So these are very dangerous situations, they could pop up anytime, and when we get intelligence, we make sure that we hit them hard here so it doesn't happen here. The department staff maintains numerous and and administrative and regulatory programs and requirements. These include monthly submissions of data to the state UCR reports, Pennsylvania Crime Commission delinquency and juvenile reports, CCD and federal brand reports, and maintenance of regular regulation of intelligence systems such as clean JNET and LifeScan, which is priority and a mandated requirement. We also navigate through PA accreditation process, and we are again preparing for the re-accreditation evaluation and visit next month. So we're hoping to be re-accredited again this year. And the in growth, the increasing growth in the township over the years through Regency, Yarley Woods, Artists, Hardest, and now the Wegmans retail complex with the apartment, housing, all in place. So I had additional demands on public safety as well as all other emergency services. And there's some hint and indication that there may be additional development somewhere close to the Wegmans also. That's it.
Chief, when you were talking, one that jumps out at me. I'm I'm curious how the how the police department handles the fraud and identity theft. Cause just reading the police log, you see everything from a couple hundred bucks all the way up to literally tens of thousands of dollars or even more.
Yeah.
I know I actually, I had one issue way back when that I I reported through the police department.
No, no.
We were fine, my bank took care of it, but you read those all the time. I'm just curious what what protocol is for residents who experience that and what the police department can do, if anything, other than file a report on some of that stuff.
Well, sometimes, well, what happens to the process is a uniformed police officer will receive the information, hopefully do a detailed report, and he'll send it over to detectives, and a detective will be assigned to investigate it and to call the individual back and walk them through the process, if it's with a credit card, if it's with a bank, and all they'll help them. And they'll help them expedite the process. A lot of times in minor instances, you know, there's no loss of money because the bank will make it better or the credit card will. But there's a lot of times where seniors are, there's fraud with the seniors where they lay out cash the individuals, and detectives work real hard to find out who that is, you know. And the cases, you know, we have so many cases that, you know, the ones that are no loss to the individual are written up in the report. And you just hel- help the victim navigate through the system. The other ones are are very highly investigated and we try to find out who that is. Matter of fact, with the township got, we got hit with a check, right, that was washed and written, and what was the amount? Five thousand dollar check. Yeah, we identified the individual at a state in another state, and we have pictures of him and anything else.
And then the other question I had is on a different thing, I think a few meetings back, and and we've been hearing a lot more about it during this this election cycle and all that from the county folks, the co-responder program that's starting up.
Yeah, John and Louis had asked about that at the last meeting, and we will be starting a co-responder program. We'll be housing the co-responder in Lower Magfield. It's no cost to the township for two years, and the co-responder will have Lower Magfield, Yarley and Marsville as their area to work. So if it's justified and it works out well, someone will be coming back to you in two years from now and requesting that it be continued and paid for.
John, I know you had some questions.
Actually, that was one of them, and and that's something we need to plan for if we find that the program works. I mean, initial testing does indicate that the co-responder program has been successful, and certainly were the continued tests. I know Ben Salem was the the first to get that one. On the UCR reports, they have resolution on there as well then, right? And so there's twenty three and twenty two on the state site. Do we have like the last five years of those?
I don't know.
Trends?
I don't know if the FBI is still publishing the stats from the UCR because they're transferring over to another system, but I could double check and see.
Yeah.
If you want, if you need some info.
Yeah, like the last couple of years, because we've had, this is separate from the budget element, but we've had concerns about increases in crime post COVID. And, you know, we're fortunate in some measure with the work that's done by the police department to keep us safe in many ways. But we want to know if there's certain trends that we need to be thinking about, if there's investments down the road that we should be considering.
Sure.
And so if we can get that for like the last, you know, say, three or four years back. And then the last question was, I know this has been an ongoing issue since the Tree of Life incident in Pittsburgh, which is now five years.
About that, yeah.
Um, still very difficult. When you spoke with members of the Jewish community and the various synagogues, have you covered off on all the possible communications issues related to making sure that in the event there needs to be response, that we can communicate successfully with all of the current synagogues within the township?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good on all that?
We're good on that.
Radios and cell service?
And we urge them to communicate with each other, even if they think there's a situation that's very minor. I think that it's best to communicate and get the word out to to everyone in that community. And we also, we also spoke about security, their own security, which some of them do have. But our officers meeting with them and identifying who these individuals are in the event that we have to to rush an area or come into an area, we don't want to be confronted with someone armed individual, you know, that we don't know, is security. So we talked about a lot of aspects of that. A lot of their concerns and my concerns are not so much from a organized terroristic threat, but maybe as a lone wolf or maybe as a copycat or something like that that happened in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, and one, although I've exceeded my three, but as it relates to hate groups, we don't have any that are classified as hate groups within Lower Magfield, although I was stunned to find there was one in Newtown Township. That's an area where, you know, we we have to worry about associated crime and terrorism risk from that. So that's one we have to kind of keep monitoring, I think, I don't know that we've seen, I think those So that's one we have to kind of keep monitoring, I think. I don't know that we've seen, I think those folks are still there. Um, I just don't know that they're as organized.
Yeah, I understand. I know what you're talking about. Um, yeah, we, we regularly call the intelligence reports and if something is imminent, we get it immediately.
Those are my questions. Also definitely, uh, the revisions, the budget were helpful. So I think people should feel comfortable with. What's, what's in here.
And again, I thank the board for their support over the years and I appreciate all your efforts to help us and do our job as best we can. Thank you.
I have a quick question. I found something that was a kind of an anomaly in the numbers. Um, so line one fifty-two is other benefits. What does that entail?
Other benefits? Open it up. That's, um, most likely PTO, holiday time, longevity and things like that, but let me double check.
Holiday education, the vision benefits.
Thank you. I should have asked her. And the only reason that I'm, I'm raising the question is because in twenty twenty-two, it was roughly three hundred thousand. Twenty twenty-three, we budgeted three hundred and fifty-five thousand, but our year-to-date is eight thousand.
So the, um, holiday and education is being paid this week, so that has not been posted yet. So that's about the three hundred and twenty some thousand dollars. So that'll be posted. I'm going to update the year-to-dates for you for next week. So you'll see that updated. So it will be projected.
And what does that entail? What's holiday?
Holiday and education. A holiday is the, um, holiday pay for the officers since they work through the holidays. You know, they don't get the holiday off. They get the lump sum at the one time first pay of November. And education is a, um, basically a bonus on their education level. I forget what the percentages are off the top of my head, but it's based off a percentage on their base wage.
Is holiday pay covered in overtime or is that two separate?
A holiday is just in that other benefits category.
Okay, but it could be part of overtime as well? Wouldn't be overtime.
Overtime.
Directly hours.
Okay.
Hours.
Could you have a combination of overtime and holiday pay? If you were working holiday pay as overtime?
No, they're not getting paid the holiday. One, like, so for instance, when the holiday hits for, for this Friday would be a holiday for township. The officer would be working, they would just get their regular shift pay. So they wouldn't get the holiday until that November payment.
I, I'm just not sure that we lined up on that. So I think what James is asking is, is there a situation where an officer has worked all week? And then works on Friday, so he gets overtime. She or he gets overtime on for Friday. And then also gets the holiday payment because they worked on a holiday.
Overtime as far as, I mean, maybe just be getting their base rate on.
Time and a half for a holiday or something like that. Is that what you mean?
I think, I think James's question was, is it possible that, you know, you already hit your forty, forty hours by Thursday? But you were scheduled, you have to work on Friday. So you get overtime pay for Friday, but then you also get. Pay because you worked on a holiday.
Yes, if you, if you get called in on the holiday, you're going to get overtime for the hours worked at holiday. And then when it comes time to be paid for that holiday check, you'll be paid for that holiday check. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
For explaining that.
Yeah, so just the, the straight time associated with the holiday pay would be paid as part of the holiday pay lump sum payment that's contractually provided. So there's, I think thirteen holidays that is in the police contract. Eight-hour days is the basis. So there's a hundred and four hours of time that they get in the form of a lump sum. Recognizing that they're on rotational shifts and, and, um. You know, they, 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 you know, if it's their scheduled day, it's their scheduled day. They don't get any, any additional pay. Beyond what they would normally get. Um, so that's, that's the holiday bait situation. And then in terms of the education, um. Have a contract here. I'm trying to find where it's.
It should be spelled out, the, um, the percentages.
Yeah, no, it's, it's in here.
And just to kind of.
Colin, did you have any questions while they're looking that up? No?
I was just gonna say the other things that hit that item is, um, the accreditation bonus, vision benefits. And tuition is also included in there, tuition reimbursement. That all falls in that line item.
It's, um, three percent for a master's degree. It's a two point five percent for a bachelor's degree and it's one point five percent for an associate's degree.
I would only scratch my head because all of the other things make sense like in that except for vision.
Vision reimbursement.
Yeah, like why is that in that bucket? Can we just, shouldn't that be part of like? Health, healthcare or?
In our healthcare.
We don't have in vision insurance, so it's really just a reimbursement.
Okay.
Um, so it's just paid out of the other benefits accounts.
Okay.
Really an insurance.
And then the one above that longevity, what is longevity?
Longevity is based on the years of service. Um, it begins after five years of service. Um, so it's increments. And again, it's based, it's a percentage on base wage of a patrolman.
Okay.
By contract.
And these are all the con- contractual things. Okay.
That was everybody good?
Yeah, that's just the weird anomaly. That one I saw is like.
We might want to post it differently next year, just so it doesn't jump out, like maybe bracket it or something or do on.
What your estimated amount is going to be maybe so that way it doesn't.
So Dave, which of the stepchildren?
Your pick.
Yeah, Derek's, Derek's going next.
I love it. I love it.
I don't have any fancy statistics.
No, but, but you win the.
A little left out.
You win the award for most binders.
Pot holes we fill this year, we fill a lot.
You have like a sad.
Right, the most depressive fire.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so just a, just a real quick overview, just cause, um, just so everyone's on the same page and everyone kind of knows what we do. Uh, the public works department, uh, the township does maintain about a hundred thirty-eight miles of road. Um, so that is our responsibility from paving to snow plowing to everything else. Uh, we do have about forty bridges and culverts in this township. Uh, some of them are as old as nineteen sixty-four. Um, five, fifty-five hundred street signs that we are responsible for, two hundred and seventy street lights. Uh, we have about ninety storm basins or a hundred and acre, hundred and eighty acres of grass and basin that we maintain and mow. Uh, in addition to open space parcels totaling about five hundred acres. Um, we obviously take care of this building here, uh, the public works garage, uh, a few other facilities throughout town such as Patterson Farms, Ferentz, House and Dagowitz. Currently, the department is sixteen people, including myself and my administrative assistant. So that's, uh, fourteen. Um, collective bargaining agreement employees, um, and one of them is a, a part-time associate. Uh, and we do use about currently four to six seasonal hires that, uh, maintain and help with the basin maintenance and leaf collection services. Uh, a few main large changes that you'll see in the budget. Uh, I don't know where you guys want to start this evening. But, uh, obviously Public Works is listed in the general fund. A couple of the large expenses that you'll see would have increased, uh, over last year and the, and the twenty-three budget would be labor. Uh, in this budget, I am requesting a new hire, uh, to help with the staff. That would be a, a, a new hire probably for contemplated is, uh, about fifty thousand dollars of his salaries in this budget. Or about eight months of, of, of salaries covered due to, you know, hiring process. He wouldn't be on board until probably April or May. Uh, so that new hires in here, uh, there's also a change in how the prior budgets allocated personnel. Um, labor expense. So past practice was, uh, there is liquid fuels, which is money that comes from the state of Pennsylvania. To, based upon how many ru- miles of road we have, uh, this year we're getting about one million. Thirteen thousand dollars. And past practice was to use about a hundred and fifty thousand of that to offset our labor cost. Um, what that does is ultimately reduces our road paving, things like that. So I, I, I'm recommending taking that hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into the general fund. And using that labor in the general fund to allow us to use that full liquid fuels, uh, for road paving. Uh, things like that to increase our road paving program. Uh, the other large, uh, labor increase that you'll see. And again, that kind of spreads through building maintenance, uh, recycle yard overtime, leaf collection. Uh, base maintenance is part-time, there's seasonal help and then highway maintenance is the, is the large bulk is the one point one million. Um, the other, you'll see about fifty thousand dollars underneath that for part-time labor. I'm trying to, uh, entice, like I said before, we use seasonal hires, which operate in the summer months to cut grass. But it would be beneficial to have more of a full-time, part-time labor. Uh, available to help with, again, snow plowing in the winter months, uh, stream maintenance, general maintenance as, as the crews are. Um, getting, uh, overwhelmed with work. I mean, things have been neglected for so long. So it would, uh, part-timers would kind of help fill that gap, especially in the winter months when guys do go on vacations and things like that. Um, most of the crew, as I said, we have about fourteen workers. Um, they have between a crew vacation, sick time, about thirty days off throughout the year. So if you, you know, contemplate that, sometimes there's only nine guys in, eight guys in or less than that. That would help with the offset of that. In terms of capital purchases, it's not quite under capital, but it is under minor equipment for thirty, uh, two sixty. It's at ninety-nine thousand dollars. In there is, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars and no else. And we're going to break that as a capital line, but there is thirty-five thousand dollars in there. For a new heavy equipment trailer. Um, the department does not have a trailer of adequate size for the equipment that we're using and renting right now. Uh, due to weight limits. So for example, we rented a paver this past year. We had to pay a hauler to move that for us at, at expense. And again, scheduling, so we could go pick up random machinery. We can move it ourselves. Once we own a piece of equipment, once we own the trailer. The other large item in that ninety-nine thousand dollars is fifty thousand dollars to upgrade our radio system, our two-way radio system. So obviously everyone does use cell phones. Uh, it's great. Um, when the CDO guys are plowing, they're not legally allowed to use a cellphone. They have to use their radios. Um, our radio system is, is just outdated. You can't talk from north end of the township to the south end, just through the train. We don't have a repeater. So it's just truck to truck. So a newer system would actually have a repeater on our cell tower out back. So we would have more coverage for communication and response.
Derek, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jumping on that, that radio thing. So Tim is waiting a year for a radio because he's buying one radio at a time. I mean, is there a possibility to converge these radios into a single radio system or using different channels or do they?
Tim, Tim, Tim works on more of the emergency frequencies, which county ran with, you know, police have their own frequency. Again, that's all county repeaters, trunk systems. You know, digital, you know, encrypted. Well, ours is just a simple, as, as stupid as it sounds, is a simple two-way radio with just a repeater.
If the county had spectrum available that you could use and we could.
No, I mean, you're talking, at that point, you're talking three thousand dollars for a radio. Ours are about six hundred dollars for a radio. So you don't, you don't want to go that crazy. We don't need that frequency. We don't need that, that coverage to, to talk to other towns. Uh, we just need more coverage in our town. Um, Yarley Makefield does actually participate in our frequency and our radios do talk. So I know in the winter months in the past, if they were responding, they could talk to our plow guys and we could try to clear paths for them for their fire trucks. And again, we don't have that capability right now because our, our limitations, the system's just outdated and kind of not functioning properly. So they would kind of benefit from that too, from a, from an emergency response. Uh. Our guys kind of listen for it. Hey, when they're going there, we kind of beat them to it and plow the roads ahead of them during the winter months. That kind of answer your question, Colin?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next big jump would be, uh, contract to services did jump a little bit. It's four thirty, uh, three hundred. Um, you'll see obviously twenty twenty-three's projection is at six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars versus our budget of two sixteen. As I think, David, I think you discussed last time, that was where all the Maple Valley response hit. So everything that hit from Maple Valley hit that line item and, and blew it out. We're currently about, I think. Four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that's spent to date on, on actual work out there. Uh, through contractors and things like that. But, um, so we, we're, we're out two hundred and sixty thousand per contract to services. Um, that is, that's an increase of about four, forty-five thousand dollars. The large jump in that item, uh, is necessary to start a line striping program for the township. A lot of our, our two-lane roads, they are, you know, double striped yellow down the center line. It's time to start updating that and start, start restriping that. So there's about twenty-seven thousand dollars. That'll get us about ten miles of that. We have about, um, thirty miles of striped road. So on a three-year, we'll try to start as three-year program, twenty-seven thousand dollars each year in three years. That's about the lifespan of that paint. And then there's about forty-five thousand dollars allocated for, uh, pavement markings that are signalized intersections. Um, a lot of you guys will see that stop bars are getting worn out, crosswalks. We need, we need to get on that stuff for, for public safety. So, so untold con- that's all wrapped up in contractor services. There, there were some other savings, but overall it had to increase about forty-five thousand dollars. Um, materials, uh, just like I'm, it sounds negative, everything's going up. But material costs is going up, asphalt costs more money, the stones costing more money. We're trying to do more with the more guys. So obviously the more guys I have, the more work I want to do, the more materials I have to buy to do the repairs. Uh, equipment fuel has gone up slightly just for the, for the cost of, of fuel. Um, and the other big jump you'll see under benefits, I know we talked about chief's benefits. But we also have benefits ourselves. There is vision in there. That's DOT testing, physicals for the guys. But, uh, there is a, a bump there right now due to, uh. Some contract negotiations, we're under contract right now, but potential stipends for being an on-call pay and, uh, uniform, uh. Allowance versus providing a uniform clothing allowance versus providing a uniform for them to try to save on the backend of, uh, of uniform rentals, things like that. Uh, the other large thing to talk about, two other large things. In the road machinery fund, not, not jumping around here, but the road machinery fund. There is a contemplation that the machinery fund is a separate tax source. As we all know, that's point three mils. Uh, we do have a few things jumping off lease. Uh, I do recommend the replacement of a, uh, two thousand and seven Ford small dump truck. That truck is about ninety thousand miles right now. A new vehicle, a comparable vehicle is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, again, I would recommend we lease that the way we've been doing as a lease purchase. We would own it after, or after the lease terms. But, uh, I would recommend doing that. The, the road machinery fund is healthy right now, possibly for the next year. But again, we have a couple larger machines that are costing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. So in about three years, that road machinery fund will, will need some, some work as we need to replace some of the larger pieces again. Um, so that's in there as a capital purchase under the road machinery fund. And then as I discussed, the liquid fuels, uh, we did pull out that salaries and. Uh, I believe David has about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated from capital reserve. So those two combined gives us about a million five hundred, or I'm sorry, one million fifty thousand dollars for road paving. For the road paving, road paving program for twenty twenty-four. Um, that'll do about two point five eight miles is our goal, uh, next year to get repaved. Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a little bit, it's a shot in a bucket, but, uh, it's, uh, we need to start increasing what we've been spending in the past. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So.
Derek, that's two point five eight miles out of a hundred thirty-one miles in the township.
That, that is, that is correct.
And do you have any concept of roughly the lifespan of a. Properly built piece of, of road here, a mile of road here in the township? Is that a fifteen to twenty-year lifespan? Is it a thirty-year?
Your, your neighborhood roads should be twenty to thirty, guessing. Again, we also have some high-volume roads. You have, you have Township Line Road, you have Edgewood Road, you have Makefield Road. High, higher volume roads, you're in that, you're in that ten to twenty range. But again, looking at the age of these roads, um, a lot of them, I'm, I'm looking at my age list here. Haven't been nineteen eighty-three, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen ninety-one. You know, so we're already behind the eight ball. It's not like everything's brand new now. We could plan for a thirty-year plan.
We have to find a way, assuming we were caught up today, right? Just assuming we were. We'd have to find a way to, to maintain about six point five miles of road every year. To cover what seems to be roughly the average lifespan.
If you, if you do a hundred and thirty-eight road miles over thirty years, you're about six miles a year. That's correct. The problem is we're. Our roads are already thirty years old. A lot of, vast majority, uh, just, just shooting ballpark numbers. I mean, roads that I know that need to be done. I mean, I'm, I'm in the range of another nine million dollars over the next three years that really should be done. So that, to, to understand that, that, that's out there.
No, I appreciate it. Just wanted to get a sense of the shape of the problem.
Yeah, no worries.
Derek, this might be for Dave or you, I'm not sure.
Derek, this might be for Dave or you, I'm not sure. Oh, sorry, you can hear me. Um when you're talking about. Are are you looking at um Public Works? Where where are you in the budget right now? Is it under liquid fuels you're talking about?
I'm sorry, I know, I'm jumping all over. It's it's nine o'clock, it's nine.
Yeah, yeah, I just.
Been a long day. Sorry, yeah, uh the road, so the road machine, road program is kind of split. So it there's not a road program fund, it's it's how we pay it. So we pay some of it out of liquid fuels. And then there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set outside out of capital reserve. For that combined.
I'm jumping back and forth.
Yeah, no, no, you're you're fine, yeah.
I'm doing the math.
Yep, yeah, so under capital, that hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And just to be snarky, next year we could either pick out better water or some kind of, you know, relationship.
I wish I could change the numbers of the funds, but it's in the fund order.
We we can do this.
I'm struggling to, to be honest.
Organize it however we want.
Oh, yes, it's it's you, you're spread between fund thirty five and also fund thirty. Or eighty, six oh one capital construction roads, hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And and Derek, without going too much into like a road, understanding roads one oh one or four oh one. You know, since I've been here, and I've been here since ninety five, Mirror Lake. Um up by, I'll say the McCaffrey's area, that that stretch has at least been repaved two, if not three times. When I first moved here, it had like glass fault and it was kind of like pinkish purple and I thought, oh, what a magical town. What really is the life expectancy of a road?
So you'll notice uh in the nineties uh and you you look at like the the paving history of the township. A lot of the roads that were paved in the nineties are actually are in worse shape than roads from the seventies and eighties. So in nineties, Pendot did a, they changed their paving mix, they they added more rap recycled asphalt product into it. They kind of screwed with the mix and it wasn't for the good. They learned that twenty years later and kind of revamped it went back. So you'll notice that there's a, there's a time period that you're saying, why are we paving a road that's in in the two thousands or nineteen ninety nine? And we're not touching things from eighty three because the eighty three ones were actually in better shape, they had better product than in the nineties. Um so it depends on when it was paved. And again, Mirror Lake has a high traffic line, believe it or not.
So are we back to good stuff or is?
I mean, sure, I mean.
I mean, to to for the one point two miles that were.
I mean, Pendot does a lot of analysis and a lot of studies, so ho- hopefully, yes, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, because I know like even the development that, you know, I live in, which I think is considered to be a newer development. You know, it's twenty three years old and.
It's cracking, yeah, and and again, the township has not, and it's something, I I I know it's not budgeted, but. A a road assessment would be great to do for this township to actually see a non biased A I opinion of where the roads are. But um you know, a lot of other towns have success in micro surfacing, uh things like that. So in those developments that are fifteen years old, or the roads that are fifteen years old, you'll come through, you'll you'll lay a micro surface down. It's not asphalt, it's micro thin, covers the cracks, seals the road, maybe it gives you another fifteen years. It it's kicking the can down the road, but it it helps seal the road and gives you a little more longevity. It's not for every road, you need the right thing.
Um re- related, there's also a fair amount that Public Works has done outside of the road program specifically in terms of. What I'll call, what I'll just say extended patchwork.
Yes.
It so like, I know in. Other parts of like my neighborhood, for example, there were just massive potholes where I heard it was ankle breakers. Then what, then there were some patchwork done, but it was, it was almost, it wasn't repaving, but it was extensive patchwork.
Extensive patchwork, so.
Only lasts so long. So curious how much of that we we're we have in the books for this year.
So so again, that would be with the in-house crews, that's that we do that, we we either rent or 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 borrow machinery to do that operation. We have the dump trucks, obviously. So that's why the the materials budget is slightly increased at twenty thousand dollars because we'll buy it ourselves, we'll lay it ourselves. I don't, I forget how many tons we laid ourselves this year. I believe it was about three hundred and fifty ton that we actually laid, we called a mill and patch. So we kind of look at the long term, hey, this road's not even on the. We're not even looking at this road in the next five years. We got to do something to get it through it, or it could be the other way that we're. Do you want to do it next year, but it won't even make it through this year? So there's kind of like a fine mix of when we do a mill and patch versus just throwing asphalt in a hole and getting a pothole sealed.
Is is that contemplated every year in the budget? And you have some sort of plan? I know that's sort of a, you see it happen and sometimes.
It's it's more of a you say, once we know what the road program is set to, I'll sit down with the foreman and the crew and we we kind of determine. Hey, we know this road or we get a lot of residents, the residents actually help us out a lot, you know, so hey, we're having a lot of complaints here, let's go take a look at it. Uh we did a couple thing, I I believe it was Keswick a couple weeks ago, again. I I would need to pave that road, but it it won't last until the paving cycle. So we go out there and do it. So it's a lot of more responsive action. And again, that's that's, it sounds terrible to say this, that that department's been ran more of as a, it's a reactive department. I'm trying to make it more of a proactive department.
So um I was just going through the second class township code just because it's links for.
One, right?
Um there is an option uh under, I can give you the full section, section thirty two oh five, number nine. Annual tax not exceeding five mils to create uh to create and maintain a revolving fund to be used for permanent street improvements. If we were to enact that mileage, we could recapture the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is coming out of the general fund.
Or more, I mean, you could, there's municipalities that use more than that to offset their the liquid fuels. You can do a lot more with liquid fuels and just.
Yeah.
Hundred fifty.
And that would also allow us to potentially look at, what's our total budget for a street repair this year?
The proposed in in twenty twenty four was one million fifty thousand dollars, one million fifty thousand dollars.
Well, but I don't know, we want to do all at once, but. Uh but that one point one million is roughly what our base rate before we tried that three a year and one approach. Um and we think our natural base rate should be where we think that should be based on the mileage is probably a lot more. We could enact, here again, uh once you enact the five mils, you have that and that fund keeps growing a balance. We don't necessarily have to spend it all in the upcoming year. So you could add a couple mils now. And it would give you the option, if you wanted to do a whole host of bid alternates. And say, okay, let's do one three or one five or or two next year. To get us on track to where we can consistently do two. Uh the one challenge, I know. We haven't done an assessment of the three in one program where we try and batch that up. There have been some positives and some negatives with that. I don't know that we've sorted out where the land on that. But this is a way to get our core road funding up for a long period of time. And I I it's something, I know that the money we spend here is a reduction in cost for homeowners. Uh who blow out tires, have to re-weld wheels. Um I can only say that because I have low profile tires. Um and I've had two rims welded, there's a great place in Pendell, so if you ever have a problem, don't necessarily buy the new wheel because they're really expensive. But that's something we could do to increase our road budget successfully. And granted. I I know that a whole host of folks who are like not excited about increases in property taxes, but this is where I remind folks that we have the sixth lowest. Uh municipal tax burden in Bucks County, there are fifty four municipalities with the sixth lowest. And our total mileage is in the the top ten bottom in total, total. So there is room there. If other board members are open to that. We've got time to talk about it, uh and it might allow us to increase road spending, which I think most folks are in favor of.
But what I'd be curious about, you know, no, nobody loves raising taxes generally. I mean, you know. I'd be interested in looking at it in terms of one of the. Whenever we look at a mileage specific to some fund. How that can take pressure off of the general fund, so the general fund mileage can be reduced.
Mm hmm.
And make sure that the net is a net positive if if we indeed. But what, let's back up. One of the main things we get asked as as supervisors is, why haven't you paved our road? Right? That's one of our fundamental things that we. Better or worse, that's just one, that's an obvious thing. So there's a clear direct benefit to to residents upfront if if executed well. Um at the same time, they're paying for it. So we want to make sure that if if something like that is included or considered. That we we look for as much as we can, we look for reductions in other areas to. I don't know if we'll offset it a hundred percent, but to make sure that we're we're focused and we're not just adding another fund. And and not reducing it somewhere else so that it's it's good accounting.
Yeah, but to that end, how much could we pull out of the general fund sort of, because we have a negative. A a a general fund deficit for twenty twenty four going against what we previously had in the fund. If this will get us, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, right? That's twenty or thirty percent of the way there. Right? And then we can also say, hey, let's bump this. So if it's one mil, right, that could hit the two hundred thousand. If it's two mils, right? That's a million, so eight hundred thousand could go, well, nine hundred thousand roughly, could go to additional roads. I don't know, I just, I'm thinking.
Well, I I think if we, I hear you.
Yeah.
Um but I think what, and Derek, I don't know if you've done this yet. I think in order to do that, this might be more of a. Three, two, three, four, five year plan. And we and we would look, we have to look at road groupings of roads like we've done in the past. And see what would make sense. And then if we are going to do that type of thing, make sure that anything, however we do apply it. Makes makes sense so that it's, we're not just doing it to hold in more money and say, okay, we get the more money, let's make some roads, we want to be as efficient as possible, right? So. I'm over to the idea, I think it's it makes sense, it's just we want to make sure it's.
What what would your thoughts be spitballing here? If we did, let's say, one and a half mils or even two mils. That recaptures two hundred thousand from there. Two mils is, it's five fifty a mil.
Roughly five fifty.
That's like, if it's.
One one.
Yeah, then we could increase the road budget by eight hundred thousand. So you get closer to one nine two for annual road budget.
So when when.
Can I, can I jump in for a second?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, how about, uh, you know, um I thought one of the things that Derek said that maybe warrants discussion. Is this idea of having uh truly disinterested analysis of the roads. Um so that, you know, we could come up with a plan, right? Like we asked the golf course, what what are your needs for the next five years? We want to hear what are the needs are. But if we did that. And really could come up with a more objective way about what roads are next. And then maybe moved into mils that would help do us in a subsequent, do that in a subsequent year.
Or we could help pay for that study with a mileage now, right? So and and then maybe we say, and this is where I I don't know how much the study would cost, is it a hundred thousand, two hundred?
Yeah, so I I guess it depends on what what you're doing. I mean, we.
Right, so.
I think we spent. My prior municipality, we we essentially did P C I scanning of all roadways. Um but that was, it was. I think it was a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, but I think there's, I think that there's other technology that you can use at this point.
The P C I is great, and we know our roads bad, right? You know, P C I tells you either how exactly bad they are. There is other technology out there. Um I I I was talking to a vendor, uh Middletown's actually pursuing it now, it's called robotics, it's almost more A I driven. We gather the data as a township, they they help you map it, they they do all that. And you basically drive around with with a camera on your dash and and it just takes photogramics. Has a as a rating index of one to five. It's not science, you know, it is scientific to a degree just on on history as A I, but it's not, it's not P C I, it's not measuring the cracks. It's just a one to five on all your roads. I mean, a a a simple analysis like that's probably in the twenty to twenty five thousand dollar range. You know, just a quick, hey, you capture data, gives you spit out, and and rates them real fast for you. Um you know, in terms of roads that are out there, I mean, yes, we have, I probably have um. You know, not necessarily planned for the next five years, but roads that need to be done totaling, you know, the, that's eight miles and that's another fifteen miles. So what's that, eight fifteen? That will need to be addressed in the next five years.
Here's a que, here's kind of a stupid question. We've got these different technologies. How much, how much more information do they give you in terms of rating a road and seeing how just how bad it is? And in or in need of repaving versus somebody driving the road that knows what they're looking at.
I I think that the sales pitch with like, again, there's there's a few other vendors out there, but like sales pitch with robotics is, it's 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 non biased. It's it's going to capture that, it's going to map it and it gives you red, green, yellow and another color because there's five. But it just, you know, gives you a map of your township, color codes it. And again, it it's not precise, it's not exact, it's not a P C I index. It's not going to tell you how big cracks are on this section of road. It's just a, it's a map. So then you can, as 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 the supervisors say, where you, you know, hey, we're in desperate need and where you want to start allocating funds to kind of spread it throughout the township.
And does it help you distinguish, you know, certain roads may look worse than others, but maybe they're not a.
And and right, so so you may get a red on a cul-de-sac. You may get a red cul-de-sac, which doesn't have a lot of through traffic, may have ten residents on it, so you may need to punt that. But again, at the same time, cul-de-sac doesn't have a lot of A D A ramps, doesn't have a lot of stormin' lets that'll probably have to get repaired. So you still need to put some some brains behind how you're going to assess it, but it's.
It'll just straight up tell you how.
It's 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 a thirty thousand feet, a non biased opinion.
But then we don't, then it would, we'll have to take a step back and look at and say, well, this is not, this is a major arterial versus collective versus something else.
Yeah, so I mean, just even from the standpoint of just efficiency of projects, right? So you know, when we did, again, the municipality that I did, we had, you know, segments, it would be segmented. And so, you know, a segment may. One segment may be worse than another segment, but it may make sense to, from a, from a project implementation standpoint to say, even though. You know, there's a red here and there's a red all the way over here, but there's a, you know, there's an orange here, it may make sense to just address. So so yes, there's there's, there's still intervention that's required from the standpoint of, you know, making a determination as to, here's your project. Um you know, and Derek and I looking at sort of the road program, um again, just no- nothing. Nothing wrong with it, but you know, we noticed a lot of times there's a lot of jumping around. And so when you're talking about, you know, mobilizing a contractor in particular. I I understand the notion of, you know, spread the wealth, you know, try try to make improvements in different areas of the township. But sometimes you start losing some of the efficiencies associated with projects and where you'll end up with. You know, these strange circumstances where, you know, this section to this section, but then there's a section right next to it that clearly is a need that you're you're not doing. So so there's still that sort of human intervention, um sorry, aspect that that would go.
With which, I mean, mentally you're not, if you want road on one side of the township versus, and then having contractor drives five, six miles while they're. I, you know.
Sure.
Do another, that makes no sense because it's essentially being mobilized again, so now that that's.
But this section that that John identifies, we, Derek and I were talking about this in particular, there's many municipalities that have used this as the basis for funding capital roadway improvement programs. And so um beyond um beyond the street improvements. Um the revolving fund gets into, you know, sidewalks. Now, we're not in the water supply business, but you can do water supply, says sewer improvements. Now, the question is, you know, is that sanitary sewer, is that storm sewer? I think sewer generally used is either wastewater or storm sewer. So there's potentially the the, you know, we were talking about the stormwater utility, you could potentially use that as well, I think, to. To look at stormwater improvements within within neighborhoods. Um you know, one of the things that, you know, we we've also said is, again, while, you know, paving and surface treatment is great. Um a number of these neighborhoods have subsurface utilities that probably should be evaluated before you're doing mass paving programs. Because if there's a need to, you know, retrofit a neighborhood to install. You know, stormwater infrastructure or any other type of subsurface infrastructure, you probably should be making those investments a year or two before you're actually doing your your roadway construction. So um it is a tool that that's, you know, available. And one that that, again, as I said, a number of municipalities have used to fund uh capital roadway improvement programs. And then in terms of offsetting some of the pressure on the general fund, I mean, presumably there's probably some internal expense that we do. I mean, there is internal cost that we incur for roadway improvement related work that could probably be offset using this. I mean, I wouldn't want to say that, you know, we. That should be the primary purpose, but but it is probably, it could be used to alleviate some of those pressures as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would the board be interested if if the township manager took a look at, say. I hate to negotiate with, but one and a half, two mil, where do people feel? Because then it recasts what you have in the general fund. I would say leave the current general fund mileage recommendation as is.
I'm I'm just doing math in my head. But before we, I say that, did you, did you use the word revolving in the, when you said, when you're talking about the fund?
Yeah, so I, so I did.
Revolving loan.
And I was, and and I, we were a little thrown off on that as well. And so I I did actually call the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. Their general counsel, Scott Coburn, to talk about this because the language in the statute talks about a revolving fund. And then it talks about property owner assessment. And so I was wondering, is it, is it compelling property owner assessment is in order to use this? And he said that hi- his reading is that it it doesn't. So. So the revolving fund, I think, is just the fact that there's reoccurring revenue that's going into the fund more so than assessment basis.
For me, when I hear revolving, so the funds is related to something else, and I don't like those. I just want to make.
Yeah, and I had the same sort of thought as well. And I I did call him and he said that that's. That's not necessary, the assessment component to create. This, you know, make an improvement, assess, take the assessment, deposit it back, that kind of revolving, he's saying is not statutorily required.
So to get back to your your question. Hearing two minutes, geez, it makes me choke up when I hear. Promise I didn't do that on purpose. Hearing. Two, two mils off just seems like a lot. I would be interested to see at different levels what that might. Would turn in, but maybe half, quarter or half mil increments to see what that would mean over the next couple of years. Because I I'm not keen generally on. Given everything we're dealing with right now. But it is a. It is an in- infrastructure improvement. We can, we could use it for different things, like Suzanne's supervisor Blundy's point about. Doing, doing a study to actually understand what we need is, I think that's. E, right, plan, and maybe we, that might be a quarter mil or something like that. Year one, so we can understand things and then that would further inform.
Right.
Whatever else moving forward.
Here's why I entered my sort of one point five mil situation. It would clear up. Part of the general fund concerns in terms of improving our ability to be at safe harbor for a longer period of time. And two, it will help build up a reserve for us to do more roads because we know we got to do more roads. Right? And the more, and we can directly say, listen. To, we're increasing taxes, they all goes to roads. Right? Or stormwater, in which case we've got that.
Um, is, does it delineate between the the stormwater? Can you have a separate stormwater assessment as well as a? So you could do millages as. As both.
Could do both.
But the. The one that you're speaking of could contribute to stormwater, whereas stormwater one specifically only contributes to stormwater. Could, it could contribute to both roads and stormwater, the way you read it.
Right, as as stormwater utility fee could also contribute to roads because the roads are part of the conveyance system as well. But but it it it's an alternative. This is an alternative to that. But they're they're not mutually exclusive. It's not, you can have one and you can't have the other. You could have both.
Okay, you can have both.
You could, you could have, you could have both, yeah.
You go, Colin, you got some?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, Dan, talking about the graduality that you want to go for. It reminds me a bit of a conversation I was having with Dave, Monica and others about the pool. Right? And part of the reason I think the pool membership fees, we need to look at maybe doing a slightly painful hike now. Is because we didn't do hikes over time as costs went up and and the cost of living changed and all those things. But, you know, I I would be concerned about a very small millage here. From a perspective of if we're already four miles behind on roads we have to do this year, if we only spend this year as an assessing year. Well, now we got to do ten next year just to meet our annual obligation in addition to any other catch up. So, you know, I I'm I'm with John on this, that I I think we need to be a bit more aggressive in saying we need, we need. A objective plan for the long term. But that needs to start with with some budget and some real work, putting more pavement down.
Eric, if you had your wish list this year, could you come up with two miles of roads?
Do additionally?
To do, or you you know what I mean? Because what I don't want to do is raise millage, make some money and then say.
So and so the the original program that you had in terms of of term, I guess, was went through twenty twenty five, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
So so there are.
When Kurt and Greg started this, the three year road program. Twenty twenty five was obviously a part of that. That was, that was three years. It's been three years.
So in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five was termed the quote unquote mega year, right? Where where there was.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Twenty twenty four, this this proposed budget, this proposed, right, were laid out. Twenty twenty five would have been a mega year.
Mega year. So in terms of, I mean, to answer Dan's question, there have already been roadways identified as part of a multi-year plan, right? Twenty three, twenty four and twenty five plan.
Twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, we're on the last year of that plan.
But twenty five is noted. Did you do twenty five?
Twenty five. I started planning the next.
So, but as part of the rotating three year cycle. Twenty five roads have already been contemplated and identified. So you could, in an essence, advance. Portions of twenty five's plan if you had resource in order to do that, which would. In theory, either lessen the obligation in twenty twenty five. Or permit you to backfill further and to Colin's point, start. Start catching up.
Correct, yeah.
So you already have an additional two miles plus probably of identified roadways in twenty twenty five. You have eight miles.
Yeah, because theoretically, if we followed that mega year next year, that would have been. Funded with about two point three million dollars because you guys funded in twenty twenty two with three million. Seven hundred thousand was ARPA dollars. That money's gone. Would it touch that again? So you would have two point three million dollars, which will do you about eight miles in twenty twenty five.
So the other, I guess, point of consideration is the twenty five mega year was contemplated to issue another. Debt, which would require. An associated increase in. In your prob- probably in your debt service.
Theoretically, the loan that was taken out should be paid off. It was supposedly a three year cycle, that road loan. So it should theoretically be paid off. However, cost of money has gone up. So yes, you're you're.
So there's a potential that you would have been faced with. A millage rate increase within the debt service. A service fund in order to implement twenty twenty five.
Correct.
What, in terms of, when we had our our last mega year, whatever we referred to it as. There's a sweet spot in terms of where where you're doing too much, it starts to start to drip nut.
And again, yeah, so.
Difficult to do it efficiently.
So two, so two things. Yes, there is, there is a, there is a limit of how much. And the other thing is, is you don't want to create the same mistakes thirty years from now. Or you face the residents thirty years from now that, you know, you you pave fifteen miles of road in one year, they got to replace fifteen miles of road in thirty years from now. So there is a fine line. Yeah, you you don't want to do too much. I think the biggest hiccup with with what we did in twenty twenty two was. What I would recommend to get away from is is we do. It's been historic in this town to do the curb ramps, which is required. If it's liquid fuels funded, you have to do the ADA improvements and the paving. A lot of municipalities try to do their curb ramps a year in advance because that is somewhat a specialty. The same guy doesn't pave that's doing the curb ramps. So a lot of municipalities try to do their curb ramps a year before paving. So this way, a paver just comes in and paves versus him trying to wait for him to finish his, you know, subcontract to do that. So it would be ideal to separate that and start doing curb ramps a year in advance. That would create, that would help a lot of that issues that occurred in twenty twenty two.
Another, another issue that, I mean, again, that you. This would also provide a means to start addressing curbs as well, right? I mean, in addition to.
That fund, right, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
A question.
Remember sidewalk, was sidewalks in there?
Sidewalk is in.
Sidewalks, curbs. Like paths, possibly. I mean, it's a, it's a means of conveying some pedestrians.
It also gets you a match if you want to do the Taylorsville Road. Sidewalk, get the stormwater and you can use it for stormwater too.
No, there's, there's lots of positives on this. It's just when you, when you, when we look at the overall budget and millage increases, that's.
Yeah.
Positives to this type, in my opinion, I'll say it that way.
James is.
Dave, I have a question. So the mega, the mega pave twenty twenty five, coming twenty twenty five. That's roughly two point five million. That would be a three year loan, is that correct? Is that how that would be structured?
That's, I think.
I think I wasn't a part, I I that's, I believe how they.
I think that's how it was going to be. It was a three year structure. What would that impact debt millage? Roughly.
So, yeah, and the.
Forget what the cost of money was when that loan, when that road loan was taken out first.
And we have another loan that will be paid off at the end of twenty four. So there'll be.
Yeah, there'll be some, alright.
So I guess it's what's the approach? Is it better to do? As John suggesting is, you know, special millage for roads, which seems like would get. More money banked versus the the loan process.
Is this three year program why it's a start and and to Colin's point is good, is was a good effort? We're so far behind the eight ball. If if you do something harsh for the next five years, maybe you could trim back down to that three year approach. It's just we have so much that is behind the eight ball. We kind of get, we have to get caught up to then kind of let let the foot off the gas. And then kind of, kind of go with that approach. You'll never get caught up with this. Three, you know, do two small years and do a mega year. You just, it, if the math doesn't work, to Colin's point, there's a hundred and thirty miles of road.
And and we're adding who knows how much more miles over the next three years, probably.
Right, we keep taking dedication of things, you know. So, yeah, so there's fifty miles of road rail over the age of ninety three. So that haven't been touched since ninety three. So again, you kick that can five years, that goes to, you know, another fifty miles of road at thirty years old. So just, we can't get caught up doing it, doing, you know, two miles, two miles and seven miles.
And if you did the, based on what the current rates are, you're looking at a half a mil in interest expense. Right?
And and.
Yeah, no, that's why I was asking what the difference would be in a debt service versus just the millage.
Yeah, I would, I would need to know what they, what they, I don't know what they borrowed at or anything of that nature.
My only concern with it is, is whether it's two percent or one percent or whatever it is, is. To your point, making sure that future boards are actually sticking to the plan that we're putting forward. Because if it, if there's, if it can be loosely used for stormwater or for other stuff. And our intent is to see the project through. Is there a way to, when you do a loan, you're ensuring that that's what it's going to be for, right?
Yeah, yeah, I I'm not sure how that that.
No, I, yeah, I understand that. But if we're not take, if we're not taking that millage and using it towards what we're supposed to be using it. And future boards decide to start using it in other aspects, then it takes away from exactly what you're trying to achieve. Yeah.
Well, the other side to it is, if we're talking about, sorry, Colin, if we're talking about reducing. One millage to create this new millage, which I I do like the idea of a dedicated fund that. You know, well, it has a broad use, we know would be related to stormwater and and roads. And I like that. But that allows. The other fund to start, the other millage area to start to creep back up again, right? We we talk about the fourteen as a cap on the general fund. And that's a true, is a true statement without going to court. But if we lower that and then start coming up with other funds as well intentioned as they are, we might just have spread. Out the different names. Still be dramatically impacting, or at least significantly impacting taxes. Go ahead, Colin.
Yeah, I I was going to ask. And I do want to react to to what you just said, but is it possible to protect? The, you know, the dedication of 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 a use of of a fund. By ordinance, or once we create the fund and put the money in it, then the town manager can just direct that fund to be used for whatever.
I mean, the statute doesn't permit that. I mean, all all the uses relate to roadway, whether it's subsurface utilities in roadways. Or a J or or, you know. You know, curb sidewalk adjacent to roadways.
And I think that kind of hits James's point. Can we make sure that a board twelve years from now, after everyone, you know, is whatever. Doesn't decide that they just want to replace every curb in the township because that's what they want to do, right? And and the streets all the road, right? That that's all.
Yeah, I I don't know that you would be able to, I mean, you would be limited to the the language that's in the statute, so.
And then.
Pretty limiting.
Yeah.
It's limiting in itself.
Yeah.
I mean, all all of those purposes, I mean, again, as I said, fundamentally relate to the roadway, right? It's either something that's under the roadway, on top of the roadway, or immediately adjacent to the roadway. It's all, it's all streets.
It's all infrastructure stuff at least.
It's all street.
Related.
Street related infrastructure. Bike path might be a little bit of a stretch. I mean, that might be a little stretch. I I don't know that I would go with the bike path.
But you, but you, but exactly, but it's a stretch, but a future board could, or a future manager could say, well, no, it's related to the.
It's like a sidewalk. It's an alternative.
Okay, 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 stop. Go ahead, Colin.
So all I was going to say to Suzanne's point, to the chair's point, was. In in my view, making small adjustments where we lower the millage in the general fund. Yes, it does create room to move back up to that that ceiling, but it creates a small amount of room, right? In instead of, I think, looking at the the deficit that we're looking at right now. We'd have to use broad and blunt tools to to fix that through revenue. And I think that using this dedicated fund and creating a little breathing room in the general fund cap allows the board. To contemplate smaller increases. So that's my final thought there.
And Dave, as we consider, let, as we consider the stormwater fee. Oh, it's, that can be used for overlapping reasons as as something like this. It might be possible, I'm thinking aloud, as that stormwater fee builds its own. Nest egg for future project. It might be possible to, in the future, reduce this particular millage and base it more up. B, as we level it out over, over a few years. Try and manage it back down if possible. That's one way we could look at it.
And it's a function of how much we think roads are going to cost in the future, and we know they're going to increase in cost. Which is why I think we still need to step back and say, what did we learn from the three year thing, good and bad? But this is a way to get us where we can start to hammer away at the roads and get there. I think people will appreciate it. To those who are concerned that future boards may do something you don't like. I'm reminded of twenty, October twenty fourteen. Nine years, been here too long. So at that time, somebody wanted to come in and not have a tax increase. So instead of a, you know, having an eight hundred thousand dollar road program, they had a four hundred thousand dollar road program. Which sounded really good until the direct mail pieces came out talking about how your roads are being cut. And, oh, by the way, your roads aren't that good. People, there is accountability. People will say, hey, especially with roads, they will say, hey, I want my roads paved. We do have people that are are passionate about that. I think they will appreciate that. Unless we don't do their road. Depends on the person. Now, uh. But I I think that there will be a public accountability around. I I hope, you can't guarantee.
Yeah, I I mean, I think everyone has good points, right? And but it brings us back to the, you know, starting point, which we are operating with a structural deficit. And this conversation is good and robust. But doesn't address that bigger elephant.
It does get you twenty percent.
Well, I mean, not the way I'm thinking about it because, you know, I'm going to rob Peter to pay Paul if we go this way. Right? Something's coming down over here if we're going to go build up over there, in my opinion, one, one of five. But, you know, and I, and I'm. We don't really have the right to to bind future boards, right? If if the residents of Lower Makefield, when they cast their votes in two more years for. These, these lovely seats and those those new supervisors want to do totally different things, that's their right. So I can only deal with what what we're here with right now while I, while I have the honor of being here. But I. Moving on. So, you know, I just, I'm just trying to think as holistically as we can, you know, our, you know, we have a big issue. I don't know that we can solve it all just by creating new. Fees or new taxes or whatever words we're going to come up with, you know. It's great that we're the, in the sixth lowest in the county. I think I got that right, John? But, you know, we're still operating, you know. But, you know, we're still operating, you know? If any of us were running our houses this way, we'd be like, uh-oh, we're gonna, we're gonna have a problem soon. Anything else, Derek? How was the play, Mrs. Lincoln?
Unless there's any other questions that I can help you with.
Go ahead, James.
I just have off that topic question for you. The, uh, the, uh, strategy that you alluded to as far as going to a court to ask for, uh, an increase in our cap, that would be only affect us as the municipality, not us and the school district, correct?
Would just be us, yeah.
Be us. How common or uncommon is this?
I mean, I mean, for your small boroughs that it, they're, they're doing, they're doing it.
How, how, uh?
For a large township, I, I don't. I, I don't, I don't know that there's any.
Yeah, there's no, there's no case study that, that.
I, I, I mean, again, at that point, you're, you're, you, you can do it, but you're, you're also you, you're also, you're also capped on that too. So that's, you're gonna get, you know, yes, you'll gain, you know, at the max, you would gain two and a half million dollars, which is a lot of money. But again, if there's other things, you know, the reassessment, that, that kind of stuff doesn't happen, you're gonna end up in the same spot. You just won't end up in that spot as soon as
kicking the can.
You would end up in, in that, in that spot. And so.
Does two and a half million get us to a break even now? Doesn't, I mean, you don't think.
I mean, it's clo, it's close.
Close, right? It's closer than we are now, right?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe with a, a, a couple of small adjustments on some other thing. And then, you know, we do have futures of, of, um, interest income from the trust.
Right, right. Exactly. You have that, yeah.
Other futures that we can, that maybe that, the combination of that and our futures get us to that point, maybe? I'm just trying to be hopeful here.
Yeah, no, I, I think absolutely. Yeah, no, I mean, it all, it all helps. It doesn't, you know? You know, this, this, this conversation we're having would, you know, would be helpful. But again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that this is an answer to those other issues and it, it, it's a, it's hell. But I wouldn't want to levy that and then not advance a robust roadway improvement program, because that's the purpose of that, that, you know, that tax. And so,
Just for sake of argument, what's the, what's the process in, in going through this? Um, if we.
This, you would just, you would just do it as part of your, you know, just as you set annual tax rates. You don't have to do anything.
Then I'm saying, uh, you know, going to the courts for the, for the increase on the cap. What's the process?
I, 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 I would have to, I mean, I assume you, there's a filing. I don't, and then you just, you, they set a court date and and then you, you go in.
Have to be present, or is that something?
Probably, I, probably, I'll send it myself for whoever would be, would be there.
Yeah. Again, I'm just thinking out loud. It's not, it's not that I'm saying I want to go down that road, but I'm thinking if, even if it's that's something that gets us to a, a place with, with that and the futures of the, of the, you know, the trust, um, income, if that gets us almost at a break even point, I think that, you know, we can work this millage being a, a side thing, because I don't, I don't think I want to, you know, cripple us with not being able to pave more roads clearly, but how do we get as close as we can get, I think, is, is what the question is.
This is gently where I go for the close, um, when we're selling, is, wouldn't it be a great idea if we gave the township manager the suggestion to revise the budget to come in with a, a, a thought of plan for, like, I'm feeling one and a half, I'd like to feel two. Right? Con, I think you can feel two. Can you feel two to go? Con feels two.
How do I get you into this millage today, Colin?
Can I get one person to feel two? Because then, then you have a really good assessment of where you're at. And with that, the township manager can also reduce some of the increase in the millage for, you know, by point oh oh one or two, right? If, if, if that is a value for folks. In addition to addressing that portion that is in the general fund that is really road related. So this is in the spirit of getting you to a more direct roads program.
There's been some talk in the last few weeks, people asking, how did we get to this point? I think a little bit how we got to this point was using the general fund as a general fund when there was an option of a special purpose fund, right? Where if you know you're budgeting six hundred thousand dollars a year for roads and you're starting to have to do general fund transfers, that's your early, early warning sign, right? That, that you're not funding the roads at the right level. So. But I wasn't here, so.
Colin, I would remind you, you only got two write-in roads.
And one was for Mr. Doyle, so.
It's all.
How to spell his name, no judge.
At the township building, we don't know who else wrote me it elsewhere.
That's true, that's true, that's true.
As a follow up to my, uh, fellow supervisor, John. The, the one and a half of the two that you speak of, essentially, what would that mean per household?
So, uh, every mill is, uh, forty five dollars a person or fifty dollars?
Yeah, forty, forty-three sixty if.
Yeah. So forty-three sixty, if it's one and a half, you're talking an extra sixty-five dollars. Now, the benefit for folks is that money, we're spending that money either way. The question is, if we ask for it now and we're using it for something that will be a net benefit for people on things we will have to spend in the future on, it's cheaper to spend it now than to ask for it later and, or pay interest on it. And that's part of the problem with the millage. If we had just increased all of our millages in the past and consistently had done that from, say, two thousand eight on, we would have had a safe harbor and with the general fund that you wouldn't even be talking about the cap. Right? That we would have been fine. If you'd just taken out what has been given to roads over the years, you wouldn't be talking about the cap. This is just an easier way for us to get around. So again, I don't want to talk too long because I have a limited number of words per session. But can I feel you at two? Just, and this is guidance. It's not a comp, you, you can come back and say, I don't feel it.
Like, it's like, how do I get you into this millage today?
Not a plaid jacket you have on.
Huh? It's not a plaid jacket.
A jacket. I, what, I'll get, poor James getting put on a hot seat. I'll say this, I, I, I could feel it. I could feel it. But I would be looking for reductions in other areas.
Agreed.
Make it more palatable for things that may not be as directly. I don't want to use the word important, but directly as necess- oth- other things that may be nice to haves that, where we could look to, uh, reduce and maybe do it a later date when, when we have have the option.
I agree. Would have to be a, an effort on both ends.
Right. So what if some of that effort isn't necessarily road related? It could be in other stuff that we're gonna talk about.
Okay. And I'm not pointing, like, when I look at the back sheet of our package and we see different types of projects that have pretty large ticket num-
Yep.
Numbers next to them that may not be necessary. Some of them may actually be able to get partially funded by this.
Yeah.
But others may not, and we have to look at, at how we, how we address those and, you know, these are nice projects, many of them. But we may have to put them on the not back burner, as they say, to look at them in the future. So if folks are willing to consider that, then I, I could get on board, let's say, with, uh,
Dave, how many, how many households in Lower Make?
Eleven thousand, right?
Yeah, it's eleven thousand, twelve thousand, some.
Okay.
Do you feel like you've gotten some guidance?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Um, I, I just, the, the project stuff, and I'm not advocating for the project stuff, but the this is really a checking account issue. This is, this is a, this is a general millage issue. So I, I don't, I'm not sure there's, if you're asking for, you know, can you levy, you know, something here and then reduce general purpose tax? I don't, I don't see how you do that because you're not you're not going to shift that much cost from the general fund to this, to the special purpose fund. So I, I can, I can try to put something together, but I, I, I don't, I don't want to sell you that this is like an answer to that general fund issue. And so this stuff on this page is being funded through, you know, bond proceeds, which are restricted in some fashion. And fees that are limited in terms of their, their allowable, allowable use. So this stuff is, I don't know that this relates to the general fund.
We still have that issue. We're gonna have to face that issue at some point.
It doesn't have to necessarily be the general fund either. We have multiple funds where we're contemplating. Some of them are contemplating millage increases. Some of them are looking at maybe have other, we've heard some presentations that have other
Sure.
increases in funding that, um, some of them we may be able to take a look at and say, hey, we may need to put a pause on that. Others, we are contractually obligated to do. But, you know, we this, it's a holistic review of the budget to see where we may be able to
Sure, sure.
pencil, as it were, across the board, uh, where we can versus where we can't.
Yep, okay.
And I don't know, to use your term, Colin, I don't know if, if all of those things need to be blunt instruments. And maybe they're finding if it's things that add up over, over the extent of the whole budget, but that's what I personally am looking at.
Just wide awake.
He mentioned blunt instruments. I'm thinking clue. Yeah, I know. It was Dan with the clock in the conference room.
You know, the one question I was expecting you to ask, Derek, is, uh, so how, how do, what do you have for revenue producing?
Oh, I know.
Projects and.
Oh, I, I know I will not be asking him that question. Yeah, exactly.
You're off the mic now, Derek. Don't worry, you're off the mic. No one can hear you, Derek.
No one can hear you. You have to come back up here if you, if you, if you have something legit.
Does he really have a revenue producing idea?
But apparently not.
He's gonna put a toll on the new bridge by the Brookside Pool.
Tollhouse cookies.
I mean, there is minor revenue, obviously, um.
What else are you gonna sell at auction?
Well, there, that, I'll fix that. I could sell this building. No. Revenue. It all work remote. So obviously, road encroachment permits, that is a revenue generating thing, uh, if you go back. So that is anytime a utility opens up our roads, we, we do charge them a permit fee. Um, back in two thousand twenty-two, we brought in about ninety-five hundred dollars. I came on board, reassessed the fees. We're currently about forty-five thousand dollars. Again, utilities doing more work. That, that does help offset one of my employees that actually go follow up, work with them, coordinate with them. So we do have that. Um, we do have a pen, pen down winter maintenance agreement. So Penda does pay us to plow Dolington Road. They now pay us to plow Ox Valley Road. It's not really caught much cost for us because, again, we need to take Dolington to go to North End. We gotta do Ox Valley to get to the school. So we kind of, it, it's a wash. It's not gonna make us money, but it's there as money coming in. Um, and the other big ticket, we do have leaf assessment that comes in. So, so the leaf assessment does come in, it generates about six hundred forty-four thousand dollars. Um, I, I mentioned this last time. You'll see in, in the budget under Public Works. I don't know what page number it is because my page numbers don't come up. Uh, we do have cost of leaf collection at about four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That is strictly our labor, our contracted labor, uh, and, and minor equipment and parts. So we do have the trucks in there. We have fuel in there. So that five hundred thousand is probably closer to six hundred forty-four thousand dollars when you think about all the capital that, that is allocated for the leaf collection. Um, so that, that's a revenue source for us.
We believe you, Colin.
I, I, I was teasing you when I said it.
I mean, we, I, I try to make money, not much.
No, no, but, you know.
But, and then the other, in terms of big picture ideas to see for efficiencies, I think I mentioned this one of our last meetings, and you're both.
And it's a perfect segue.
It is. About, about, um, how we deploy certain staff that may have complementary or overlapping skill sets across different, different departments, uh, to see if there may be ways to have some of the higher cost staff with, with higher skill levels to be deployed a little bit differently versus some of, like, we had versus lawn mowing at the basins versus, uh, fields and all that, to see how we deploy, to see if there are ways potentially to work as a larger group to save some money here and there. It, will it be a three hundred thousand dollar savings? No, not at all. But it may, may result in a need for one or two less staff. It may result in some highly paid, highly skilled employees doing something more efficiently than somebody, you know, just things like that, that, um, I think we're, we've started talking about a little bit.
Yeah, I, I did do, and Monica and I did speak briefly on this one. Um, I, I don't know, again, without digging into the weeds, mind you, if, if the, the more you cross utilize, you're taking them out of special purpose millage funds and again, bring them to the general purpose fund that is maxed out. So when you think about some of this higher salaries, then you're gonna burden that higher, that fund that's maxed out. Uh, they, they do try to, we, we could try to utilize their, again, her guys do have skills. We, we, we do want to advance on them. I don't know. I think if anything, you're gonna, I don't know how much savings there would be. I, I just don't know. I think there'll be better product. I think more things could get done. Yeah, right. Yeah, I don't know how much of a savings, again, dollar value. I think it's gonna be better product value for.
For example, like, I could see, you know, some, some of the facilities that we have in Park and Rec that, um, may need some love, right? If we throw some high, highly, some public, highly skilled public works folks at it that may have seen that before in their own thing, it might help, you know, to move things along a little quicker and, and more efficient.
Do kind, we do that now.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do. Yeah, they do.
They came and they paved all the bike paths this year rather than us, you know, doing it externally. We've done a lot of, my guys go and interview during leaf collection and snow plowing. And we do cross utilize and we do communicate quite.
Yes.
So, um, I don't know how much of a change it would be. I think we're both short-staffed on the maintenance side and we're not really getting things done. So if we're both short-staffed, it just makes us massively short-staffed. Um, so I'm not sure how much, you know, there could be some good productivity, but but we're open to the discussion.
And that's all it is. It's just kind of
Yeah.
Thirty, you know, thirty thousand feet looking down and to see where my pill.
And, and maybe even bringing to our attention when you're doing it to that way, you know, oh, okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Derek, run from the mic.
Oh, thank you.
Monica.
Dan wanted to do Ubers in the, uh, snow, in the snow trucks, the snow plows, using them as Ubers perhaps. Ubers in the, uh, in the snow plows, yeah.
That's cross utilization.
Yes.
I have slides.
Oh.
No way.
First one of the evening.
Nice that grass is cut.
Cut our grass. So I watched the meeting, of course, last week or two weeks ago, and, um, I recognized that we had to really dig in a little bit more. And, well, I knew I, we already had to dig in more. Um, so I met a lot with Allison and David and we, we did make quite a few changes since last time. I heard you guys see that in your budget that you have in front of you today. So I just wanted to bring some things to your attention. I'm not gonna take you on a long journey, but I'm gonna take you on a small journey, journey. Um, so, you know, basically, our department, we use two different types of funding, right? We have alternative funding, user fees, grants and sponsors, and special use tax millage, which is the Park and Rec tax millage. Um, an average agency, according to NRPA, that's the National Recreation and Parks Association, recoups about twenty-five percent of expenses from user fees. In two thousand twenty-three, we are going to recoup fifty-three percent of our funds. That's combined pool because pool is included in the NRPA standard. If we pulled pool out of it, we would have recouped twenty-eight percent um, of our, you know, of everything through user fees. And then I looked into like the county, the county recoups, including their pool, forty-one percent. And, um, Middletown Township is about thirty percent. So just to kind of show you where we are, we're, we're kind of working at a high level with regards to user fees in comparison to other townships and, um, even across the country. So I just wanted to show you a little bit, but pre-COVID, post-COVID, some of our expenses that we've seen increase. So this is just sample. I couldn't take the whole budget. It would take me forever and ever and ever, and I just didn't have that kind of time. But, um, you know, you can see some significant, um, significant increases specifically with trees. We've been doing a lot of tree maintenance. Um, a lot of, we've, we have a dead, dying and dangerous standard. So if it's dead, dying or dangerous, it's, you know, removal or trim or, um, and we try to do some preventative maintenance if we recognize that something's on the border. So we've been really digging into that. We have a couple of projects on hold. So if it wasn't like a urgent, urgent emergency that it might fall on a car, person. So if it wasn't like a urgent, urgent emergency that it might fall on a car, person, um, we do have a couple of projects on hold. Um, that's seventy thousand as of uh, the fourth of October. So we still do have a couple of tree projects that we have to fit in for the year. So that's just trimming or removing? That's not planting? That's not planting. That's trimming or removing. Thank you.
Quick. On the, the waste, I was just curious, the waste management number
Yeah.
went up a little, I don't know, five, six thousand, just eyeballing it. Um. Will that come back down? I'm thinking we, we, the trash can removal, what, how is, how has that impacted things?
Um, well, not much yet because we only did it in the passive parks. Next year will be our true tell. That's where we move it from the athletic complexes. So um, I imagine we'll have some challenges before we can really remove our waste, like removal. Um, so there'll probably be a little bit of pain along the way, I imagine. Um, so it's not gonna affect it too much. I maybe say two, three years down the line where we really see that is my prediction. Is it, is part of what you're saying there? Um. I, I mean, I know, you know, we, the Blundies have moved away from waste management because essentially the rates were getting so high, I thought they were signaling they were, they wanted out. So is there opportunity to talk to another vendor? We can go, uh, yeah, we can look at other vendors. Um, there are a lot of fees too for recycle contamination. So people who dump in our parks, they dump into their cycle bin, they're, they're, they don't care what bin they're gonna use. Um, and oftentimes um, we get cross contamination fees and they've added up over the years too. That's gotten higher and higher um, since two thousand nineteen. So that's part of this also. Um, we do have at least one or maybe two bins that we lock now, the recycle bins that can only fit carbon. People still find a way get it in there. So um, you know, there's only so much we can do there. Um, and then, you know, light repairs haven't even bumped up that much. And we've, it's kind of been standard seventeen to nineteen, fifteen, nineteen thousand every single year. Um, and that's repic, uh, replacing the old bulbs and ballast of our old lighting systems. It's just very expensive.
Is that mostly MAC or is that?
It's primarily MAC, yes. Yep. We have done some replacements along the pool, the pool lights and that too. So it's primarily that.
Have we looked at um, I don't know how the technology works here, but uh, LED replacements using, can you, can you, do you know if you can do an LED replacement for those, for those picture techs there? Not a MAC?
I think the MAC tech, from what I remember, you know, those things are almost not really serviceable. They're so old. We would have to take the whole ballast off. Maybe we could reuse the poles if anything. Um, as part of the Macklesfield Park study, we are evaluating that, that, that is included. So um, we're taking a look at that as well. So does anybody have any questions for, about this before I move on? I already.
You tried, you tried to move on.
Ten, twenty. Um, so this year I just tried to show you a glimpse of how fees are kind of spread. Um, I have been reviewing. So in the proposed budget, you know, the fees are included. So you'll see increased revenue um, throughout. But I want you to know that like all the fun stuff, the athletics, the extras, the dog park, the pickleball, the summer camp, everything is covered in a hundred percent through user fee. And really what our taxes or your taxes are paying for is maintenance and operations and regular operation costs. So um, if anybody has any questions about this slide, I'd be glad to go over it and I'll share this with you too.
Can you, can you dig into that a little bit? Cause um, when we look at, say, the, the leagues and their, their user fees.
Sure.
They, we've heard the comment like they pay for the parking wreck program.
They don't pay for the parking wreck program, but they pay for what they're using.
What, what does that mean to people? Does, does it mean, and I'll give you a few examples just to respond. Like when you're using the field, right? You, you gotta deal with uh, obviously mowing and maybe bathroom maintenance that they use lights. I know they pay a separate light fee.
There's a, yes.
Yeah, um.
It was second, the seeding, we don't stripe, um, but we aerate the fields every single year. We do a lot of turf management in excess. So if it was a passive park, we wouldn't be doing as much turf management, less mowing. Um, so you, you're recuperating from their fees. Actually, we had a little bit of a loss last year, so I intend to raise their fees this year. That'll go over that in a little bit. Um, but it recoups one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of staff time, out of staff time is, yep. So you're recovering staff time for the excessive mowing and extra uh, seeding, turf maintenance. Um, the dirt, the diamond text that we order, that's expensive to bring in. Any extra, anything that we have to put on the lawns for maintenance.
Yeah. How about like parking lots and stuff like, like parking lot maintenance at MAC or something?
Parking and lock maintenance is needed at MAC, but no, that's not incorporated in the fee at this time.
It's just good to know what the breakdown is.
Does anybody, anybody could use the, the parking lot, you know, the parking lot?
Well, it, it's, except when you go there on a Saturday, it's filled with it's filled with people who are um, usually tied to sports leagues, which is fine. And then you go there on the next day and it's basically empty. So we know where the primary impacts are.
Yeah. So as of now, replacement of the parking lot is not included.
Um, it's good.
Extra toilet paper too, things like that. Lot, all the overnight.
What's the phrase you like to use? Total cost of ownership?
Yeah.
We're just trying to understand where it breaks down in that.
Sure. Yep. And I also wanted to point out here, um, our special events, you know, special events are quite expensive. They add up. Um, the, this number here does not include staff costs. So this is just, you know, the cost of running the event without staff. Um, our largest portion of this is community day. So that does split into taxpayer dollars. A lot of that is sponsorship, but it does split into taxpayer dollars. So that is something that we're, that's the fun thing that we're funding um, through taxpayer dollars. So um.
So I think when you and I were talking, you said roughly of that forty-seven thousand dollars of, of special purpose tax fund support, like thirty thousand of that is actually community day.
Why is that so expensive? Why is community day so expensive? Do we have vendors there that pay?
You do.
Do they pay for?
That revenue that we make, but still forty-seven thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars is coming from the taxpayer. Fireworks are about twenty thousand dollars. Rides in is about thirteen thousand dollars and we offer them for free on that day. Um, a lot of, actually our staging is all donated. That's about forty thousand dollars in value at all staging. That's, that's all donated. That's not even included in this.
So like, that's the big stage that the county brings in?
No, it's not the county. Um, uh, we get that donated from Mid-Atlantic Event Group.
Okay. So between fireworks and the
What, what was the other big item? You said fireworks and what was the other one you said?
Amusement?
We have the rides.
Oh, the rides, okay, amusements, okay.
Do we do police? What's the, that's not included in?
None, none of the staffing cost is associated with those events.
How much staffing are you talking outside of that?
Um, well, our entire staff works. It's all hands on deck for that day, along with the entire pool staff is on that day. And of all public works and, and a lot of the police.
What's the, I guess the payoff of community day?
We bring the community together. You know, we have a day where we bring everybody together. That, that is.
And what's the turnout then in the last two or three years?
I, I feel it, well, it depends on weather. It's a hard time of year. So, you know, last year was weird weather year. It was really low. It was light. Um, it's kind of been intermittent um, over the years. I feel like it's getting less and less. I, I have talked to the park board about reevaluating how we offer it. Maybe it's something different. Uh, it seems almost now like two separate events. So we have people who come just for the fireworks and then people who come in the morning. And then there's this weird gap in time where we are staffing this whole like overlay. Um, so maybe that's something to consider. But these type of events, they're not, they're not cheap.
Yeah.
And, and unless we start ticketing maybe for rides or things like that, then then there's that kind of option.
Yeah, it's a tough sell.
But it's already expensive as it is. I mean, buying a meal at community day is expensive.
We should be recovering that through vendor fees. Like what are the vendors paying to be at community day?
Oh, I would say they were paying fifty dollars this year, seventy-five dollars this year.
That seems really cheap.
You get your lobster roll for twenty bucks this year.
Yeah.
We're spending, we're spending forty or fifty or sixty thousand dollars on an event and they're giving us fifty bucks to set up a cart and make a thousand bucks. That seems like at least, right?
It depends on what, like the food vendors, I feel like we could probably charge more. I don't know that we'd get as many vendors
Yeah.
as far as the, the just tent vendors.
Hmm, alright. I'm curious, maybe it's just because how I grew up. Um, it, you know, the, the rides were like two little kids. I always saw you there this year. They, we always go. They're, you know, the rides are, they're not really rides anymore. They're more bouncy houses and all that, which are nice, but kind of, you know.
Well, those kinds of rides are even more expensive.
I know, I know. Um, I'm curious what, what, what the uh, I'm curious what the opportunity is to make, make some, generate more revenue if we did something more like, what was the group that I? I remember Smokey's Greater Shows as a kid, but it was like the, the sort of mini carnival rides.
Yeah.
That, that type of thing. If, if something like that would go over well or, or if it, or not.
Well, we did try to bring in a little larger carnival. When we, when I first started twenty seventeen, we did have some smaller carnival rides. Um, which were popular, but it's just the same as almost having a bouncy house. We did look into some larger carnival rides, but generally speaking carnival, they will not bring those rides unless it's gonna be a multi-day event.
Yeah.
So if it's not going to be like a long weekend or that type of thing, that's not something that we can do. So Monica, you said that uh, you, you know, maybe it's the wrong time of year. I, I have no idea. But if you think it's the wrong time of year, we should, we should be having that conversation to look to when it's gonna be the most impactful. If there's that weird gap, then maybe the morning needs to go, or maybe we need to repurpose it as something else. But it is I love it, but it's a lot of money. And if you're telling me there's a lot more that we're not even seeing, then I think. I think it'd be great to bring the community in and ask what they might like as a community. I, I hear we're surveying too much. People are getting annoyed. John, I'm sorry. I see.
I'm taking a survey of the board. Do you think that that's a lot of money to spend?
Surveying, John, it's his turn. Go ahead, John.
Thanks.
I think uh, if we were to do that, some of the areas where we can think about it is uh, how valuable fireworks are to people versus the full day event. Because by the time you get to fireworks, it's late. Your kids are probably exhausted. If you, my kids are twenty-one and twenty-four. I know they're tired at that time. No. Um, but at that time, you've gone the whole day there if you, you've spent there. And so the question is do you really wanna have fireworks after all that and just have a day that maybe ends at fi, at, at five or six or something like that? That could be, in this case, twenty thousand dollars less. Or, or do people feel strongly about fireworks, so much so that they wanna keep them? Or do you do that another time? Uh, that, so those are some of the questions because you do have different folks that want different things.
For Suzanne's point, I'm just saying, not, I don't know, maybe it makes sense to move to like the, like the July fourth weekend or something. So it ends with fireworks on July fourth and maybe it is a couple of day event where it could be revenue generating. If that would work, doesn't mean it would work, but.
Yeah, there's a lot going on July fourth. It makes it hard to look at that, which and I don't, I agree with you that another date could, could work better. I don't, that's not my, that's why we have Monica to figure that out.
I'm not sure. Is it tied to the pool? Right? I mean, you know, I know we had some, why, why can't we go in the pool for free, blah, blah, blah. So maybe it's later in the year and and you know, as the days get shorter, maybe people aren't so tired because we can do the fireworks earlier. But you will figure it out and you will let us know. Maybe even a different location, maybe a different location. Dance backyard. So it's worth evaluating either way. As of right now, this is the
Of course.
how we do this. Um, so I just wanted to.
My only, my only ask on this is where are we in getting a new dunk tank?
Revenue generating.
It is revenue generating, but we were all.
It really wasn't. Actually, we donated all the money from the, the.
Yeah, good, yeah.
So we paid for it and then we donated the money.
Yeah, but it was like Lower Makefield Community Fund or the uh, fires. Yeah, so.
If you didn't get a chance to try this yet, did you?
I did not yet.
It'd be interesting.
I think I had COVID. I think I was doing something else actually. This, I did have, that's when I had COVID.
How much is a lease for a dunk tank for a day? How much is a lease for a good dunk tank for a day?
Oh, I, I don't know. Probably around six hundred dollars now.
Alright. I'm in for it if you, if I.
I got it.
Okay.
Alright. John wants to be first in the tank though.
No, because I gotta.
Even a good sport in the tank.
And I usually generate good money by taunting kids, which I enjoy doing. But uh, that too. Yeah, they enjoy that. But you know, I'm certainly up for keeping the event. It's just sort of like, can we trim or change things to keep the budget?
I mean, it is like we park two events. We park the morning and day event and then we re-park again.
Yeah.
So um, that's kind of the trend.
I, I only had one small thought on that and then you can move on. You don't even understand the slide. Um, Harvest Day charges a hundred dollars for a ten by ten booth and then two fifty for a, a ten by twenty and scales up from there. So if we're charging fifty, we can use Harvest Day as a, as a mark. We could probably.
I, I actually believe we increased it to seventy-five last year. Um, I don't know, Allison, do you have that near you? Sorry, sorry, sorry to call you out like that. Okay, thanks.
Just a suggestion that we could probably use their fees as a baseline because they run a very successful event.
Sure. And no fireworks, which I like fireworks. Next, next slide. Next slide. Um, so I'm just gonna go through and bring these in front of you. The community center, we cover sixty percent of costs through user fee. Um, and then we do a lot of things in there that are non-user fee based that are benefits to the community. So we do staff training. We do um, public meetings, staff meetings. We do community events. Um, we do program signups, community education for the, that's offered by the communities where the shelter, an event of a stream of storm. And we also do partner programs with Pennsbury and sometimes their field trips. We house them for their lunch if they do something um, nearby. We also offer discount to nonprofit organizations like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Quilter Skilled Daughters of American Revolution, Makefield Lions Club, Lower Makefield Women's Association and Makefield Women's Association. And I think I called everybody, but I missed anybody. Um, I'm sorry. Um, so I just wanted to let you know what's going on in there. I know I don't give updates on the community center. We are very high traffic. Um, we are constantly going. Uh, we don't have enough parking. Um, so if we could work on that at some point, that'd be great. And so that's community center. Does anybody have any questions about that?
But when we, and maybe you're getting into this on others thing, because you, obviously you're offering a lot more programs every year that are user fee driven. Um, I shouldn't say user fee driven, but generate user fees, I should say. Um, and we do that at the parks too. Are you seeing? When you compare, I'm trying to think of it, compare, when you compare, let's say some of this stuff that we're doing through Park and Rec versus maybe the YMCA or some other organization that offers whatever they offer, right? That similar. Are you seeing our fees being similar, higher, lower?
You mean for like a class?
For a class of some type, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty competitive with other organizations. Actually, for accreditation, we have, that's part of something we have to keep up. We have to do an analysis every three years of all recreation offerings wherever they are. And, and part of how we accept a program is that we're not like overproducing something too. So that we're, we're kind of cross operating across the board. So um, we do do an analysis. We're competitive in pricing. Um, like for a yoga class, we're low. Um, because we're not a yoga student. They're not getting the prancing peacock experience, getting the community center experience. So you know, we're a little low on, on that. Um, but generally speaking, we're, we're in a good spot.
Are, are you gonna talk, do you have another slide that talks about uh, user fees for leagues or, or instructions, more sports related instruction and all that? Is that coming up?
It's coming up, leagues specifically, yeah.
And then what, what, just on the issue of, of instructors that we bring in, um, what's the sort of money sharing sort of arrangement that's, that's, that's typical?
It's twenty-five, seventy-five. That's typical across the board. We work with the instructor to come up with a rate that they feel comfortable about with what they're receiving and and we feel like we're, you know, making what we need. On our end, we do the marketing and the registration. On their end, they do all the instruction communication with, you know, whoever's registered. So there's a great partnership there. And that's standard kind of across most municipalities, around twenty-five percent, twenty, twenty-five percent.
Partnership, I would assume would be fifty, fifty.
Well, we, they do more of the, they, they do the heavy end of the work. They're doing the instruction. They keep their certifications. They have to have insurance. They have to have. Well, we've done the heavy end of the work.
Yeah, we built the pickleball courts. We're maintaining them. We're staffing. We're doing all the marketing. I feel like it's a fifty, fifty, not twenty-five, seventy-five.
I would not get any instructors up at fifty. I would like to introduce you to family members. John's twenty-one and twenty-five year old. Yeah, I mean, we require heavy certifications. They have to have qualification, certification experience. I mean, they're very well vetted, but I would not get them at fifty.
Do you require that for like people that are coaching LMFA or, or coaching at YMS?
Don't run LMFA. LMFA just uses our fields. Don't run LMFA. LMFA just uses our fields. So I don't, I don't vet them and they're volunteers.
Well, yeah, they do like a criminal background check.
To do background checks and things, but uh, you know, it's, it's not my organization to run.
And I think we talked about this before. It was a one, it's just a one hour per week that, that, that the instructions with the pickleball that's happening.
Um, I believe, I want to say there's four classes.
So it's four hours per week? How many total students in each class?
Um, I think about twenty.
And what's the fee per student?
I don't recall. I'm sorry. There's so many fees.
That's okay.
I don't, I don't recall specifically for pickleball.
I, I think it was like.
There's yoga, there's, I mean, so many different.
Was it like one sixty for a ten week or something? It sounds familiar. So it was like.
I don't say right now.
Let's pretend it's a hundred. Let's pretend it's a hundred.
It's a hundred. So a hundred.
Getting twenty-five dollars off of each a hundred dollars.
You can't find anybody else to get a better deal at fifty-fifty. Uh, that's.
Get anybody to teach pickleball. I couldn't get any certified instructor. This is the first one that has come to me.
And he's a tennis instructor. He's not a pickleball instructor.
Certified pickleball instructor.
But he's a tennis.
I think we're just making things up, right?
Yeah, certified. He went and got a certification for.
But he was a tennis pro.
I can marry people.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so.
Yeah.
I, I think the, the board is trying to say that there's some concern there and not about pickleball only, right? But um, about having public assets being used to help fund businesses in a way that doesn't feel um, fair. So.
It, because you have, I think.
I agree.
Two, one is, what, what, the one side we're concerned about is if they're using our facilities. That it's fair and equitable to, to James, your point. And then the other side, the other portion of that is, I'll stay on pickleball just because it's very, our, we, we build, you know, we fund and build these, these public assets, right? These, these facilities because they're a public good. So we want the public to be able to use them for free generally. So we don't want a, you know, for, for certain popular things like where we have limited resources, right? And I know you, you're tracking this, but we don't want, in, in the event that, let's say, you know, I'm not picking on pickleball, but it's a good example. That there's pickleball classes going on that are, people are paying a lot of money to go to on, on Lower Makefield Township resources, but there's a line of people that really want to play pickleball that can't because they're not paying the fee. So we, you know, do we say, hey, hey guy, I was using my main accent, hey guy. Um, yeah, you should probably be doing that at the pickleball club or whatever.
I, I guess what I can say is most of the people who sign up for pickleball are residents who want pickleball instruction.
Yeah.
And, and they are sitting at the court and they.
And again, I'm not picking on pickleball. It's just.
So we can start offering it for free and we'll pay for it by the taxpayers, you know, so there, there's that option. You have that option. We just pay for him to come and instruct and he offers it for free to residents who sign up for his class.
If there's twenty people in the class and if he's getting a hundred, I'm just, I don't know who he is. But we're. Two grand, no, but I, I, I made him a hundred to take out your twenty-five. He's making two grand a class.
Well, for a series of class.
Yeah.
Yeah, eight class.
Hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
I want, you know, I, you can, I can do a analysis for you as far as how much instructors make. Because that's not, it's, that's right in the mix.
You know, I, I think, I think at Pensbury Racquet Club, that's what they're paying, paying people. But the difference is.
Well, I can look at municipal. I'll look at municipal comparisons. I'd be glad to do that.
And, and we don't need to limit it to pickleball. We're not picking, picking on pickleball.
I just wanted to say, I think.
Bamboo.
How many of those, how many residents are not, or how many players are non-resident?
I'd have to look at the registration and like, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Let's let her get to her next slide.
Okay.
I'd be glad to do any analysis on that for you, but um, or we could, like I said, through taxes, pay for it because that's what people want. Your residents want it.
No, I think they wanted pickleball courts to play on. I don't think they wanted pickle, to, to charge to learn how to play pickleball and.
Could offer them to learn to play because they want to learn.
They could, but they could offer that.
Longer, we, we've gone in her direction.
No, it's true, but just to make a point, they could get that at Pensbury Racquet Club. They could get that somewhere else. I don't think that the taxpayer has to subsidize people learning how to play pickleball.
I think we actually have a resident who owns a private pickleball court in New Jersey. We could send them all there. Moving on. Next slide. Collins, Collins fading.
The user fees. So last year we lost in league users fees. We're spending about a hundred sixty thousand dollars. Um, we will make approximately a hundred fifteen thousand dollars at the end of the year. Um, so I'm proposing this year, and I haven't brought this to the park board, an increase in fees to twenty-five for a resident and fifty for non-resident. It's currently sixteen for a resident and thirty-six for non-resident. Um, DCNR does regulate when it's property that they have funded, that you can only double the cost of your residence. So it, it could really run in violation now with the only one dollar. So that, this is what I'll be proposing this year for user fee.
Monica, did you say we lost a league?
No, we lost um, with league user fees because the expense was one sixty.
Okay.
What percentage of non-resident is our users for all leagues across the board roughly?
This year?
Yeah.
I would say about eighty percent.
So our non-resident is eighty percent of users?
Residents.
Or residents, so twenty percent is non-resident. Can we increase that to two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars? Whatever, because we don't, it's, it's uncapped if they're a non-resident, right? That's what you just said.
It can only be fifty percent more or so.
Double.
Double.
Double. Oh, okay. So we could turn it to a hundred to two hundred would be, if we, if we went up that scale.
Hundred, we'd have to charge the residents fifty.
Where the residents a hundred and the non-residents two hundred.
Yeah, I mean, but that's a very big jump.
Well, we're losing money though.
We're gonna, that's why we're raising it to twenty-five and fifty.
But that's going to break us even. How much did we lose this year?
What's it cost to join a league?
Oh, I don't know.
Because they're, they're then in putting these fees on the resident.
They put it right on there. Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll charge them.
So raising it twenty-five dollars is gonna.
Pay four hundred dollars to sign up for YMS.
So raising it twenty-five dollars is going to recover forty-five thousand.
Five and fifty, yeah.
Will recover the forty-five thousand?
Yes, the additional forty-five thousand.
Okay.
Next slide, quick.
Really fast. I'm going to be crazy fast.
Bye Colin, go ahead.
It, it is important to recognize of some of the leagues, like the smaller leagues like girl softball. Um, we don't have very many residents who play in the offseason league. So we really do need outside township residents participating in that, um, in that fall league. So the girls have someone to play against. So we don't want to blanket discourage um, outside residents from all leagues.
Understood.
Yeah, but do, maybe this is philosophy on youth sports, but do we want kids playing the same sport year round?
Oh man, he's just opening up that can.
That's a loaded question right there. All right. Um, next is summer camp fees. This year we actually made money off of camp and I think a lot of that is with growth. We didn't hire enough staff this year. We really struggled. Um, to really, like if someone went on vacation, it's me or Elizabeth to cover. Um, that's kind of how things were working a little bit this summer. So we really need to hire more this year. Um, and I'm also looking at putting an assistant, um, almost like a director role for a summer camp. Um, this summer so that it could be between two sites, one person in charge that takes the load off the program manager a little bit too. Um, so that's kind of why you'll see a big fee increase or the big expense increase on the um, staffing side of things. So next year we're, we'll increase the fees by twelve percent. That will cover a little bit of our, um, our full-time staff. It will also cover all the additional staff that we need and we will, should break even um, next year.
So this year, recapping, this year we made a profit, but we made a profit because we had you running camp some days. So not really a profit, but.
Yeah.
Um, so with the increase that you're proposing, the camp will break even.
So what's the typical margin on, on, on a, on a camp like, like that? I mean, is that the aspiration to break even or should there be some?
Well, this will also cover ten thousand dollars for pool too, but generally speaking, when you're offering municipal type park and rec program, you're looking to break even. If there's a reason why, I mean, our camp rate as far as compared to municipalities is high. It's very low compared to private camps. So you're looking at private camp, six thousand dollars for eight weeks. We're at like fourteen thousand dollars for eight weeks.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred.
Municipalities are about twelve hundred.
Okay, fourteen hundred. All right, I'm going to ask you the same question I've been asking you. What percentage of, of Lower Makefield Township residents? Oh, there it is.
I should have put it for leagues. I'm sorry, but I added that slide later.
Thank you.
That took me a lot of math.
Ninety percent. And it's the same rate for resident versus non-resident?
No, it's varied. I have actually the rates on the next slide.
Okay.
So resident, non-resident is um, right here. Oh, we're fifteen hundred. So this would be with the twelve percent increase and then the teen camp would be this with a twelve percent increase.
Dave, to your point, would you like to see the um, fees from this camp be able to cover any capital expenditures? It may happen at the, at the community center as a, as part of.
You're saying, and I, and I apologize, so you added ten thousand for essentially offset the cost associated with the pool because there's access to the pool during camp. I just was curious what the typical.
What the margin is.
Typical margin is on a, on a comparative, like is it, is it? Because in theory you had a, you had a, you had a profit margin this year, right? I mean, again, in theory, I mean, but so that went to offset some other costs that you, you incurred. So if we eliminate margins and then we just cover costs, as long as we're eliminating, as long as we're covering everything, I guess, then it.
Right. I mean, it's soup to nuts. It's covering even equipment and things that we replace every year, all the arts and crafts.
So there is some capital contribution that's going back into the actual materials or, you know, uh, some kind of capital fund for the community center or, or.
More supplies, I think.
Supplies, that sort of thing.
Also do, or this year we use Pensbury, so we did have to pay a rental fee to Pensbury, so that caused, covers that as well.
Okay.
Monica, I just want to say, well, sorry Colin, I don't think we should be competing with private camps. I don't think the goal should be to break even either. Like I'm not looking for giant profits, but I think we should have more of a margin to make sure that, you know, um, not just breaking even.
And getting back to my comment earlier, yeah.
Colin was next.
I'm sorry.
I interrupted Colin, so go ahead Colin.
No, that's okay. That, and, and my comment was going to be exactly along your lines, Madam Chair, was I think there are some costs that aren't being complimented, sorry, contemplated in this idea of break even, such as additional wear and tear on township roads, on parking facilities, you know, just use of the buildings and spaces, et cetera. So if we look at this from a perspective of earning a quote unquote profit, it's not a profit. It's really like James has been saying, a contribution back to the capital fund for the facilities that we're making use of. I think that would be very important.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, and I, I would echo that without saying, without repeating it, I, I would say that's important to understand and contemplate. Um, I'd also, the uh, in terms of uh, staffing um, for the, for, for this particular program, maybe some other programs. I think with some of the, you know, we're looking at trying not to increase taxes and right now we're, I think the overall mill, what is it? What's he at now?
Thirteen point eight eight, that one?
Yeah, it's point five. So I would want to look at, I would want to look at ways to uh, try and make it, get it back to zero without, which is probably staffing, I guess. Get that frog out of my throat, sorry. Um, and, and see what we can do there because, you know, the, the staffing increases are concerning to me um, in terms of just excess expenditures, but obviously look, everything we just said about revenue and making sure we reconsider everything. And then it might, he's not here, but they're perfect timing. It might be of interest to look, um, you haven't talked about the pool yet, but I, I thought about, I thought about this with the pool. Maybe camps? I don't know. If there's a, to reduce park, park and uh, burden on, on the department, burden on the township, to see if there's outs, outside groups that could run the camps, outside groups that could manage the pool so that we don't have to subsidize so much of it through taxes and other things. And, and that, that may not work here. But it's because these are, these are operations that are kind of like running a business, right? Generally, right? That have revenues and cost sharing and all that stuff. Uh, I think it would be, and we kind of do that with some of the offerings that we have with classes where we, we're basically working with small business owners effectively to do that. But it would be interesting, I don't know if it works with the camp per se. No, I, I know, I'm thinking out loud. It, it might, there may be more opportunities with the pool, which is a different discussion. But I think it would be worth considering or at least investigating to see where we might be able to.
And, and to your point earlier, some margin could equate to capital contribution that now could be the parking lot that you were speaking of earlier, right? So, and that's the kind of cap, you know, the capital fund that I was trying, I was thinking when I was thinking that was the, the parking lot. Or something along those terms, long-term, because the facility is going to need constant maintenance, the operating expense of it.
Monica, is your next slide pool? Because I, I want to talk about pool, but I don't want to.
Pool's coming soon.
Okay. Okay.
So pickleball, um, next year with the fee increase that we're proposing on the next slide. Um, we anticipate to at minimum break even um, for that as well. We, right now, we.
When you say break even, does that include the fifty thousand dollars?
No.
Drainage?
It does not include the, the capital.
We're not paying that, right?
That's actually not on the court. So right now, what we charge is almost, it's like twenty-seven fifty a year for people to participate in our pickleball meetup. We're looking at going at a, to a model that's more of like a membership. Um, and the reason we're looking to do this is because there was so much demand. I would say with the pool being seven thousand five hundred members and pickleball being four hundred and fifty members, I get more calls about pickleball than I do of the pool on a very regular basis during the summer. So last summer, rather than one of our maintenance staff, we brought on someone for the summer to help manage, just answer pickleball questions, help with the app, all kinds of things. Um, and she worked very minimal hours, but it was such a great relief. So we're looking to recoup her entire, I want to bring her on year round because pickleball doesn't stop, but have her hours vary based on the time of the year. So she'll work more during the summer and maybe very few hours during the winter months. That her, her whole entire salary, including like FICA, everything would be wrapped up into this thirty-five thousand um, dollars. Plus we're getting a new app that we can, like the app we use now, we can't help people if they have a problem because we have no backend use to help them. So the new app that we'll have, they'll register on that app and then we can help them on the backend with their programming. Um, we're also going to offer leveling to them because one of the biggest arguments on the pickleball court is what level of play they are. They all argue over these things. So we're going to have our pickleball pro come and level them as part of the membership.
I have a question before we go any further. Can, can you talk this thirty-five thousand dollar salary into getting her certification and then she can do all the stuff that the pro?
Well, she's not getting a thirty-five thousand dollar salary. She's, what was it like? Yeah.
Pay her twenty if she teaches the class.
So part of this too covers things that you've been talking about, replacement nets, replacement poles, replacement balls. That's all incorporated into this thing. Um, so.
Guess my point was if she can take the place of the pickleball pro.
That'd be great. She just is not at this time qualified to do that. I don't even know that she feels comfortable doing that.
Really?
Yeah.
You're in the kitchen.
You play.
Maybe. No, I've heard. I mean, I, I have to be of a certain age, I think, to play. There's an age qualifier.
It's not true. My kids play.
On ESPN now.
It's on ESPN.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, well, seriously, obviously, it's very popular.
Yes.
It's getting, I won't say it's getting, it probably is very organized from a league perspective and and you have an app for that, right? We we only, we have new courts, we don't, we don't have a plethora of of courts, but we we have, we do have several.
Right.
How easy or difficult is it for, like, I don't play, but if I wanted to show up and give it a shot with, you know, James could coach me?
We we have lessons. We have lessons for that.
How how easy or difficult, how challenging is it for someone to just show up and play on a
I I don't know that you would know the rules if you just showed up. We do have a group called Not Ready for Primetime, and that's kind of the group that you join.
Well, if I just wanna go and like play, like, like if I'm going to a basketball court and I just wanna shoot around, I don't
You can do that. I mean, there's always open courts. So the way we do court reserve now is that there's always one court that is like something is available in the township, yeah. Um, but the one thing that we're finding with pickleball, which is this weird anomaly, is they like meetup groups, so they create their own. So like, if we're not offering meetup groups every spare hour, there are even starting at six AM, there are like rogue groups. So the more organized we can be, the the better. There's also like rogue coaches out there, just like, it's a very interesting thing.
If it's such a, like a self-organizing community,
Yeah.
I mean, why is it appropriate for the township to administer a pickleball league when we don't administer the baseball league or the field hockey league or the flag football league?
We don't have someone who wants to operate a pickleball league. If that happens, then then we can have, we can have that discussion.
If PAA came to us tomorrow and said, we wanna become a township entity, we don't wanna remain an independent organization, is that appropriate for the township for its use of time and resources?
I mean, many townships run all of the leagues. It it just depends on how your township operates.
Townships I've been in.
Yeah.
There's there's rec leagues and then they have a AAU or whatever they made it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it'd be perfectly appropriate for the township to run a league. You you bring someone on who is, you know, more equipped for baseball or basketball. It's not me. I I mean, I'm not a basketball pro, but you would need help. Um, and you anticipate that the league fees cover the cost of that employee.
And you get a lot, and generally in those leagues, I I used to coach these a lot. You get, you get a lot of volunteer coaches and move on, but that's a whole other conversation.
I think
We just confirm that the, I'm sorry, sorry, just one sec. Can we confirm that the pickleball coordinator person, if that happens? Uh, I heard you say uh W two and FICA, but no benefits, right? And that's because part-time?
Yep, part-time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Dave, sorry.
I was just, just as a follow-up to Colin, so that, just to make sure we're answering his question. I I think, Colin, what I understood you saying is what, why did we make a decision to organize a league for this specific sport? When that similar decision wasn't made for any other sport? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's, it's, it's largely it. I mean, it's, listen, if it covers its own costs, that that's great. It's not adding to the cost problems we have, but let's not do that today. Just wanna make sure.
I can quickly answer that, Colin. Pickleball came on way after, I mean, bas- baseball, softball was organized well before I started. Pickleball was kind of run in a volunteer way, but they were struggling. And they asked us if we would kinda take it over. So it's kind of like a partnership thing where they asked if it was a bunch of volunteers um, and they needed assistance in order to move forward. So the township helped. I mean, that's kinda how it transitioned.
I just have a quick question. Um, you said there's four hundred members of the pickleball?
Four hundred.
About, how many members of the dog park?
Offhand, I have the, I think I have those numbers in the slides.
About the same, you think?
Close.
Can we just gate keyfob all these pickleball courts and organize pickleball that way? So there's time slotted and you can only go in a certain time per week?
We could do that and we could have it u- using the same app to organize your time. Yeah. Especially the new ones, not the, not the older courts. The middle park, we could.
That way, you know, you have, I guess, one hour. I think that's like the the rules, like the, is it two hour rule? Just trying to think outside the box on how you regulate it without really having to be there as much or dedicating a thirty five thousand or seventeen thousand dollar, you know, full-time employer, part-time employee.
Still need a part-time employee. The pickleball questions and the pickleball demand and need is so great. I would still need someone to allocate to that, just that.
I get, I guess it's the question, and again, I'm not advocating for not or not, but like, so if somebody calls you up and says, I have a question about basketball, we don't say, alright, well, we're gonna we're gonna put together a basketball league in order to answer your question. You're providing a facility, we're providing a facility, right? We provided a public facility. Right, so okay, so that that might be the answer. We're providing, we're providing a service.
We're providing a service and and the questions aren't just, I wanna get on the basketball court. It's I wanna sign up for the ten o'clock slot and I can't get in, or I wanna, you know, I wanna meet up with people of this level and I don't
Right, but I guess the question is, we we, do you even have to engage in that? Like, we don't have, it's, it's a public court. You have the ability to go and play on the court. We we don't, we don't organize when you can play on the court.
For basketball, no.
I'm, so the question is why is pickleball treated differently than those other circumstances?
I would say that different sports have different demands, just like softball. Colin could tell you softball is very different than baseball. Softball has low registration. They need more non-residents to come in and help. Baseball runs very differently and soccer runs very differently. Every sport is different, has different demands. Pickleball is a high-demand sport, and it needs support from the township in this way, because people want it. People are asking for it.
And and I understand the newness of the sport. There's a lot of questions. There's a lot of people trying to, so like, I'm I'm generally supportive of the concept, right? It 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 seems well thought out. You know, the the staffing, I understand, is necessary to provide this. When when friends and family learned that I was on the planning commission, I got phone calls about pickleball. Not even kidding, like asking me, are the courts done? When do they open? All this stuff. So I get the community interest. My concern is really a longer-term one. It's just to make sure that six, seven years from now, you know, if PAA isn't making enough money to cover the cost of operating Little League baseball, they raise their fees an appropriate amount so that they can cover the costs. I don't want to see a board five years from now sitting here saying, we're transferring from the general fund to cover pickleball, right? And that's where my real concern comes from. It's not this thirty-five, it's what this grows into over four or five years.
Well, the truth is, we can start from scratch here and we can increase them every year in order to capture our cost as as pickleball grows.
Including the fifty thousand dollars for the court repair?
We're not paying that, right? We're not paying that.
Excellent.
Is there drainage? This is drainage.
Yeah, but that's, that
Not part of the project.
Oh, is a separate drainage issue?
Well.
Well, drainage was never included as part, as part of the project. It's like a scope addition.
Was that important? Derek?
Water runs off.
Okay, uh, next slide.
Thank you.
This is also pickleball, it just goes over the fees. Now, this would move into a one hundred and twenty dollar annual fee for residents, non-residents a hundred and fifty. And then we do a snow bar, bird rate for those who go away um in the winter.
Are these DCNR-funded courts too?
Yes.
Can we double that? Can we go from one twenty to two forty?
I mean, we can. We don't have many non-residents. So, I don't know how much.
Any little bit helps.
I mean, we, it's what's happening.
You you're going, you're going way through many slides.
I must have kept my finger on it, I'm sorry. Oh, boy.
The pool, finally Suzanne, it's eleven oh eight.
Dog park, I'm I'm proposing an increase of fees. It's a teaser, right? Um, we did lose a little bit in Dog Park last year, so I am in um suggesting an increase of fees to be able to capture our costs. It was thirteen thousand five hundred to run the park last year. Um, our estimated projection for this year is eleven thousand. A fee increase will cover the cost, if not garner a little bit extra.
I I think that that's much cheaper than the um park at Core Creek, the county park.
It's the same. I I looked up their rates too.
I was looking them up the other day. I would have sworn ninety came to mind, but anyway, um I think the board is saying that um in this difficult fiscal climate, where there's an opportunity to do more than break even, you should take it. So if it's five dollars or ten dollars, what?
I'll come back with higher fees.
Especially, you know, to the non-residents who haven't had to pay the burden for building it.
Is the dog park uh DCNR now?
Yes.
Okay. Ninety-one eighty.
Um, so the pool, I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about some of the intangible benefits of having the pool. So the pool itself has provided jobs for thousands of our residents, very first jobs. They've had great touches and got to meet new people and learn new things. They've had introduction to teamwork. It's been a summer savior for parents. It provides a source of water safety education. People have made new friends and old. It's a place for wellness for all demographics and a reason to stay in Lower Makefield Township or live in Lower Makefield Township. So, I mean, the pool has a great value well beyond just what we make in sales. I just wanna make sure to point out the importance of having a community pool. Um, so I propose, because we are have struggling financially with the pool, that we continue the study that we started in twenty nineteen, but it spanned its scope. I got a quote to include the outstructures, but I'd like to consider getting a quote to even expand it further to cover programming and finances. They will do that. Um, so it's just something I'm gonna bring up to you um to continue to do, to create it as more of a master plan versus a feasibility study to bring the pool into the future. This is someone other than me coming in to do. Um, so we did have a contract with aquatic facility design that we never finished. They're willing to honor our old fee to do what they had already promised us, plus they added a little to add the outbuildings. Um, so the complete plan was just the outbuildings and the pool is seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty. I'm not sure how much more it would be to include. Um, I I can reach out the um, the full financial and programming and everything else. They would do a full analysis of how we do, like, to your point, Dan, earlier, they could look at everything, you know, soup to nuts.
Yeah. I I, excuse me. I think spending money on something like this right now, with our chair just said about that our current financial situation, maybe, maybe not this year. I do think um I'd be interested in looking to see, I'm not a member of the pool. We were a few years ago, pre-COVID, and then it just got, we just stopped. We weren't using, I'll be honest, we weren't using it and the fee got too high. So we and honestly, we're not using, we wouldn't use the slide, we wouldn't use most of the stuff there. So we just, we go to the YMCA. That's, or we'll go to the beach, cause that's the level of, and I used to be a lifeguard when I was in high school, but our, my community pool, and it was a community pool that got a lot of use, but it didn't, it was, I I I consider our pool almost like a, like a water park. You know, it, which is, we didn't start that, you didn't start that, but that's what we have, right? So we're trying to manage it. So I would, I would actually like to see us consider, and I don't know if it'll work, I kind of like what I was saying with the the uh programming stuff at the community center. I would like this, to look to see if there's an outside group that could manage it, maybe take on some of the risk of managing it in terms of, kinda like we do with the golf court. See if there's an opportunity, something like that. That way, we're not funding through taxpayer dollars. Cause we we are definitely having to subsidize the pool because of equipment stuff to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. Um, which is not something we wanna be doing, right? Fees should be covering it, should be self-supporting, self- but I would, I would be open to looking at out, ways to address that so that taxpayers aren't stuck with the bill. Now, pool, pool, cause pools do provide a benefit. It's not gonna keep me in LMT or make me leave.
Well, a- and it might not, they might not hire our residents. They might not, you know, they wouldn't be providing the same level of training.
A point, point, counterpoint, right, Rosanna and Dana? I I totally disagree with everything you said.
Well, I've worked pools. Um, I personally, I would get rid, I would get rid of the slides. I'd get rid of the high dive. I think they're just really high cost of ownership and they don't provide a a ton of benefit. So I think the pool is a massive yoke on on taxpayers without, there's, there's definitely a benefit to a pool, don't get me wrong. Um, but I think there's levels of benefit that I think we can look to address to reduce costs, but still provide a very positive positive uh access to to aquatic.
So, without going into detail, I, as I said, I disagree. I love the pool. I love the pool, but I I do think that we have to revisit the pricing structure, because I'm not sure that it worked as intended, and I know you're, you're looking at that. We don't have to have a policy debate. I don't know that it has to be self-sufficient, and I I think it's almost an extraordinary ask, especially given the lack of maintenance that was done for so many years to now say, anybody who wants to use the pool, you're gonna take on this burden that was built up over time. You're gonna be the one to have to right that ship. But that's my opinion. I don't know that we have to wrestle that one to the ground right now. So anybody else have pool questions? Or does Monica have more pool slides?
In the interest of time, I'll withhold my comment.
I I just, I real quickly wanna mention, the pool does still, regardless of a management company did manage the day-to-day, have a lot of infrastructure needs. It's old. So regardless of if you have, that's why it's great to do a study, because they'd be able to give you where we should be leaning with regard to those infrastructure changes, rather than us piecemealing things and band-aiding along the way without a goal. Um, so, you know, it's a smarter spend of money. Um, and they'd be able to evaluate that whole si- situation and be able to give you a package of which is, what might be best for the township for you to rather than us.
Well, counterpoint, any private company or private group that came in to manage it would do that as part of their, their bid package review. That would be built into their their assessment as going into, so we wouldn't pay anyone to do it. That would be part of their proposal.
I said I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, real quick.
We're already here.
Any capital. We're here. Any counterpoint, any capital improvements would still fall on us regardless. It's like the the golf course, right? So all those capital improvements fall on us. Unless the pool is at least self-sufficient and or profitable at some point, capital improvements, any rent of any shortfalls in in memberships is always gonna fall back on the township. Regardless if you're having a management company or not. It's just
How you structured the deal. But you're not wrong. I just think there's things, the pool is super expensive. It's like, right? It's like, any, any, anyone that's ever owned a pool or about the old saying, favorite, favorite two days.
Yeah.
Day you buy and day you're rid of it. But you know, I'm joking a little bit here, but they they are, they do
Super expensive.
And when we're talking about mileage increases and and where to deal with things, whenever you have a couple hundred thousand plus dollars to replace filters, to replace other things that are the, the pool is a very, a very nice thing, and I'll say that. It's not just a nice thing, it's a very nice thing. But it's when it's, when, when it may, depending on what other issues we're dealing with, event has been doing things that we need to have uh or substantial
I agree.
Cover. That's, that's the tough part. I don't like having this.
Who will pay for it if the management coming, comes up?
What I'm saying is, we we may not have to, there's certain aspects of the pool that I think are a little superfluous, that we don't, I don't know that we need to keep. Now, there's probably disagreements on that, but
Absolutely.
Yeah, but I I
Cannonball champ.
Yeah, I I
But you 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 cannot ignore the confidence building, the backflipping off that high dive as a young man does.
It's true.
I I'm not even gonna joke. It's what I used to do in my summers. So I don't think the, that there's, there's a net zero on the high dive. I I think I'd just like to refocus, Dan, on your earlier statement of I don't think we have the money to execute on a master plan right now anyways, so it's not all that valuable to spend eighteen thousand dollars to learn how much money we don't have to spend on projects next year, the year after, the year after that. I just think it's, we have to cut something somewhere. We can't say yes to everything. And this seems like eighteen thousand dollars. It's just not vital for fiscal twenty-four.
You know how much I love an income-producing asset, right? It's like my favorite thing. I get it. There's an intangible there with the pool, the community, that part of it. Break even, yeah.
There's a clear benefit to the commu- oh, there's the other side of my mouth. There's a clear benefit to the community with any parking wreck.
Sure.
Right? It's a quality of life issue. It's just
At what cost?
What's the line? What's, i- i- with anything? So where where does it become more of a burden? About lots of stuff, but parking wreck is I love parking wrecks though, you know what I mean? So just how far do we need to go?
That's all. Agree.
We move on.
Yep, yes.
So based on feedback from the community, we had done some restructuring of some ideas, so I just wanted to review them with you. Um, one of the big problems was, you know, part of our fee structure included a parent associated with a kid of, in their household. So if a kid under the age of fourteen, they'd have to sign up with a parent. Um, so in order to kind of get around that, so say a parent wanted to babysit a kid for the entire summer and their other parent is not we created this gold or premier membership where they can bring two guests a day. It costs five hundred for resident, nine, five fifty for non-resident. And the perk is you can bring guests all summer long, you know, with you, and it doesn't have to be, you know, non-resident, you don't have to pay the guest fee. It's kind of like a, kind of a win-win for them.
For them or for us?
Rates some extra, well, yeah, and it might generate some extra revenue for us in the fact that the people who didn't want to have a parent on the account with their kid now will register, you know what I'm saying? So it brings that extra, extra person in.
I'll try to do my best James impression. So, have you seen it? What if we did a platinum membership?
I think that's new.
That's John. Yeah, how do I get you into the platinum today?
How do I get you in the platinum?
I mean.
That'd be bottle service. Bottle service.
Oh, boy.
For platinum.
Um, so that's an idea, concept. We could change the rate, we could play with it. Um, but it does resolve a few issues that we were having last year. Um, we also, in discounts, we provided ninety-one thousand nine hundred dollars in discounts. That's a loss to the township in registration. I do think the discount period is important, because it does encourage people to like hurry up, that hurry up to come to the pool. But I also think we can reduce the amount of discount that we offer, so we can have some cost savings there um, in the backend. So rather than do it the way we are, fifteen dollars across the board, change it to ten percent um, instead. So that way, it's less of a discount overall. And then one thing we don't do is offer military discounts, but we get asked all the time for the pool. So I just thought it'd be a good thing to offer a military discount. So, um, that's not necessarily making us money, but it is honoring those who served us. So I just think that is a good thing. Um, also, another thing was people were complaining about the guest pass. We want to offer a non-refundable, one-time offer to get ten guest passes for a hundred dollars during discount period, and that's it. Um, so that's just something that we're going to do. It may generate us some more revenue in the fact that people will purchase, pre-purchase their guest passes. Um, we're looking at removing the caregiver pass because the flexibility of our new system um, allows for a caregiver to just get a season pass, so it doesn't make that much of a difference. Um, and increase all swim lessons fees across the board by ten percent. Our, our swim lessons are very low in comparisons everywhere else, so it's a good increase.
Two quick questions, sorry, but.
Sure.
The military discount, is that only on the military, uh, active duty member or reservist or guard member themselves or the veteran? Or is that for all members of their household?
Uh, no, just the, just the individuals, uh, DD two, with a T, DD two fourteen or a military ID.
Um, and that military ID, would you accept spousal and family military IDs or only the service member's ID?
These are logistics that I had not gotten into, but I guess we'd have to, we'd have to honor all of them, because that's how it is.
So spouses of, of, of military members and their children are eligible for um, identification cards that allow them onto the bases to make use of base services, et cetera. Um, I, I really, I do a lot of work with the military and I hate it when I see military discounts that don't apply to their spouses and their children. Because the spouses and children serve just as much as that service member does when they're away, when they're taking the risks that they do. So if we're going to offer a military discount, eh, you know, it, it, in my. Yeah, it, it should apply to everyone in the household. Um, and then on, on the swim fees, just real quick, and, and I hate disparaging, you know, anyone or anyone's work publicly. I will say that we have been pool members. Um, we, we chose not to do the swim lessons after having invested in them. Um, you know, the quality of the swim lesson, the, the program that I think we offer at the township pool is not up to par with other private offerings in the area. And, and not just from the perspective of, hey, it's private, so it costs more, so it should be a whole lot better. But, you know, for my littlest kids, frankly, it was just get in the water with your kid for half an hour and splash. There wasn't any real instruction going on. So I'd be concerned about a ti- ten percent increase in costs without a commensurate increase in quality.
Colin, that's a good point. We did have some complaints and we did discuss how we would better train our instructors for next year. We have a whole new system plan for next year.
Okay, yeah, the, the NAC a couple of years ago adopted some certification or program, uh, through, I'm not sure if it was the Red Cross or someone else, but um, when they made that adjustment a couple of years back, their program improved significantly. Uh, so it might be worth a call to just, you know, call them and see, and see which, which program they use.
Yep, you got it. No problem.
Thank you.
Standard question, how many non-residents do we have at the pool? Roughly?
No, for this last year, I'll have to look.
Roughly, percentage-wise, if you had to average it.
It's primarily residents.
Okay.
Um, I would say probably eighty percent residents, seventy-five percent residents.
We look at increasing that non-resident fee, fifty dollars from resident to non-resident seems low.
Yeah, I think there's more non-residents than we realize. Um, Monica, are you going to get to the, um, food vendor? Is this, is that coming?
I, no, I don't have it in the, in the presentation today.
But we are doing a new RFP this year.
Have to do a new RFP.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, there are fees I didn't even cover today, because.
Yep, I thi- I think he's done a great job and likely he's a successful bidder, but maybe we're looking at that structure makes sense.
I definitely think re-looking at the structure does make sense, I agree.
Next.
So I just did a comparison for the pool, uh, it's pre-COVID, post-COVID, um, just as I did for the, you know, parking wreck budget. Um, just for a little glimpse, I don't know if anybody's going to have any questions about this, it is what it is, pretty standard, what it is.
And there won't be any more trees, it'll be a savings.
I, I, I really feel like that someday. Um, so if we do the twelve percent increases, what we proposed in the budget in front of you today, this is kind of what those prices will look like. So just wanted to put that in front of you, so you could see. So you can see I was playing with the gold membership, this one says five fifty, six hundred. Um, so I have been playing with those.
We had talked in some conversations about a household fee um, to maybe contribute towards some of the capital projects, some of the other things. Um, you know, have we looked at even a small capital fee, uh, for, for a household to see if that would you know, even a ten dollar contribution perhaps?
I mean, we, we played with it in many different ways, to be honest. Um, so, I mean, we, we could certainly still consider that like a ten dollar for a family capital improvement fee or something like that. Or, we looked at fifty dollar per household, but household gets tricky. So.
So Monica, I, I do, I know we tried this and, you know, if you say that the number is working out. I do think there comes a point for, and I don't know how many large families there are, but where it just gets cost prohibitive. Um, and I'm wondering if we, you know, and I know you were trying to find a way for, to make it simple, the single family um, single-parent family to be able to afford, right? To, to not burden one side or not, not, you know, benefit the other. But maybe we have to add in another thing, like it's individual up until six, you know, or something like that, because I I think part of the reason we've seen some changes in who's coming is because of the structure.
Yeah, I, I'll say in generally, generally, people are complimentary unless they have a large family. I mean, maybe we could cap it, um, you know, after so many, it's a reduced rate or something like that. Um, for the most part, people are liking not putting people on who aren't coming, you know, they feel the value in that. Um, that's been, been feedback. We have gotten some negative feedback, I'm not going to say we haven't, but surprisingly, it's been very smooth this second year. We hardly, we didn't even have any, any negative feedback. So. Um, but I, the only thing is, is the larger family. I, I do think that there could be some kind of cap. Or some way to benefit the larger family.
Thank you. So, will we be here till midnight?
No. No. Mm-hmm. Um, and then I just went over some of the capital projects that David I know sent you. Um, we did filter out, we kind of pushed off veterans square projects. Um, we try to really focus on more infrastructure-related projects or projects that we have massive grants for. Um, so that's kind of how this looks right now. You've, you've seen this. So you guys, does anybody have any questions on this? Or any guidance?
Or any, any, any additional thoughts in terms of, you know, or you know, striking projects, additions, whatever it may be?
This is the blunt instrument, unfortunately, given where we're up against. Um, a lot of these are and we, we have to look at one, which ones we have grants that actually, these aren't actual taxpayer dollars, which ones are grants versus taxpayer dollars. So that's clear, that would helpful, maybe. But I don't know.
So the only, the only project that, as I understand it, that I guess is grant-funded right now is Memorial Park East expansion, in which there's a three hundred thousand.
Including engineering, that's three hundred and thirty thousand.
Is that?
Yeah, I thought it was three.
Is that on top of grant or inclusive of the grant?
That's.
No, the grant is nine hundred thousand. It's a, it's a one point two million dollar expansion to Memorial Park East. But again, nine hundred thousand of that one point two million roughly is being funded through, through receipt of a grant.
Needs to be exercised by what, twenty twenty-six, is that what we?
Was the, do you remember the? I think, I believe so.
I believe it was twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. Uh, for, for me personally, um, I, there's some big numbers up here that are, again, nice, nice to haves. Um, I th- I think, uh, the, let's see, I think the MTF bike path match.
Yeah, so that, that, that's grant-dependent, so that's, that, that would be our match. So eh, we didn't, we wouldn't that project would not advance at all unless we received funding, and unless we actually received funding for that.
Right.
Um, Heacock Pocket Park, um, has already sort of been started, right? Because the board had authorized, um, uh, purchase of the equipment, right, Mon- Monica?
Yes, that, that's already submitted to, for completion in the spring. Yeah, I mean, the only one that I think, without giving up this huge amount of grant money, whether we spend it next year or not, you know, you kind of have to plan for it, would probably be the Memorial Park shade structure and rubberized surface. That could probably be pushed off a year.
Is that grant-funded or is that?
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Me, that's just a nice to have and we, we push it off until we, we.
Well, we have to have the rubber, the rubberized surface is going to have to be replaced. I just don't know that it's urgent next year. Maybe we will wait another year, just.
It's just a three hundred thirty thousand dollar project that.
On that, the one thing I would say is, um, and it's coming from bond proceeds as opposed to a recurring fund. If, the challenge we have is could we even do all of these projects in, in the year? But if we wait a year, it costs more. Um, but the, the question, along those lines, I was like, and I use the Memorial Park basketball court, I do know how uh, in bad shape it is. Um, that's coming from Fee and Lou, right? And that's just the resurfacing.
Yeah, there's probably, there's a little bit of work.
Oh, there's some cracked ceiling and there's some restoration. I, I, there's a lot of that. Is, if I were going to pick one that I could delay easily and have the best impact, that might be it. Um, because the other ones have, are grant-related and they're kind of, we're in track with those.
What, what's the life of the pool filter at this point?
Just, um.
Filter absolutely needs to be replaced next year. There's another filter that would have to be replaced the following year. I deferred that one, that, so there's another filter the following year, that I did not put in this budget.
It keeps on giving here.
I, I, I know, there's just.
The Memorial, Memorial Park East is, is twenty twenty-six, it's, but it's June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, so it's a, the term ends mid, mid-year. The end of the Commonwealth fiscal year.
So I, I'm, I'm going to, you know, I don't know that we do the Memorial Park East. And I appreciate that it's giving up a big grant. But one thing that we've not been good at, so I'm going to circle for a second. I think we do need to do the Memorial Park work, if not this year, then soon, and the shade structure area. Um, you know, it is the only accessible park that we have, and to make sure that people with special needs can really access it is important. That being said, we, we build things and we don't really think about what does maintenance look like on them. Um, and it's something we've been trying to get better at, we are getting better at, but we need to accelerate that growth. So when I think about the one point two million dollar Memorial Park East expansion, I wonder what I'm doing to the township or the board seven years, eight years down the line. So.
I came off mute to ask that exact question, right? What is one point two million dollars worth of Memorial Park cost us to operate? Is it two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars after every six or seven years? So I agree with the chair.
Just for the people at home, for whatever reason, you can get a grant to build new things, but you can't get a grant to repair things or maintain things. So it's a conundrum.
There may be a growth in botchedy that requires a league and new staff to run it too, so you gotta be careful.
Is there a reason why we have to use Fee and Lou for the match? Could those be bond proceeds as well?
For the match for the East expand?
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm sure that we could do either.
Oh, I guess, what, what are we out of twenty sixteen bond proceeds?
Yeah, so I think it's spent down to, um, it's less, I think it's less than that.
Okay, so then we're almost out of those.
Four hundred and eighty-eight thousand is what I'm.
Yeah, four eighty-eight, uh, four fifty-six is what, what would remain there.
Is that, that would allow us, if, if we were to use those bond proceeds, those wouldn't be coming from the Fee and Lou section. But again, it's still, it's dollars either way, long run. Um, so we gotta think about that a little bit.
John, you're the, you're the finance guy. I mean, does it make more sense to use those bond revenues or the bond proceeds that are remaining for something like accelerating the other pool filter that we're putting off a year, right? So that, that's not further deteriorating. And we're not continuing to pay debt service on that, on that money that's just sitting there, or no?
I mean, the debt service is a debt service. Um, so there's, it's, it's not like a, um, but it, that being said, that the sixteen proceeds should be spent as down in their entirety as soon as possible. Um, eh, again, when you issue tax-exempt debt, there's a requirement to spend tax-exempt debt down within a certain period of time. We've exceeded that time. Now, again, there's been, you know, COVID, there's been a host of other things. And, and, but th- those sixteen proceeds should be spent down as, as soon as possible. So that, that would be an option if there is, if that's the, what the board wants to do. Some of the thought, though, on the sort of residual sixteen, and again, some of these sixteen proceeds, I mean, just eh, not necessarily on Monica's list, but on the email, you know, Hidden Oaks Basin retrofit project, the Charles Bane Stream Bank restoration, Five Mile Woods Porous Pavement, um, there's, um, uh, a significant sum of, of grant funds that have been applied for, for those. Now, again, not that you can you know, necessarily count on those, but, you know, the, the Hidden Oaks, for example, there was a grant application for five hundred thousand, so our net cost would be ninety-five thousand. Um, Charles Bane, three hundred thousand, that costs two thirteen. So there, there are submitted applications for, um, for these. So there, there are submitted applications for, um, for these, for, you know, for these projects. But what I was gonna say is the residual could be used for, you know, obviously we're doing an evaluation with land studies. There's probably gonna be some additional work there and so, um, you know, there was some discussion of this evening about, you know, Taylorsville Road. You know, looking at, you know, whether it's a sidewalk prod- sidewalk slash combination drainage project on Taylorsville Road. There's, there's, you know, that, those monies could be used for those things as well, so.
There's a couple, there's a couple that are almost placeholders in here, from my view, that are, because we haven't been, for example, the Clyzone one.
Yeah.
We haven't been told we have to do it. We've been anticipating it for a couple of years.
Correct, it's just a project allowance set aside, so, um.
The, the Port, Five Mile Woods Porous Pavement.
It's a PRP project.
That's a P, okay, that's what I.
So top, top three are PRP projects, Hidden Oaks, Charles Bane, Five Mile Woods. So those are projects identified in your PRP that you've, you've essentially committed to doing, um.
Here's a question for, for John's sales job earlier. Is that, since that's, that's a parking lot, effectively, is that something that could be covered under that or that we would even consider? Being covered under that?
It's pervious, so it could be considered stormwater management as well.
There's gonna be a new fee for roads that should be for roads. At, at some point, maybe we make it parking lots too, but if the impetus is roads, then let's stick to roads.
Yeah, the point, I mean, those top three, again, not, I'm not, I don't know that I would be optimistic in thinking that you're gonna get 996,000 dollars of external funding to support those three projects, but that's what you have pending from an application standpoint. Um, chances of you getting something, I, I think, you know, it should be relatively good. Um, and so there should be some additional residual 2016 bond proceeds as a result of an award that would, that would happen. Um, Highland Drive Drainage Improvement Project. Again, we have that PA, um, Small Water and Sewer Grants, that was 147, 537. Again, the scope of that project has expanded greatly, but if we're awarded through Commonwealth financing, I would try to, try to amend the scope to see if that can be partially funded through, through that.
That one, that one, from what we've, and, and you're having the meet, the meeting. What we've seen preliminarily in our emails, that one, that one's interesting. One, I'm curious about the overall cost, it's like a high cost, but they'll present what that includes tomorrow. Two, uh, I'm wondering if we've, any, uh, agent, agencies have built for some of the work we've done for them, uh, as part, as part of all of our work along that with. Um, that may help with that. And three, this, this is a road, this is an infrastructure project, road. Maybe a clever search, so we may have a couple of choices that can come to that, or, or. But anyway, I don't know that that gets us down overall in our costs, because we're still gonna do it. But just looking at this list to see if there's anything else we, we could remove or push off for a year or two.
I, I mean, again, the funding sources are res- somewhat restricted funding sources. I mean, the bond proceeds are a little bit more flexible than the park, parking wreck fee and lieu of, um. So I, I, just in the interest of, was there consensus in terms of at least, you know, I, I, I don't know whether it's not proceeding with Memorial Park East, but at least deferring that at, in 2024, is that?
That, that's, and we, wh- when that, when, when we announced the funding and that's kind of what we were talking about back then was how much to defer, because I think the motion back then was to defer the RFP till January or whatever. I think deferring, to me, I was arguing deferring a little bit longer. Um, but I also think if we're, if we end up doing it, we also have to look at what a reason, or a schedule looks like so that we don't defer too long if we're gonna actually do it and get a back, you know, backtrack a little, you know, not backtrack, but we have to back. Look at, go, go backwards, yeah, so we can still use the grant, otherwise we're gonna be putting the bill much more.
Dan, just the reminder, the RFP was just for design, it wasn't for build. So it, you know, it wasn't to start construction, it's just to create the design.
Well, it's still an expense, yeah, no, I understand, but it's still expensive to do, to do the design. As, as someone who does design, I know how expensive that gets. So it's, I, I, I would be obvious, I'll just reiterate what I said back then, yes, I'd like to defer it as long as possible as we deal with those other stuff.
You said we wouldn't be here till midnight?
We're here.
I don't know yet.
Can we? Are we done?
Almost tomorrow. Yeah, that's all I.
What, with these projects, I mean, is there, do you guys wanna just continue to think about it or there's things that you want?
I'd like to think about it.
Yeah, the one thing I would say is anywhere where we can use the 26 bond proceeds, we should try and do that. Um, and the Fee and Lou money, if we're gonna continue with that, the rate increase, we should keep it so that we can use it for certain things that we know is coming with pool and other stuff. So I'm not suggesting, you know, relenting on that, just source of funds. And then I, of this stuff, if we're delaying a year or something on a few of these, helps, I, I, the other question I have is how much total projects we can do in a year successfully? We really haven't answered that collectively, and so we need to think about that. So we can be honest with ourselves and with the community as to what our plans are.
Sure.
Well, so just to put a thumb on the scale there, eh, as we try to think about that, I would ask the board to make a priority. Uh, as I know they did last week, but if we're thinking, how much can we do in a year? It's, it's gotta include Patterson Farm. We have to move forward with that.
Yes, but we have more helpers there maybe. Um, so that's why I would say that, um, you know, that's, that's possible, assuming we have more helpers and more oversight folks. So they thought they were gonna get out easy. We would need them, but yes. The Highland Park, those are some large projects. But, yeah, I think we need collectively, outside the budget funding process, we need to really think about how we, how many projects we spin up at a time and how we manage them better. I've had ideas on that over the years and, um, some have stayed in, people change, things change, so.
Colin, you good?
Good.
Dave, can you give us a, uh, just real quick? Can you give us a deadline on when this needs to be, the, the preliminary budget needs to be?
So the schedule, um, initially contemplated that on your meeting on the 15th, that you would make a motion to make a proposed budget available for public inspection. So that you were in a position to adopt the budget at your December 6th meeting. The, the issue, and it's not an issue, but you would have to schedule, I, at that point, you would, you you couldn't wait till the 6th to make it available, because, because you, your last meeting in December would, would occur before the conclusion of the 20-day inspection period that's required by statute. So then you would have to schedule a special meeting at the very end of the year, post-Christmas to adopt the budget, which you could, which you could do, there's, that restricts your ability to do that. Or, you know, in the alternative, you could, um, you could hold a, a special meeting at some point in the end of November, the beginning of December, to get 20 days to adopt at your last meeting in December, so.
Excellent. Um, would it be appropriate for the five supervisors, yourself and Dave Truelove, to meet in an executive session to actually go through exactly how it is we wanna tackle the final budget or the preliminary budget and for presentation to public?
Yeah, we, we can, we can talk about that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Now I say goodnight. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, everybody.
Thank you all.